I would like to call to order the June 21st, 2016, meeting of the Boulder City Council. So Lynette, would you please take role?
Councilmember Applebaum.
Here.
Brockett.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Jones. Morzell. Shoemaker.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates. Young.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, next on our agenda is to read the changes to our agenda. So we will be adding a motion to amend the June -- we need a motion to amend the June 21st, 2016 council meeting agenda by adding item 1A Declaration for General Aviation Appreciation Month. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Moved by Brockett and seconded by Burton. All right, so next on the agenda is...
We should vote.
Oh, vote. Yeah, exactly. Show hands.
Show hands.
You guys voting on this?
I don't know. Let's see how late we're going.
Can you repeat again, sir?
Motion to amend the agenda by adding aviation declaration. Motion passes unanimously. All right, so Lynette, please.
Our first item is the Declaration Regarding General Aviation Appreciation Month that will be presented by Councilmember Burton. Is Tim here?
Whoever doesn't know Tim Head, who is our airport manager, come on up. I don't know how many of you know, but he and the team held a really great aviation day on Saturday and even went into the evening with a ball, right? So it's quite appropriate that we are acknowledging General Aviation Appreciation Month, which is happening all month, for the state of Colorado as well as Boulder. I'm not going to read this whole thing, but Boulder has a significant interest in the vitality of general aviation, and that includes aviation educational institutions, organizations, community airports, all kinds of things. And Tim manages all of this for us with a great impact to the local economy and to the local jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So we would like to present this to you and great appreciation of what you do and your team.
On behalf of the airport and all the users of the airport and all the visitors of the airport, I gladly accept.
Thank you. See ya.
Thank you, Jan, and congratulations, Tim. Next on our agenda is open comment. Lynette, are we...
We have 15 people signed up.
All right.
Share the list.
All right, so this is the part of our meeting where we hear from the public on those items that are not on their public hearing agenda. And we will get three minutes? Two minutes? Two minutes? Two minutes always regardless of how many people are signed up.
There's only 15, so they should get three minutes each.
If it's 15, the rule is 15 is the cutoff.
15 is the cutoff?
Yeah, so if there's 15 or more, it's two minutes.
15 or more?
Yeah. I think that's the way the rule is.
Okay, well then it's two minutes. Sorry about that. First on the list is Kristin Daly, followed by Darren O'Connor, who looks like is pooling time with a couple of other folks, so you can raise your hand when Darren comes up here, and Paula Stefani, which is also pooling time with a couple of other folks. Kristin, please.
My name is Kristin Daly, and I live here in Boulder at 435 Marine Street. And I am a Masters of Public Health student and a mom of two children, one in public elementary and one in preschool. And I'm here as a member of the Healthy Boulder Kids Coalition to talk about a measure for health equity that we are currently collecting signatures for to get on the ballot for this fall that would involve tax on sugary drinks. And the reason that I became a member of this coalition is because not all children in Boulder have equal access to food and activity to support their health. Boulder thinks of itself as a very healthy place, and it is, but this health isn't evenly distributed and it's not easy to access for people with low income. And you can see this in the schools. I mean, sometimes it's not obvious in Boulder, but we do have a lot of disparities in income and disparities in health. And this measure is something that I believe will help create more access to some programs that already exist. I do some work at Boulder County Public Health, and I see these programs, and they operate on a shoestring, and they do great work, but they don't have the reach to get everyone that needs it. So that's why I think this measure is so important, and we'll be back in July to talk about it some more when we collect the signatures. And I also wanted to invite you all to an event tomorrow at noon in the Flatirons Room at the Public Library. And Anna Lepay, who's one of the principal founders of Small Planet Institute and the author of Diet for a Hot Planet, and she's coming for a brown bag lunch talk to talk about this movement in Berkeley that she was a part of, and so I'd like to invite you all to that.
Thank you, Kristin. Next up is Darren O'Connor pooling with Dori Glover and Michael Fitzgerald. Thank you, Darren, please. And then Paula Stefani, and then Anne Hochmeyer.
Hi, councilmembers. I have a video interview to show.
So we came here thinking Boulder was bigger than Longmont. We should be able to find some help, shelter. Here, I was thinking Boulder was bigger than Longmont. We should be able to find some help, shelter.
How old were your kids?
Nine and 10, I think. And walked over here to the park, and I asked random people. I said, you know, I don't know what I'm going to do. I have these girls, and I'm homeless. Is there a homeless shelter somewhere we can go for assistance? And I was pretty much told good luck. So I called the police, and I said, I'm here at Boulder Park, and I'm homeless with my two girls, and I don't know what to do. And they said, well, there's no shelters that can help you. We ended up in Ned. There was a fight at the campsite next to us, and the police came, and instantly we told them what was going on, and that we were homeless and we didn't know what to do, and it'd been almost a week now. And they had a CPS worker come in, and when she came in, she said, you know, we could probably maybe get you a room for a few nights. And I said, well, here's the deal. Well, in a few nights, we have nowhere to go. This is a serious situation, and I need to admit, you know, I have a drinking problem. I'm an alcoholic. And they said, well, then we're going to take your kids.
Right then and there?
Yeah. I went back to the campsite in Nederland, and I couldn't breathe. Couldn't breathe. My life was gone. So I packed up and left the tent, and I just packed up what I had, and I came here.
Back to Boulder?
And I was stuck in this park for five and a half months through the winter, in the snow. It was better to be out here most nights than to be in the warming center crammed in with so many people and the psychosis that comes with being homeless, and everybody's crazy. And eventually, I was crazy too. And it seemed like an endless feat to even be able to walk to the Justice Center was like the castle at the top of the mountain that we couldn't even get that far to, just to make it to court. There's times over the five and a half months that I was out here, I took myself to detox, and I begged them, and I begged them, I begged them for help, please. I called CPS, I walked out to DHS numerous times down, to be turned away all the time. They wouldn't help me. They absolutely wouldn't help me. I got in the bus in Denver, and I got to California. And all I had to do and stay to California was file for food stamps and be considered indigent and go into the rehab place there and show that I really, I wanted help. I was in a bed within 24 hours. They were going to try to take all my rights for abandoning my kids, for leaving the state, but I had no choice. I had to get sober. They told me my kids were better off without me. Through 30 days of rehab in Atwater, California, and I graduated then, and I told my daughter, I'm going to go, I'm going to go get your sisters back, and I'm going to get you to Colorado, and our family's going to be back together. I was paying $750 a month in cost for my kids to be in foster care, yet I was homeless. And in this review, I said, I don't think it's fair that these foster families just said, we love Boulder County. Boulder County gives us everything we need. And I'm looking at you homeless. And it didn't make any sense, and Jody said, she stood up and she said, you don't care about these children, you'll never care about these children. And the lady said, that's it, I'm calling this review close. The next day, Jody contacted me, and all of a sudden had the paperwork for me to get into an apartment. That my family is back together now. But unfortunately, the doors that should have been open were not open, and they're not open for these people that are laying out here right now, emaciated.
Thank you, Darren.
Thanks for watching.
Next up is Paula Stefani. Just a quick note, as I call your name, if you could be standing in the wings and be ready to come up. So Paula Stefani, who is pooling with Karst Pussmuler and Mirabai Nagel, would you please raise your hand? Thank you. And then after Paula is Anne Hochmeyer, and then Rob Smoke.
Hello, my name is Paula Stefani. My address is 4697 14th Street in Boulder. I am here with a group of Boulder residents today to voice our concern about the fate of the prairie dogs on the armory property at Lee Hill and Broadway. We are aware that the Armory Project developer has submitted an application to the city for a lethal permit, and that these prairie dogs will be killed if a suitable relocation site cannot be found for them within the next three months. After looking into the situation, we believe that the only viable option for finding a relocation site is for the city to revise its 2016 prairie dog relocation plans to accommodate this armory colony. I also want to note here that the armory developer has told us that he prefers to relocate the prairie dogs and that he will pay all the relocation costs. This armory prairie dog colony is well-known and an extremely resilient population. It has managed to survive for decades the destruction of all but an eight-acre square fenced-in piece of land of its original habitat, surrounded now on all sides by development. We believe this colony is worth saving, not only for the prairie dogs, but also because Boulder has a reputation for being a leader in humane urban wildlife management. In fact, we recently learned that Boulder was chosen to be one of five cities to pilot the Humane Society's Urban Wild Neighbors Program to find ways other than killing to deal with urban wildlife. We believe that saving this colony will go a long way in the eyes of the public to show that the city of Boulder will act on its good intentions and its good reputation and revise its priorities to accommodate these urban prairie dogs whose lives are imminently threatened. Last week, a few of us met with the Urban Wildlife Coordinator Val Matheson and a representative from Open Space and Mountain Parks Heather Swanson, who generously gave us over an hour of their time to listen to our concerns and answer our questions. After talking with them, we feel there are at least two possible options for accommodating the armory colony this year. It would mean holding off on the relocation of one of two small colonies slated for relocation in 2016, and we would like to bring these options to the attention of the city council. And I have invited you with a map and a photo of each one of these options. The first is the Rolling Rock Ranch Colony just off South Broadway near South Boulder Creek. Our understanding from Val and Heather is that this colony is a priority for relocation because the city considers its habitat not ideal and would like to move the colony while the numbers are still small. In visiting this property, it does appear that the habitat, it does not appear that the habitat is unmanageable or that the prairie dogs are in conflict with agriculture or other human neighbors. Also, this colony is not in danger of being imminently killed. The second option is the Strady Klein Colony between Valmont Butte and the airport. This is another small colony in what the city considers to be unsuitable habitat, and again, the habitat appears to be manageable, the colony does not appear to be in conflict with other human interests, and is not in danger of being killed. According to Val, both of these populations are slated to be relocated to a 16-acre site on the city's southern grasslands Habitat Conservation Area just south of Marshall Lake, which Val says is the only acreage available for prairie dog relocations this year. We appreciate your serious consideration of our request to hold off on relocating either the Rolling Rock or the Strady Klein Colony this year so that the more threatened armory colony can be relocated as soon as possible.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Next up is Anne Hochmeyer, Rob Smoke, and then Ellen Stark.
I'm Anne Hochmeyer from 2010 Upland Avenue, and I'm just going to read this since we don't have much time. We recently applied to subdivide our land at 2010 Upland Avenue. We were surprised to receive the city's response that we must first build a road before we are allowed to subdivide. It's a road on our western boundary, 285 feet of 15-foot right-of-way. We thought that Greenway's SEEP recommending an alternative option to this road, which was later adopted by city council, meant this road would no longer be necessary. However, although the recommendation was adopted, the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan was never amended to reflect this change. We are appealing to you to correct this administrative oversight and remove this requirement from us, thereby returning our 15-foot ROW. A little background, during our lengthy six-year annexation process, this proposed road was vigorously opposed by the majority of neighbors, and we were told that it was required because of the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan, something we didn't actually learn about until we were already three years into the annexation process. To skip ahead though, however, the city itself, after conducting extensive studies and neighborhood meetings through Greenway's Community and Environmental Process, advised unanimously recommended the 19th Street underpass option rather than the 20th Street access road. This alternative includes, quote, "flood improvements with a bicycle and pedestrian underpass at 19th Street and a combined emergency access and multi-use path from 19th Street East to the western terminus of Tamarack Avenue." In February 12, 2012, Greenway's attached the four-mile Canyon Creek 19th to 22nd Street SEEP executive summary, and I quote, "The 19th Street to Tamarack Avenue alignment is recommended to provide emergency vehicle access to Tamarack Avenue. This alternative would consolidate the future bicycle and pedestrian access to Tamarack Avenue with emergency access, eliminating the proposed north-south access to Tamarack, shown in the NOBO plan just east of 19th Street. This alignment is the preferred alternative by public input responders. Selection of this alternative will require an amendment to the NOBO plan. The current NOBO plan shows a secondary road access between Upland and Tamarack Avenues just east of 19th Street. The City Transportation and Development Review Divisions agreed that a local-access roadway providing full non-emergency vehicular access is not warranted based on current and projected traffic volumes generated by potential future subdivisions along Tamarack." By eliminating this road, it would mean that three properties, 4306 Upland, 2010 Upland, and 4270 19th Street, would not be fronted by roads on three sides. It would also keep neighbors from having to carry the undue burden of building two roads, the Tamarack Extension, which we built already, and this 20th Street that's kind of like a road that goes to nowhere.
Thank you, Anne. If you could, did you email that to us prior to the meeting, or could you please?
I can email it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Anne. Next is Rob Smoke, followed by Ellen Stark, and then Susan Summers.
My name is Rob Smoke. I live in Boulder. And the story, the heartbreaking story that we just saw on video from Darren O'Connor, a woman really going through extremely difficult circumstances. And I'm sure, you know, if I were to, if we were to sit down and have a discussion, any of us, private discussion here on council, everyone here would say, well, it's not really the fault of the city. I mean, maybe in some technical way, there's concrete evidence of that, and there's proof, and certainly the city attorney would have no trouble proving or defending the city's actions in court. But the reality is, it might, we might as well be on the same planet with people who are in that kind of condition based on the kind of attention to policy and awareness on council regarding these issues. And it reminds me of a story. I was in Safeway last winter in January, and I talked to a woman there, and a friend of mine walked in and said to this woman, and she had a baby with her, and she was homeless. And my friend, we were having a very casual, friendly conversation. My friend had said, how much for the baby? And she had a number, and it was like $400 and something dollars. And so, you know, everyone was sort of puzzled, and said, how did you get that number? She said, well, that's the amount, a few hundred bucks, that's the amount they offered her in the hospital to give up her baby. And when she refused to do it, she was not part of that particular, I think it was a religious faith-based group offering her, but they had the right to come into her hospital room and offer her money for her baby. So she had that figure as what a baby is worth in Boulder.
Thank you, Rob.
I'd like to share more of this stuff with you personally because I think the possibility for changes there, but we're just...
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Ellen Stark, then Susan Summers, and Thomas Asprey.
So this is just finishing off what Anne Hochmeyer was talking about with the 20th Street. We are therefore appealing to the city to eliminate this requirement for the 20th Street access road, change the 15-foot right-of-way to a utility easement, and amend the Boulder County Sub-Community Plan as recommended by the GAC and approved by city council. We also wish to note that our annexation has already provided community benefit by helping to fund and/or construct affordable housing. Constructing the extension of Tamarack provided a utility easement between Upland and Tamarack and increased community safety by eliminating toxic systems that were potentially contaminating groundwater. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Next up is Susan Summers, Thomas Asprey, and followed by Rick Tassilar.
Can I go? As a resident of Boulder County and a business owner in North Boulder, I'm here to express my concern for the armory prairie dogs. As you, excuse me, as you know, the developer of this property has filed a kill permit for these animals. As you've been told earlier this evening, there are viable relocation sites for this colony on city-owned lands. I'm asking that you take immediate action to ensure these sites are made available for the armory dogs. The city of Boulder has a tremendous track record of doing the right thing for wildlife. Allowing these dogs to be killed will put a black mark on this record. Rules and plans can and must be changed now to allow this historic colony to continue to live and thrive in their home too, which is Boulder. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. I mean, Susan, sorry. Thomas Asprey, then Rick Tassilar, and followed by Allison Smith.
Tom Asprey, I live in Boulder at 1441 Blue Bell Avenue. Thank you, council, for letting me speak on behalf of the municipal utility electric process investigation. A 2015 report by the SEIA, the Solar Energy Industries Association, details how large companies such as Walmart, Target, Costco, and IKEA are forging ahead with large amounts of solar. Companies like Google and Apple not only plan to provide power for their own use, they think bigger. Apple has applied to the FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, to sell wholesale power. They are positioning themselves to innovate. Yes, these companies do have environmental and sustainability goals to meet, but they are not doing this solely for PR. Apple, Google, and others see electric cars on the horizon and understand both the opportunity and the bold vision necessary to make this shift. MGM is not buying its way out of Nevada's power utility system for almost $90 million to lose money by just gambling. These companies are in it to make money and ensure their future, just like Boulder is. We are in good company. They see the trends and understand just how low solar and wind energy prices have fallen and are headed. Commercial solar just set a record low under $0.03 per kilowatt-hour versus the average cost of electricity in Boulder around $0.10 per kilowatt-hour. They understand the need to invest in our future, and that the status quo has to be challenged, just as Boulder has challenged it. If we think of Boulder like one of these companies with our citizens as shareholders, it becomes clearly clear why Boulder is pursuing a muni, so that we can write our own rules and overcome the rigid central control of the past. Kudos to Boulder for catching the wave and leading the way like these innovative companies are. The road to the future is not always easy and requires patience, but it must be taken or we stay in the past breathing coal smoke and drinking polluted gas.
Thank you, Tom.
Pass polluted water.
Rick Tassilar, followed by Allison Smith, and then Frank Bruno.
Evening all. Rick Tassilar, 1955 Poplar Lane. In my day job, I work in the field of finance and engineering, and some of you may also know that in the 80s, I sold solar electric systems, so I've been close to the energy issues for most of my life. Tonight, I'd like to make two points around Boulder's energy future. First, if I asked you to complete this sentence, I think renewable energy sources are great, but they're too blank. And if you said expensive, I suggest that it's time for you to rethink that assumption. According to Lawrence Berkeley National Labs, in 2014, the average PPA price paid by utilities for newly installed wind energy was $0.25 per kilowatt-hour. You just heard Mr. Asprey say for solar, it's hovering around $0.5 per kilowatt-hour. So at these prices, renewable energy sources are competitive today with natural gas and coal sources when we're building new capacity. So my key point is that it's time to rethink our long-term-held assumption that renewable energies cost more than conventional fossil fuel sources for the times they are changing. My second point is in reference to reports in the camera about discussions being held with Xcel Energy. I read and I hear suggestions that Boulder might want to negotiate an arrangement with Xcel that's similar to Minneapolis's Clean Energy Partnership Agreement, maybe use that as a template. I know a little bit about that agreement, and it is indeed a big step forward for Minneapolis and for Xcel, but let me just say, however, that the agreement really has no teeth. There are no specific deliverables such as lower carbon, less fossil fuels, and more customer choices. So I'd caution you about using it as anything more than a starting point in your discussions because I think and I hope that Boulder can do better.
Thank you, Rick. Next is Allison Smith, followed by Frank Bruno, and then Mickey Kaplan.
Hi, I am Allison Smith. I live at 3120 Pearl Parkway. I'm a registered dietitian, and I'm also a Masters of Public Health with a focus in health education, and I'm a member of Healthy Boulder Kids Coalition, which is a group of Boulder parents, health professionals, health equity specialists, non-for-profit organizations, and we are working toward ensuring that every child in Boulder has access to healthy food, beverages, and opportunities for an active, healthy life. Today, I just wanted to give you an idea of who we are, and I wanted to give you some ideas of what our coalition members include. So Jorge de Santiago from El Centro Almestad, Lynn Gilbert, a former CU researcher, RN and PhD, Kevin Gilbert, CEO of Heart Smart Kids, Nicole Christensen, the owner of CrossFit Roots, Erin Harker, physician, Manuela Seifert... Roots, Erin Harker, physician, Manuela Cifuentes, executive director of Latino Task Force, Dakota Rae Westever of Quinn Foods, Simon Smith, CEO of Clinica Family Health Services, Tina Marquez, Boulder Valley School District School Board Member, among others. In addition to that, we have a long list of endorsers, where you can check out at HealthyBoulderKids.org. Some of these recognized organizations include the Latino Chamber of Boulder County, LivWell Colorado, Latino Task Force of Boulder County, the American Heart Association, Boulder County Movement for Children, El Centro Amistad, Dental Aid, Boulder County Public Health, Apex Movement, and more. And we just wanted to let you guys know that we've been collecting signatures, and we'll be back on Monday with signed petitions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Allison. Next up is Frank Bruno, followed by Miki Kaplan, and then Anna Rivas.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Boulder City Council. My name is Frank Bruno. I reside at 235 Inca Parkway here in Boulder. This evening, I'm here to thank you on behalf of the Board of Directors of VIA Mobility Services for the partnership that we've had for many, many years, actually several decades. I'm in my seventh year on the Board of VIA Mobility Services, two as president and the last two as past president. VIA has served the city of Boulder for nearly 37 years, providing important transit and mobility independence for Boulder residents. VIA and the city of Boulder have enjoyed a long and vital partnership for quite a while. In 2015 alone, VIA's paratransit program provided nearly 50,000 on-demand driver-assisted trips to people with mobility limitations, both young and old. We provide travel training and mobility options training, and a big part of our responsibility to the community includes providing nearly 800,000 trips on the hop and RTD's accessory program, which is an ADA mandated paratransit program. We cannot offer such service, such a service mix without the city of Boulder's support, and the Transportation Department contributed over $300,000, representing some 14% of VIA's Boulder service mix. Along with revenue generated from the hop, the number is more like 30% of the Boulder service cost total. The VIA funding support from the city of Boulder for 2015, 2017 spend is pending, so you may hear more about this from staff in the weeks and months to come. Our final message is simply this: thank you to the Boulder City Council and Boulder City staff. We really value our current partnership, and we are eager to continue providing transit and mobility solutions for the city of Boulder and residents. We know that the need for community-based transit programs will only become more important in the years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Next up is Miki Kaplan, followed by Anna Rivas, and then Eric Harker.
Hi, my name's Miki Kaplan. Oh, I can't see. I live at 1920 Tin Cup Court in Boulder. I'm also on the VIA Board of Directors, along with Frank. And I'm a former city employee. I worked for Gold Boulder for numerous years. And for 25 years, maybe 30, I've worked in public transportation planning. And so, when I retired from the city, I was always attracted to VIA. And I want to give you another perspective about VIA being on the board, and from my public transportation experience. You know, around the country, I've gone to conferences, I've seen many other paratransit nonprofit providers like VIA. And they are, VIA is a very mature organization, very well-run. We're very lucky to have VIA in our community and operating at such a high, high level, high functioning level, as well as how much we appreciate the relationship we have with the city of Boulder. So I just wanted to give you that sort of national and professional perspective. And also, on behalf of the VIA Board of Directors, we really look forward to partnering with the city on implementing the goals and the programs of the Transportation Master Plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, Miki. Anna Rivas, followed by Eric Harker, and then finally, Ellen Harker.
Hi, I am here as a Boulder County resident to speak on behalf of the Armory Prairie Dogs. Every day, I read about the plight of wild animals all over the world whose existence is threatened due to human activities. Human activities have caused wild animal populations to drop by half since 1970. Right here in Boulder, prairie dogs, who were among the reasons I fell in love with the area, have been getting killed off steadily. The Armory Prairie Dogs are next in line to be killed, but as previous speakers have indicated, there's another option. One of our own, oops, I'll keep it short. With that in mind, I wanted to read one of my favorite quotes, as food for thought. "We need another and a wiser and perhaps a more mystical concept of animals. In a world older and more complete than ours, they move finished and complete, gifted with extensions of the senses we have lost or never attained, living by voices we shall never hear. They are not brethren, they are not underlings, they are other nations caught with ourselves in the net of life and time, fellow prisoners of the splendor and travail of the earth." So please keep that in mind as you decide how you're going to treat these little critters. Thanks.
Thank you, Anna. Next up is Eric Harker, and followed by Ellen Harker.
I'm Eric Harker, 3147 Eighth Street in Boulder. A salute to the Boy Scouts out there. Thanks for coming. I wanted to provide a little bit of context to the Boulder Healthy Kids Initiative that you'll be hearing more about. I'm a physician. I've been in practice here in Boulder for about 12 years. I'm a prevention specialist. I've been working on diabetes prevention nationally and throughout the state of Colorado for several years. And so, the context of the problem that we're trying to solve is that really what we're trying to get at is preventing chronic illness, particularly in children, and trying to solve a health equity issue that exists here in Boulder, Colorado. Public health is tightly linked to chronic poverty. Chronic poverty drives obesity. Obesity is one of the leading drivers of chronic illness, and chronic illness is one of the primary drivers of chronic poverty. And so, the cycle continues. So why tax on sugary beverages? Sugary beverages are the leading dietary cause of obesity in this country. Attacks on sugary beverages has been shown to reduce consumption while generating funds to promote a healthy living, active sports activities, and opportunities for children, health education, and so forth. Some compelling facts: one in three children born today in the United States will develop diabetes in their lifetime. One out of two Latino children will develop diabetes in their lifetime. This is really a serious epidemic that we have to address. Sugary beverages in particular, one drink a day by children increases the likelihood of childhood obesity by 55%. One drink a day increases the risk of death from cardiovascular disease by 30%.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Dr. Harker, could you send us those facts? That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ellen Harker, and if anybody else would like to sign up to speak, please do so now. After, if you don't sign up, we will close the public hearing and move on to our next agenda item.
Hi, I'm Ellen Harker, and been a resident of Boulder coming on 12 years, two girls up through the school systems, and I'm proud of this town for what it can do. I'm here tonight to ask for your support to make the measure on sugary beverages something that can happen in this town. And I think all the things that have been talked about tonight really touch my heart. And so, to talk about sugary beverages next to all of those issues, it may seem esoteric. It may seem non-intuitive. That's exactly why I think it's so important. Sugary beverages are insidious. Soda, cola, soda pop in particular, is something that, it's very easy to drink it fast. We're not anti-sugar, but you can eat a cookie, and it's easier to drink a soda. It goes down so fast, and you can drink multiples in a day. And a cookie is not evil. It's just that sugary beverages go down so quick. And I'm totally losing my train of thought here in front of all of you. What I want to say is that, well, I'll just tell a story, so that's what I do best. On a recent trip with my daughter, with her middle school orchestra kids, I saw binging of sugar that was, honestly, it made my knees weak. I'm not a puritan when it comes to sugar. I saw a kid with five sodas going to his room, and he was planning to drink them all. That's 100 ounces of Coca-Cola. And he told me that wasn't all he had. Our kids need help, and their parents need help, in the form of financial friction against the advertising forces that make this so seductive. So please help.
Thank you, Ellen. Heidi, has anybody else signed up? All right, seeing no one else signed up, I'll close the public hearing and move on to our next agenda item.
So, can I respond a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. No worries.
I'm out of practice. So, yes, any comments from staff or the city attorney?
Thank you. So Val Matheson is here, and she'll be talking to you briefly about the prairie dog situation. But before we get to that, I do want to mention that the two women that spoke about the issue on Tamarack and 19th, Councilmember Morzell brought that to our attention today, and the executive director for Public Works, Maureen Rate, is involved in the situation right now and is trying to understand more about it and work it out. So if you don't mind, let us try to work it out behind the scenes if we can, and then if not, we'll be reporting back to you to see if some changes need to be made in the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan.
Great. Thank you, Jane, for that update. And I just, I've been emailing back and forth with them and some neighbors as well. And I did, I sent language on to Mo, which I'm sure she's looking to, but that SEEP that we approved does seem to say that the connection shouldn't be there. So I look forward to the response.
Right. Yeah, we'll be looking into it and definitely responding on that. And then let me, hopefully, if you will allow me to do so, welcome to the podium, Val Matheson, who can talk to us about prairie dogs.
So I just wanted to take a moment to put into context how we're planning on moving forward. In 2016, with the limited relocation site, we have a 16-acre site. Certainly understand the heartfelt request put out there, and the city has a long history of limiting lethal control. But our management plans have over 700 acres of land designated for removal. And because we have not been doing lethal control in those areas, we have annually acreage and acreage that builds up that we're waiting for a receiving site so we can relocate these prairie dogs to. And so, when these opportunities open and there's available land for relocation, we are working very hard to implement these plans, the grass, Urban Grassland Management Plan and the Urban Wildlife Management Plan. And so, that's our intent moving forward, to kind of address some of that baggage or the acreage that we've been waiting to do relocations on.
Just a question about how imminent this issue is. How long will the permit go before any lethal application would be allowed? And what would the steps be between now and then?
So are you talking about the lethal control permit application from the Armory?
Yes.
So there are built-in lag times to the application process, and that is 15 days after the permit's received to wait to post a 60-day public comment period, where we're asking the public to help us and the applicant find a relocation site for those prairie dogs. And then an additional, after the public comment period, 15 days before the permit could be issued. So it's a minimum of 90 days for that process. So we're looking at September before that could be, that permit could be issued.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you for coming tonight. Could you speak to, I understand the whole issues and not wanting to euthanize and just the backlog we have. So do you guys have like a priority list? And now that this one has come in, how would that interweave?
Yeah, we do have a priority list. So for our, you know, 700 or so acres, we kind of chart out what's at the top citywide. And so, we try and take advantage of a myriad of different factors when we're looking at what would be the best opportunity for a limited receiving site. So for example, Rolling Rocks is a colony that was at 13 acres. It is now at 1 and 1/2 acres. And it is in conflict with some rare plant species associated with the Mesa Tallgrass Prairie. And so, a factor is often, when a colony is reduced, we want to seize that and move them when they're small and not wait till they're at 15 acres, where the impacts are much bigger and even moving them. And we certainly don't want to do lethal control on that large a number. Similarly, with Stradie Klein, it was at 25 acres, and it's at two. And so, that's a really unique opportunity to remove that colony with limited receiving sites and affect that removal area when the numbers are really low.
And could I just ask about the density of prairie dogs per acre? Is there a preferred density or?
Do you mean when we're relocating them to the new site?
Right, right.
Yeah, you know, we have to apply for a state permit. The permit, the guidelines from the state has generally been in the ballpark of 12 per acre. We have applied for nine per acre in the past, if there was some sentiment that less would be beneficial. So I mean, that's the range. We haven't applied yet for the permit, but that's the ballpark of the per-acre prairie dogs.
And so, when you speak to number that, like on Rolling Rock, you have 1 and 1/2 acres, is that now like 13 prairie dogs on those 1 and 1/2 acres? Or is that what we're talking about in terms of relocation?
Yeah, you know, in the, in the Open Space Annual Fall Mapping, they're doing acreage and not counting individuals. So for our 700 acres in removal areas, we have the acreage but not the individual numbers. As we move forward in the application process, we will be doing those surveys of individuals, but I couldn't tell you now what the density is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Val. Any other questions for Val? All right. Any other comments from city manager or city attorney?
No.
Any questions from Sam?
Tom, I just had a question. I know when the sugary drinks tax first came in, there was a little bit of an issue with the way the funding would be managed. And has there been an update to the language that's being circulated right now?
I believe there has. I think they took out the language that raised the charter concerns, but I'm not 100% certain. Kathy Haddock is sitting in the back watching, and she's listening to my voice, so she can send me an email very quickly, and I can confirm that for you, Sam.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Lisa?
Tom, would we, we'll get a copy of the petition that went out, won't we?
We can certainly get that.
That would be excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. So now we will move on to the next agenda item.
Your consent agenda includes items A through H.
Any comments from council? Jan?
I have sent some questions to Chief Testa about item number G. So I just wanted to highlight that to the council, that I had a few questions that weren't covered in the, in the material. And he's responded back that he will get a response out to us before we have another reading on that.
All right. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
May I answer Sam's question? They did take out the language that created a panel that was dictating how council could spend the money.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move the consent agenda.
So moved by Weaver and seconded by Morzell? We vote for it by show of hands. So all in favor of approving the consent agenda? All right. Passes unanimously.
Next item is your call-up check-in. You have six of them on the schedule for tonight. Upland Avenue to west of Broadway, Community and Environmental Assessment Process Report, Four Mile Canyon Creek Green Waste Improvement Project, 3107 Iris Avenue... Four Mile Canyon Creek Green Waste Improvement Project, 3107 Iris Avenue, Emergency Access Vacations, 215 30th Street, Public Utility Easement Vacation, 3200 Bluff Concept Plan, 904 College Avenue, Non-Conforming Use Review, and 2949 Broadway Site Review.
Thank you, Lynette. Is anyone interested in calling? Lisa?
I would just like to bring up the item number one, the Upland Avenue to west of Broadway. And as Council read the memo, there are three options in there, and all of those are very good options, I think. And I would ask that, in going forward, that the City Manager look at how all three of those options might be funded and then get back to us. And so, that's, that's all. I really don't want to call it up. I just want to express that need. And I could go into detail, but given the length of our meeting tonight.
Right. And I spoke with Maureen today about this one as well, and she said that all three of those are viable and that we'll be following through on your request.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So, I don't see any interest in calling any of these up. So, we will move on.
Your first public hearing is continued introduction, first reading and consideration of a motion to order published by Title Only, Ordinance Number 8119, intended to expand the availability of cooperative housing units by amending Title IV, Licenses and Permits, by adding a new Section 42069 Cooperative Housing License Fee, amending Title IX Land Use Code by amending Table 961, to make cooperative housing and allowed use in certain zone districts by amending Section 963, eliminating the requirement of a special use permit for cooperative housing, amending Title X Structures by adding a new Chapter 11 Cooperative Housing, establishing requirements for licensing housing cooperatives, and setting forth related details.
As Council will recall, Council, the first reading began on May 17th. Council heard three hours or so of public testimony, finishing around 11 o'clock. Council had a very brief discussion. I highlighted some issues for further discussion and scheduled a continued first reading for this meeting. Just so that folks who are watching in the audience or watching on television, the city's charter process requires two readings of an ordinance. Basically, you cannot pass an ordinance at the same meeting at which it's introduced. It has to be introduced and ordered, published by Title Only at one meeting and then a second meeting. For more complex situations like this, generally, it goes to more than three readings. We usually only have one public hearing. We've had the public hearing at first reading. Most likely, we'll have additional public hearings for people to comment. The purpose for tonight is for Council to discuss what they heard at the first public hearing and give some feedback and potential amendments to the ordinance before it comes back for second reading. Second reading is not currently scheduled. So, just to briefly overview, Council's goals were to facilitate communal living, to provide additional affordable housing alternative, and provide for more sustainable housing. Council expressed concerns about life safety, that it is too many people living in one place or unsafe places, impact on the neighborhood, and impacts on the housing market from basically bidding up the prices. This is a brief summary of where we've been. In November, Council passed an occupancy ordinance. November 17th, Council directed staff not to enforce against cooperatives. January 26th, Council had a study session on cooperatives where Council gave initial direction. We published the first reading ordinance on March 24th. We've had several meetings. It was actually introduced on May 17th, and we are here at June 21st. The major elements of the ordinance as it was drafted, and it certainly will change, would be allowed, under the proposed ordinance, cooperative housing units would be allowed in zoning districts in which it was previously a conditional use. They would be regulated much like rentals, including licensing, initial inspections, renewal inspections. And they would, the original proposal would be that they would be exempt from occupancy limits, and there's some proposed amendments that impose occupancy limits. Of course, the exemption, the original one, was subject to the International Property Maintenance Code, which does have some occupancy limitations. These are the issues that I have identified based on Council's discussions on May 17th. As you can see, there are 14. If you take 10 minutes on each, that's 2 hours and 20 minutes. So, I talked with Mary. And Mary, do you want to talk a little bit about how, you want to manage this?
So, as Tom mentioned, there are several items listed up here. And what we'd like to do, if you're amenable to it, we could go through each and determine how much time we'd like to spend on it and then hold ourselves to that amount of time per item. So, does that sound like a reasonable approach?
If we held ourselves to it.
Right. I was going to say, it sounds good in theory.
All right. So, do we, so you're done with the presentation, Tom?
I have slides for each one of these. And so, for some of them, like the separation, there were the maps which we've got here. I can project those. But I'm not going to say much more except to give you a topic to look at.
All right.
Yes. I wondered that because I think the amount of time it'll take will depend on the amount of disagreement that we have, which is hard to know in advance.
Okay.
I have ones I'm more interested in talking about, and others may have different ones.
All right. So, maybe one thing we could do is just have a straw poll and see where people are at with that particular item. As we.
Unless there are six choices. These aren't all A versus B, unfortunately.
Might be able to knock some things off the table quickly, huh?
And I'm happy to go through that. But again, I'm with Erin in terms of, I don't know, because I haven't spoken with them.
All right. So, should we just start by going, starting with item number one? Any other, unless somebody has some other suggestions?
I had a question for Tom before we kick off the discussion, which was, Tom, I noticed you, we, we had an original draft ordinance, and then you prepared a revised one for our first reading hearing. And I noticed that in the packet for today, only the original draft ordinance is included. At least, that was my, what I saw in there.
So, the intent was to include the revised one?
Okay. But, so then, I just sort of clarify that. We, I'm assuming we're going to use the revised one as our jumping off point? Does that make sense, everybody?
That's what I thought.
Okay. Good. Well, I think I had to go back to the May 17th packet to get the revised.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's a mistake. It should, it should be the, it says the original draft ordinance is attached, and my intent was that it be the revised one.
Right. And let me know if I missed, let me.
I thought the revised one was.
That's what I thought, too.
Well, I have to read it, but the heading says original draft ordinance. It does include criminal penalties, which I know were struck from the revised one, so.
But the revised one was attached to the May 17th packet.
Yep. Okay.
All right.
So, certification, this is the question whether there should be some process for certifying that a cooperative is a legitimate co-op. The original, the revised proposed ordinance had a third-party certifier, and the third-party certifier charged with developing and publishing criteria. Council's feedback was that some members wanted to have some draft criteria in the ordinance and also to consider whether it should be the city that certifies rather than a third party. So, attached to the packet are two alternatives. Both have the same criteria. It creates the concept of a legitimate cooperative organization and has criteria for establishing that. And Alternative A would have a third party doing it, and Alternative B would have the city doing it.
Thank you, Tom. Would somebody like to kick off the conversation? Lisa?
Well, I would like to consider a third option other than the City Manager or a third party. And that's something I've raised in the past, and that is the Housing Board that we've discussed, and it's currently under discussion. And my thought is that this is a perfect thing to put before, if we are, if we go, move forward with seating a Housing Board, this would be a perfect topic to come up in front of that Housing Board to certify whether that group applying is truly, meets all the criteria of a co-op. So, I'm just throwing that out. And just to answer the questions, to move this, yes, I think the ordinance should include certification criteria. I'm fine, I think, with the proposed amendment correct. And then, my third is the Housing Board.
Matt?
Yeah, real quickly, I would not be comfortable with a third party in general. And I'd leave it to the City Manager, who could choose all sorts of various options, obviously. Just, just for people who don't know, when we say the City Manager, we do not really mean that Jane is going to sit there and review everything. What it means is she figures out some mechanism with city staff or whomever to actually make it work. The Housing Board's interesting. I'd have to think about that because we would also need the Housing Board to exist. So, it's kind of a little hard to do that tonight. As for the criteria, I'll just say this. It may be for the purpose of the ordinance that these criteria are kind of sufficient, but eventually, they'd have to be an awful lot more detailed. I think it would be trivial for virtually any rental to meet all of these criteria without breaking a sweat. And so, I'm not suggesting that an ordinance have to go into 50 pages of detail. That's why you kind of give the basic and you turn over the certification to the City Manager.
Right. And can I just finish what I was going to finish? And that is, I am not interested in a third party at all. And I pretty much agree with what Matt said.
Erin?
So, well, one, one alternative that's not quite a third party would be to turn to Boulder Housing Partners for assistance with this, since they are our housing authority for the city and they have expertise in housing matters. So, I'll throw that out there as, as not the City Manager but not a third party, per se, as well, as an idea.
And do you have comments on the other?
Well, I think, I think the, having criteria is correct. I think we might, I don't have a final answer on exactly how we might tweak this, but I think when, when we get down to the certification process, there, there needs to be more detail, like Matt says. So, I would consider, like, a second reading, potentially adding more detail in here. But we could also leave it up to the kind of rulemaking authority for a future step.
Anyone else?
I mean, I just want to agree with Lisa on the Housing Board. I really do think it would be a good thing for us to have, and it would be appropriate. I would also be open to, in the meantime, until that happens, that we could go through BHP or someone else that we decide on. Because I don't really want to necessarily hold this up over that discussion, but I'm right where you are, Lisa. I think we should have a Housing Board. I think it would serve a valuable purpose in town, and that could be one of the things it does, is certify co-ops and set criteria. You know, another thing that we often count on boards to do is help come up with criteria.
All right. Andrew?
Yeah, so, the, I don't have a problem with, you know, there's the whole issue of establishing a Housing Board and whether we're going to do that. But if we had one in place, it seems like that would be, that would be something that it, it might do. I'm a little worried. I don't know if we've consulted with BHP about sort of extending, getting outside the realm of what they do or, or what they desire to do. So, you know, one sort of hybrid here is whether or not the City Manager's office might be involved. But nonetheless, to get there, you still have to get the certification. And, and that is, you know, helpful. Obviously, if you don't pass that private hurdle, which, you know, my sense is that right now, at least, that organization has an incentive to certify legitimate co-ops, as we've been talking about and we'll talk about in the, sort of the definition context. But, but having that hurdle first, if you don't, if you don't make that hurdle, then you don't even get to the City Manager's office. And we, you know, there's, there's a lot of work they have going on in the City Manager's office, and we haven't received, you know, complete, you know, feedback that the process of what the City Manager's office can do is, not Jane, of course, but, but that, you know, people aren't necessarily happy from, you know, about certain of the criteria or the, you know, the approval of certain rental licenses and various other kinds of things. So, you know, and the city's only got the manpower to do certain things. So, to the extent that we can essentially privatize this on the front end and make that first hurdle there, I think there's some benefit in that.
All right. And anything else? All right.
I guess, otherwise, I'm on, I'm on board with the rest of this, so.
Okay. So, I'm going to jump in here, and then, Jan? I am with Lisa and Sam on if we do have a Housing Board. This would be a great place to utilize that board. I also think that there needs to be more criteria, a higher bar, and maybe we can have some more in the next ordinance.
Could somebody tell me what those are? Because that, it's not really very helpful to just say more. And I've tried, or just tell me what kind of things. You notice the things that I put in the proposed ordinance were things that are verifiable on paper. The, the one that we got from Ochoa suggested things like sharing of food. I'm not sure how we, the city certifies that. So, I gather that, but I've struggled with, spent some time trying to think about what other things could we actually check? And these are the kind of traditional things you check to see whether an organization is real, a corporation or anything else. So, that's, that's why I focused on them. I've heard several comments about more, but I haven't heard anything about what those are.
So, what, can I just say something real quick?
Please.
This is a prime example of why we may want to have something on the front end because the city's approach, and legitimately, is it's a check-the-box kind of thing. And, and what we're talking about, at least right now, with the, with the nonprofit that is involved in certifying, and that nonprofit presumably would have to be approved by the city as well, and the city could yank that nonprofit approval authority, is that, you know, they live it, and they're a little bit better in terms of telling if something, you know, walks like a duck, it's a duck, as opposed to the city just checking boxes. So, it's just, it's just a, it's a concern that I have, and it's something we've seen in other enforcement and approval areas, so.
So, does somebody else have any suggestions as to what that criteria could be? I'm sorry, I don't, Tom.
Sorry. And I didn't really mean to put you on the spot, but I just, if we're going to do this, it would be helpful if I had some idea of what you, what you wanted, and I haven't really heard anything yet.
Right. But since, since this is a first reading, maybe we could think about that and make that, put that in our heads and come back with you with some more thoughts.
And I was just going to point out that the materials we received earlier today about what's going on perhaps in Minneapolis might be something to also look at. There were criteria in there, and I thought some of them were interesting. I can't remember them off the top of my head, but that would be another source of ideas.
Yep. That's a good point.
Not, not easily checkable.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll filter for that.
Okay.
Thank you. Jan?
Yeah, I didn't come with prepared ideas about exactly what would be the criteria, but I think this is the part that is the most important. And I think we needed to find the co-ops really well. I didn't see the new amended one, but I didn't see it in the first one. So, I think the definition is really important. And then, this to me, kind of reminds me of hiring an employee. You either do your due diligence upfront before you hire the person, and then likely that person will be successful, or you mess around and don't do the due diligence, and then you end up having to fire them. It's better to do the work on the front end than it is on the back end. So, I think the criteria, having it really clear and having a certification against that is really important. So, can we send you ideas through the hotline? Or how should we do that if we want to follow up with?
So, it sounds like if nobody really is ready tonight, we can, if you can give me direction on which one of these proposals I should put into the second reading ordinance, you can always amend it on second reading. As I said, I doubt this is going to pass on second reading. So, that's just, we could have a further discussion on that. Also, you can charge me, I've heard you want better criteria. I can think about it and make some proposals to you.
Lisa?
So, I would just point out that right now, we don't have the second reading scheduled. And so, the soonest this would come to it, this might be September, October, November. And so, I would just say we have a little bit of time. We have, we're going into recess, and so, I think we have plenty of time before you get into that section of the second reading, so.
I mean, we have a lot of input from people, much really good recommendations. So, I mean, I'd be very willing to spend some hours sifting through that and then coming back with some criteria to you, if that's an acceptable process.
So I think if you just include what you proposed in the second reading ordinance, it sounds like we'll all think about it or go back through the email and look at the suggestions, and...
I think Tom has a fundamental question, though, is like, do we want it to be city manager's office? Do we want it to be third party? I mean, what should he come back with as far as, is that right, Tom?
Yeah, and so it's sort of, what's the working next draft? And so, option A, which is on page 106 of the packet, is the third party. And option B, which starts on page 108, is the city manager. So if somebody could make a motion to amend the revised proposed ordinance with one of those, then we'll at least have a working draft that you can go from.
Lisa, would you?
So I will move that we go forward with the option B, the city manager choice, and as Matt pointed out, you know, that could be a housing board, it could be BHP, it could be something other than the third party. So I'm putting that out as a...
I'll second that motion.
Great. And can I clarify that if we give that authority to the city manager, the city manager could designate, you know, Boulder Housing Partners or a housing board to assist with that?
The city manager always has authority to delegate, or further delegate, and she always does. So it could be the planning department, it could be, whether, I hadn't heard the Boulder Housing Partners proposal before tonight. I'd want to do some research on their authority. They're a state-created agency, and I'm not sure that they have the authority to do this. So, because they're not completely free to do anything, because they're a creature of state law.
So if we leave it with the city manager's office, then it allows us, I think, some wiggle room, and it allows you to look into BHP and what their authority is.
And what I would do is come back with a second reading memo that has an explanation for their authority and answers to some of these questions, and maybe proposals for better criteria that you could consider on second reading.
Excellent.
And actually, would it even require us to come up, I mean, the criteria, then, while we might give some guidance, it's going to be, the meat of it's going to be in the actual city managers, you know, what do you call it, the rules or the...
Well, it could be rules or the scope of the delegation.
Yep.
It could be either. And I could certainly add some language to this that allows the city manager to add additional criteria by rules.
So, for example, she could even ask that, you know, at a minimum, you've got to get some sort of approval by a third party as well?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments on this? Okay, we will move on to item number two. Did I miss something?
So I'd like a vote on the motion.
Oh, a vote, thank you. All right.
Sorry for being stickler, but it helps a lot if I know exactly what you want.
All right. So we need to vote on the motion made by...
And can we just amend the motion that the amendment will include additional criteria by rules?
Yes, please.
Okay.
All right.
That's okay with this?
If you want to really be a stickler, I'm not sure we have a main motion that we're amending.
Ah, that's true.
So the motion was to put the responsibility in...
So what Matt's pointing out is that nobody has made a motion to adopt on first reading anything. So you're amending something, but you can do it by this process, too. You can say, we're going to, at the end of this, we can move by first reading. So why don't we just go ahead and not worry?
Yeah, let's just do that.
You're the one who has yelled about Robert's rules.
Okay.
This can just be straw poll, so that you kind of remember one.
I would prefer a motion, and then take all the motions together, and at the end, you'll say that you're going to introduce the revised version as amended.
So these are amendments to a yet-to-be-made motion?
Yes.
All right. All right. So the motion made by Morzell and seconded by Weber to...
Amendment. Adopt option B is the...
Adopt option B, which is the city manager option, and that allows a lot of breadth in terms of the actual group or mechanism in which that would be certified.
All right. Is this show of hands?
And Tom wanted the language about the rules.
And add Tom's language, sorry.
All right, great. All right. Ready to vote? Show of hands, on favor? All right. Unanimous support. Item number two.
Property right for cooperatives. So on page 110 of the packet, attachment E is a new proposed section, we're just calling it 10, 11, 12A, to fit it between 12 and 13, rather than renumbering everything at this point. And it provided for a limited property right for equity co-ops. So the questions are, is it the right direction? Or does, so one of the things we talked about was, if you're going to create a property right, do you want to go back to a use review process, which was in the origin, which is in the 963B, which is the current ordinance? And what is the nature of the property right? Should it be property right in ownership of the property? Do they have a property right in over occupancy? And one of the things we've argued for years is that there is no property right in over occupancy, because, you know, the city's occupancy ordinance has a provision for grandfathered occupancy. And the city has always taken the position that we can take that away, because it's a use, not a property right. This would be a new property right. So those are the questions I have.
And I have a question before we go. Could you explain to me what the language in part B of this is supposed to say? I mean, I just don't understand...
Page, please.
What the intention, what, this is on page 110 of the packet? Yes, I'm on page 110, and it's part B.
Of this packet, not the May 17.
I'm on this packet, yeah, yeah.
And attachment E.
Yeah, the purpose of that is to distinguish the rental co-ops from the equity co-ops and make it clear that there's no property right in a rental license.
The part I was confused about is, upon the abandonment, expiration, or revocation of such a license, the property will be considered to be dwelling unit. I assume there should be an A in there, but I still didn't quite get, it's a dwelling unit even when it can be overoccupied, is it not?
Yes.
So I didn't see how this changed really anything. You know, saying it's now a dwelling unit doesn't say occupancy has to be back at the zoned occupancy or anything like that.
Yes. We should fix that.
And then, and I have a question before we move to other comments. So if this becomes a property right, property rights are tied to zoning, isn't that correct? Or established by zoning? And we were going on this ordinance by establishing cooperatives as privileges. So if we give it a property right, doesn't that tie to zoning?
Well, it ties it to, it makes it a land use.
So, okay, so if it's tied to land use, then, how is that not spot zoning?
I'm not sure I would consider it spot zoning. I consider it giving it a property right in the use of, as an overoccupied cooperative.
Okay.
Because I wouldn't tie it to zoning, I'd call it a land use.
Okay, okay. Got it. All right. Anyone who wants to? Aaron?
Well, this was my request, to look at this option. Tom, I appreciate you putting it together. And as it came out in the language in the ordinance, it came out quite simply, which I was pleased to see. It's just my thought here being that, this would obviously, this would be for equity co-ops only, you know, rental co-ops would not, they would be governed by licenses, and licenses would be revocable. But that if you're going to be, if you're going to have a group of people putting down money and buying property, that as long, that's not something that we should be able to just take away from people. So that, like, you know, I bought my house a few years ago, and I don't think people can just evict me as long as I'm up on my property taxes and my mortgage. So it seems like the same kind of protection should be available to people purchasing property and for an equity co-op.
Andrew?
So I guess I want to play devil's advocate on that for a moment, in that you've got, you know, you still have the same property that you bought before, and you can still sell it on the open market. And the only reason that it becomes more valuable is if you actually increase the property value as a result of the over occupancy. So what you're doing, what concerns me right now, at least the way it's written, I'm still open-minded to some way to make this work, but is that, is that you're basically, you're allowing the property value to increase, and then you're giving someone a property value in that, right, in that increased value. We're moving property prices up. And just backing up, I don't think if eight people go in on a, you know, $2 million home, $1.5 million home, that's the cost of it on the market, if they have to sell it because, and I doubt this is going to happen, but if they have to sell it because, for whatever reason, they lose their right because they've gotten in trouble a bazillion times, then they can still sell it for $1.5 million, which is the price they bought it for. So I'm not sure I see the, sort of, the inequity in the situation.
Aaron?
Well, just to respond to that, I mean, it's not a financial thing, it's about living in your home. So, you know, if someone were to come to me next month and say, you know what, you have to move out of your home, but you know, you'll be able to sell it at a market price, and it's appreciated probably 20 or 30%, so you'll get your money back, I would not feel okay with that, because I would be losing my home. So it's not about that you couldn't get your money back, but it's about the losing your place of residence in your home. And so, and I'm specifically thinking about, you know, if we, if the rules get changed at some point down the line, so.
And I'm sensitive to that as well. And I guess the question then, and that makes sense, I mean, that concern, the question then becomes, is there a way to essentially make the pain of enforcement for nuisance and whatnot felt the same for an eight or 10-person house as it is for a lower-volume occupancy house at the moment? If eight people are splitting $100 fine, you know, it's not much. But if we started moving them up, I'm hearing people talk about the bear fines. I mean, those are really making a difference. And somebody complained to me the other day that a bear fines higher than a brawling, a brawling fine in the city of Boulder. And, but, you know, you shouldn't hit, I won't go there.
Brawling with bears?
So anyway, all that being said, you know, maybe there's a solution in terms of sort of doing both, and perhaps having a multiple factor on the fines for a co-op.
So I wanted to jump in here, if that's all right, and say, for me, the concern is financing. I mean, if you end up with an inability to finance, because this might go away suddenly, I could see banks finding that to be a big risk. So what I would be interested in exploring is the possibility of, if it's going to have this property right, if it's going to be more long-term than just a rental, which could go away fairly easily, then shouldn't we do a use review? You know, shouldn't this be something where we have it as conditional, you know, where they vest the property right? Because that's a more meaningful step. And we do a use review, and if it passes all the muster that it needs for a use review, then it does have this more durable property right that stays with it until the people who own it dissolve it. And then the question becomes, if they dissolve it, does that use review go away? Does it have to come back for a use review again if it's a different co-op that wants to be part of the equity? So I'm interested in...
Planning board.
Planning board.
Planning staff, planning board.
And you could change it to be a housing board, too. You could move, perhaps, this one into housing.
Matt?
Well, I'm more where Andrew is, although it's not just because of the fines, although that's a good point, I must say. I am just, maybe it's my, just concern in general about long-term implications you don't completely understand. I'm always nervous giving somebody a permanent property right, because that's a long time. And we've got gazillions of grandfathered-in stuff that someday, maybe somebody will have the nerve to do something about, but it's just crazy-making. I don't quite see the financing thing, although we could talk to somebody who knows better than me, because of Andrew's point, the thing is still worth what it's worth. And what a bank is financing is the value of the property and the house on it, and that doesn't go away, with or without this right. It's still worth what it's worth. And now, if somebody is going to jack up the price because they know a co-op's moving in, oh, that's got its own problems. We're not so thrilled about that concept either. So I would have lots of problems with the property right. As for use review, that's kind of a different concept. I mean, you're right, Sam, it comes up here. Frankly, for me, it also comes up on the notification, because what's the point of notifying somebody if there's no process? I see no point. I'm not sold on use review yet, but it seems like that's yet another issue that has its tentacles both here and in the notification. But then you've got to come up with criteria. I mean, what's the basis? Why would you say yes? Why would you say no? We don't have anything that helps us in that regard. Right now, what we have is essentially a checklist, or maybe, you know, a circle around, you can have one within this area. You'd have to come up with a whole set of criteria. Otherwise, you know, what's the planning board deciding based on? I have no idea. Right? So I'm not saying we don't do it, but if we go that route, we need a whole additional piece of the puzzle here about use review criteria.
Jen?
One thing I would have a concern about with our use review is, it seems like it would take a while to get on the calendar of the planning board and work through that process. And, I mean, these people, if they're going to buy a house for the cooperative, and that's, am I on the right topic here? Well, you know, people are making cash offers in a day. So there are multiple offers for a property every day. So I think it would really be onerous to require a co-op to go through a use review. They'd never get a property. They would never win one out.
I'd just like to follow up on that. Wouldn't it be the case that a subset could buy, you know, under the legal occupancy, they could go ahead and purchase it and then set up to be a higher occupancy and then go through that? So there would be some conditions where I think people would be able to respond very quickly, as you're saying, be responsive to the market. There would be others where maybe they couldn't. But I don't know that it would shut out all groups who are trying to do this.
But then it wouldn't help you with the financing that you were concerned about on the front end? I mean, if the subgroup can buy, they don't need special financing based on it being a co-op.
Right, absolutely. They would just have it, and then they would do, I guess they'd do a quick claim deed from one smaller ownership group to the larger.
Yeah, but you'd have to have your financing lined up in the first case and get pretty elaborate.
Correct. But still and all, everything we're talking about as, just to put it in context, everything that we're talking about as requirements to get certified, you know, as an equity co-op, is going to add delay as well. If we're trying to get people to be able to buy a house, you know, and very quickly, that's going to be a process that's going to have some front end to it as well.
So I have a question for Tom. In the memo, you said that this would create significant obstacles to enforcement.
Page, please.
And that's on page 78. Actually, it starts on page 77 and goes into page 78. So could you explain a little bit more about that?
Well, so the way we set this ordinance up was, you get a license. If you lose the license, you lose your right to have it. The license is revocable if you're not compatible with the neighborhood. There were standards for that. You'd have to, the city manager would have to bring an action to revoke the license. License would be revoked if it was a big problem in the neighborhood. You couldn't revoke this. So the way I was thinking about enforcement of this, this would undermine. So you would be left with your normal enforcement tools. So citing folks for weeds, for noise, not much you could do about parking. So that's my concern about this. Once it has a property right, it's much harder to revoke. And it's not that you couldn't do enforcement, but the model of enforcement I was thinking about when I wrote this wouldn't work with this proposal.
Aaron?
And just my comment on that, is that with a, you know, with a rental co-op, I think at the revocation option is appropriate, but what we'd be looking at would be a model for equity co-ops that would be an analogous to those for other owners of homes in Boulder. So, I mean, if I'm misbehaving in my home, you can find me, you can, you know, take me to court, you can sue me for misbehavior, but you can't kick me out. So if you're a homeowner, I just think it's appropriate to have similar.
But then you're right back where we are with all the rest of, or the current enforcement issues with noise and trash and parking, that it's basically unenforceable.
I mean, there's all kinds of enforcement things you can do, and we need to do a better job. But we can put it out there for people to discuss. I just, you'd be analogous to other homeowners.
Tom?
One of the things that I was thinking about when I was doing this is, it's going to be hard to staff for this. And so, because when we did rental, short-term rentals, we figured out how much money we were going to get and allocated that to specific staffing to do enforcement. were going to get and allocated that to specific staffing to do enforcement. With only 20 a year, the fees aren't going to cover the processing. It's on, or, well, or they'd have to be pretty high, depending on what level of processing you want. So one of the things I did originally was have very simple processing, so it could be absorbed within the budget. If you're thinking about going down a route where you want to enforce, you might want to think about how we pay for that and whether we fund specific resources to enforce. Again, with a very small number, I'm not sure you hire a person to do this. And with, with short-term rentals, we were looking at 500 potential applicants. And so that's a whole lot easier to justify. With 20, I'm not sure how you do that. So as you go down this route, there's, there are options that we could think about to fund a way to do this.
Lisa, and then Jan.
I'm, I'm going to say I'm with pretty much where Andrew and Matt are. I am not comfortable with giving this a property right. I see this as a privilege. And at the very least, I would want a use review. And I do not think that would create a obstacle.
Jan?
I'd just like to ask what the process, what you see the process to be, because, so do you see this group who is applying to become a cooperative? They are filling out the application and they're getting approved before they go look for a property?
Well, we'd have to talk a little bit about how it's working, because there's a potential change to who gets licensed. But yeah, they would, they would, no, they'd actually have to own the property, be a cooperative, apply for the license. But I modeled it after our rental licensing system, which is a relatively quick process.
Okay, but, but hang on here. Let's just assume we don't have a bunch of them sitting out there. Let's just assume there's a group of people out there right now who are wanting to become a co-op.
Yeah.
I mean, they're never going to buy a property until they know from the city that they're going to get approved. Right? And same thing looking for a short-term. So the process really is, and maybe, you know, the ones who are already in homes, that's something different, but the process really ought to be that they build their plan, they go to the city, and the city says, yep, you've met all the criteria and we're comfortable with you as a group of people being a co-op. And then they go out and acquire their property, whether it's rental or a purchase.
So that's one of the proposed amendments, is divorcing the license from property ownership. So we'll get to that later. As I said, this was modeled after rental licensing, where it's always somebody who owns a property who then applies for the license. But that's another way you could go.
Okay. I mean, that to me seems like a reasonable, the way it ought to work, other than the potential backlog that we've got with people who are maybe already in houses. So I think we really need to be thinking about it broadly, about how, how will this work over time? And in that case, then, if they've already been approved as a co-op according to our very stringent criteria, then I see no reason for a use review on a piece of property, assuming that we have already said, you can go to this neighborhood, you can't go to that neighborhood, because we already know where we have the numbers. Obviously, we get to that, too. But a use review, to me, just seems, you know, way out of line to, to put these people through.
And so I, just to be clear, I see used use review, the, the current ordinance is conditional use review. I use that kind of as short-term. There is something of a difference. A conditional use review is quicker, but it's still, I think, can be called up by planning board.
Andrew?
I guess, let me ask Tom, is it, is it possible in connection with, if we were to grant some sort of property right, is it possible, or would it be problematic under the laws, to have a different fine scale?
I don't think it would be-
What scale?
A different fine scale. I don't think it would be problematic, as long as we had a rational basis for doing it.
And frankly, just thinking about this more broadly, if you're, if you're a duplex or something like that that's grandfathered now, could we do that as well? Just citywide across, for grandfathered, overoccupied units, could we create some sort of multiple to make the fines assistently, basically consistent across the board for the, you know, the way people feel them?
Yeah. The general test is, for equal protection purposes, is it rationally related to a legitimate government purpose? I think I could find a rational basis for that. I don't, I'd have to think if there's any discriminatory impact that would have more strict scrutiny, but I can't think of one off the top of my head, Andrew.
Okay. So anyway, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of exploring something like that further. I think it would help a lot with a lot of the neighborhood enforcement issues. I think that's a lot of the pushback that we're getting. And I'm still open to the idea of the, of the property right. I don't think it's tied as much to me, to the financing, for the reasons that Matt and I described. But that being said, you know, if you, if you think about this, you know, I mean, to Aaron's point, you know, why treat a group of people, you know, their ability to be in their home differently than, than a family? And as long as you have a fine system with teeth that can actually, that can actually be enforced, and so, you know, if you've got trash, maybe it's $400 instead of $100 or whatever. And, and frankly, that may have, that may have a real effect, so.
All right. Any other comments on this one?
Do you want to motion?
Yeah. So I gather that you're generally accept, okay with the language that's in the packet as attachment E. That second section needs some work because it doesn't really make a lot of sense. And do you want me, do you want me to propose a more stringent fine schedule for equity co-ops?
I mean, I think I'm comfortable with that if this is the way that we're going to go. I would also just reiterate that conditional use review is staff-level, if I recall correctly, and I can't recall calling them up hardly ever from the planning board, so it would have to be a pretty exceptional case. So I'm still interested in the possibility of a staff-level review around things like, are the number of people per the guidelines? And so maybe it would even be after the fact of a purchase, but it's, when I say the number of people, if there's a certain 200 square feet per person, you know, is that match with the plan? Or would you do that through the city manager?
Well, it, to me, it depends in part on where you go on some of these other things. The, remember, there's been a push to say do a transportation demand management plan. That's not really something that we can review as part of a rental licensing evaluation. And so something like that's going to probably require a conditional use review. So I've tried to keep the criteria relatively simple and pretty much paper checking. If council desires to go to a place where you're going to require more in-depth analysis, my recommendation would be then, yeah, you probably want to consider, consider a conditional use review because you're making sort of substantive judgments on, does somebody have the right transportation demand management plan, if that's where you go? But maybe we should just hold that thought until you get through all of these and perhaps come back to it, because it's, it's a, it's more of a, how do we do this as an organization question rather than tied to this particular issue?
Lisa?
I have a problem with just a conditional use review, and I'm more in favor of a use review because it gives, it does come before the planning board. The community has an opportunity to weigh in, pros, cons, and then the planning board has the ultimate decision that they can make. And then council, if necessary, could call it up if they want it to. So for me, I am not okay with just a conditional use review. I know in a conditional use review, the, the planning board does have an opportunity to call it up, but as Sam said, that rarely happens. And so I think as we start on this, is, we want to go slowly, we want to go baby steps, and we want to make sure that what we do works for the, the community. And so, anyway, those are my comments.
So I have a question on, do we do notifications on conditional use reviews?
Charles Farrow happens to be here.
Charles is in the house.
Good thing.
Hi, good evening, Council. Charles Farrow, Community Planning and Sustainability. So just to be clear, there's two flavors of use review. There's conditional use review, which is an administrative, staff-level approval, no call-up authority by planning board.
Oh.
Regular use review has full call-up authority by the, the planning board. Full use reviews are publicly noticed to property owners within 600 feet of the property. There is no notification requirement for conditional use review.
Thank you.
You bet.
Well, that's good to table later for the notification discussion. Aaron?
So I just, I had a motion to move us forward on this issue. Matt, did you want to chime in before I did, or you want?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you know, undoubtedly support whatever motion you make, but I am still-
Do I get-
Yeah, anything.
Go either. I'm running for it.
Yeah, I know you too well. You're just not very daring. It'll be, you know, all those years I'm planning board.
You're safe with me.
Right. I am still nervous about the equity, the property right stuff. I mean, I get, in a sense, the, the need for it and the nominal fairness, but I do get nervous about something being permanent when we're not really quite sure what the implications are and what happens when these things turn over and be sold from one to another, to another over time inevitably, and then something is literally permanent and you just never can get rid of it. So I have a little concern about that. I'll think about that some more. That's not a for tonight issue. And the second thing, which I think we all need to think about some more, is the use review question, which again, kind of comes up here and then again in the notification. You know, why bother notifying somebody if there's nothing anybody can do about it? I'm not saying that in a negative or positive way, it's just, these are part of the conversation that we're going to have to have. And if you're going to have a use review, then you really do need some criteria. And I think they have to be, some of them at least have to be place-based criteria. And I'm not pushing for this, believe me, but I, I think that has to be part of the next round of conversation. But for tonight, just to move past this, I'm okay with it. But I think this, because it raises some other related issues, we're going to have to come back to it.
Aaron and-
So I'll just, I'll just move that, that we move forward with property rights for equity cooperatives as laid out in attachment E in our packet, subject to the modification to Part B, Tom, that you want to make.
Okay.
And I would also then, it was a technical clarifying thing on-
The language doesn't make any sense.
I didn't want to say it that way, but.
I apologize for that.
I'll just put that, put that out there and then to say it sounds like we should revisit the use review discussion as we get near the end of the rest of it. So I'll put that out there.
Just one real quick comment in regards to what Matt said. I would not see this to be, if, if a co-op has gotten approved and certified and then they buy a house, they cannot just sell the house to anyone. They have to sell it to someone who's been approved by the city as a certified co-op. So they don't just get the right to sell to a bunch of students who are going to unoccupy.
No, presumably that's correct. I'm assuming that that's accurate. But what's also accurate is that the right for that property to house a co-op is essentially eternal, even as things around it might change over time. This is how we end up with all these stupid grandfathered properties that make us a little crazy. So they're both true, and the question is, how do you balance that? And I don't know. I'm just, just raising it.
There's a little subtlety to answer Jan's question. In the language, we said it was subject to the non-conforming use standards, and one of those is if you abandon it, you lose the right. So, so you could sell it to, to a family-
Right.
And then you would just lose the right to operate as a co-op.
Right.
So you could still sell the property to a non-co-op, they just-
Correct.
Yeah.
But you could, you could continue to sell it to a co-op.
But they'd have to be all criteria.
Which isn't, again, it's just a bad thing, but you have the right to do that.
Yeah.
So there's a motion on the table by Aaron, and is there a second? And seconded by Jan. All in favor of this motion?
In this form, Lisa says no.
I, I say no. So there's five to zero, so the motion, I'm five to two, I'm sorry.
And we will be coming back to the conditional use review.
When we get to the notification.
And I will propose some language on fines that's not part of this, but which will be there for your consideration at second reading.
Right.
So I got, I've gotten that instruction.
And the one thing, too, to be thinking about, I mean, to Matt, Matt raises a good point, is a great example of sort of unexpected consequences, and we're starting to think through these issues, and that is, you know, you sell it to, I mean, we talk about sort of, well, only a co-op can, can buy it, but if you sell it to a group and you can't take away that property right yet, they stop operating as a co-op. You know, two of them take off and they're, yeah, I don't know, I'm just, you know, again, it gets, this idea of just counting on future co-op-ness is, I think is, is a bit illusory. But, but that, and I think, I think, you know, I think we just have to assume that it is going, you know, you've increased the occupancy of this home, and that's what you've done. And I don't owe people to harbor illusions that it's going to be the same co-op that bought it, because what we're saying is you can't take it away. And so, and that's why, for me, the fines are so important and, and the enforcement structure is so important, so.
Well, Lisa?
And I'm very concerned about providing this right and what it does to the affordability of that particular house. And I think, I mean, we're talking about affordable housing, and what we're doing here is we're basically giving value to a property that did not have that value prior to then. And so we're promoting the increase of the value of that particular property.
So that, all right, so I agree with Lisa's and Matt's sentiments, but that, what you just said, Lisa, brings up the idea for me of allowing it to be a property right if it goes along with a deed restriction. So that would, that would be a way that I would support it.
And can you just describe a little bit more that deed restriction?
What would that look like?
So when it is purchased by the cooperative, as a cooperative, they would agree to make it a deed-restricted dwelling unit.
So affordable deed restriction, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, affordable deed restriction.
And could it be, I mean, we're getting into the weeds, perhaps, but could it be sold to, at a later date, without the deed restriction if it's no longer got the occupancy limit, the co-op? So in other words, you could-
I think that would be a good way to get middle-income housing. Sam?
So just to make sure I understand, there's a few ways that deed restrictions work. One is that a house can only appreciate it at a certain rate per year, right? There's another way, which is to say that the people who live there have to be paying, you know, rates personally that are within affordability, 30% of their income. Do you mean one of those in particular or the other?
I don't mean either one in particular.
Okay.
I'd be open to whatever might work better to get that sort of affordability.
Because I've been pretty swayed by the argument that the co-op people make, that there's no reason that if it's all their own money, in other words, the city's not putting in any money to buy affordability, that there's no reason to penalize them on the appreciation rate. But at the same time, if we could be sure that we were getting affordable housing in exchange for getting a property right, that would be an interesting conversation to have.
So Aaron had-
Aaron?
And I'll just, to Lisa's point about affordability, I think what you get is if you have, you know, say, in an equity situation, like six or eight people buying a house together, you have an inherent affordability on your per-person level because you're dividing a similar cost over more people. So you're not losing affordable housing, you're, you're gaining affordability for the, for the owners, the new owners of that house. And then I've heard, I just wanted to address at this point, an argument I've heard from a number of sources, which is that you'd be hurting the affordability of the housing market in general. And I just want to say that with the numbers of co-ops that we'd be talking about here, you know, we, we have, what, I think, 40? you know, we, we have, what, I think 40 odd thousand dwelling units in the city, 44,000 or something like that, of which maybe half are, are ownership units. And we're looking at, at least the way we have it structured right now, a maximum of 15 co-ops per year. So after 10 years, you'd have it at most 150. And I think that's really unlikely, by the way, because cities that have had cooperatives for decades, like Berkeley and Madison, don't have more than a couple dozen, maybe, maybe three dozen, as we've heard before. But even if you went with a very maximality, you'd be at 150. Well, 150 out of, you know, 40 odd thousand is a very small percentage and extremely unlikely to have any market impact because of the numbers. So particularly if we also put in concentration requirements, like we're talking about, we'll get to those later. So I just wanted to address that. I don't think we're going to be impacting the market structure of housing in the city by these very small numbers of units.
If I could respond? Lisa?
Um, I, I don't agree. I understand the whole concentration thing, but I think you'll be putting a multiplier effect. So while it might not affect that particular house, that particular house is going to increase in, in value. And then the adjacent houses are also going to increase in value potentially. And then the taxes associated with that. So I think it's not just the number of co-ops, it's how it affects that particular neighborhood or street on which it's on, so.
All right. So can we move on to the next item?
Yep. So now we get to the easy stuff, occupancy. So the council asked, at Sam's suggestion, that we draft up a sort of, an occupancy limit that differed based on the zone district. So what we've done is said that for rural residential, rural density, you could have one occupant per 400 square feet of space. In residential medium density, you'd have one occupant for 300 square feet of space. And all others, it would be 200 square feet of space. And in the proposed amendment, I changed the language from habitable space to uninhabitable space. So I sort of flipped it. And that's because we've, we've long had a definition of uninhabitable space in our code. And so I thought using an existing definition made more sense than adopting it. And I think I may, here, this is the existing definition of uninhabitable space. So it's not a lot, but at least it's clear. And one of the things we've gotten, some feedback we've gotten on some of the prior drafts was defining habitable space. If you say subsurface, well, a lot of people have bedrooms that are legal subsurface and you wouldn't want to not count those. So this just basically makes it things like, that are not really occupiable. So a room with a ceiling that's less than six feet or a room that's dedicated to a boiler would not be habitable space and not countable. So just for fun, I remember in our last presentation, I, I used a, a house that I'd found on the market, a 1,500 square foot house, and broke it down into the various things that we'd done. And I added these provisions to see how these would be occupied. This, this particular house, if we moved it around the town and it was in different zone districts. So as you can see, under the IPMC, you could have 11. Under the revised proposal, which was, I think, 200 square feet per person, it would be seven. Under the community proposal that we'd gotten, it would be 11. In a, if it was in a rural, that should be RR or RE, it would be three. In mixed, you, mixed, in medium density, it would be five. And all others, it would be seven again, because again, it's back to the 200 square feet.
Can I ask another question? That R M is, like, R M X is included in that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And can I ask a question? You go back to your definition of uninhabitable, which I, I do actually remember, but this would, this would suggest the garage is habitable.
Yeah. It will, it would at least be counted as habitable space.
Well, that changes your, what you just showed us, if that house has a garage.
Maybe. I don't know how the square footage was measured in that house.
Well, I assure you what you just had, the square footage never includes garages, ever. And so if that house has a two-car garage, which is 400 square feet.
The numbers would go up.
The numbers would go up.
Yeah.
Which I find a little bizarre, which is why I was asking the question.
Yeah.
So I'm not so sure using uninhabitable is quite the right thing, but it's a good start. I mean, it's certainly the right way to start.
So.
And, and one more thing, go to your, uh, your proposal, just a wording thing. So when you say 400 fair square feet of space or 300 square square feet of space, I, I would assume you have to say something like interior space or dwelling space. I mean, that could be the size of the lot.
Yeah.
The way you've got it written.
All right.
Which is another question I've got, but I'll come back to that. I just wanted to ask those two, two specific questions.
Yeah. Could you go back to inhabitable space, please? So any parking facility located below grade. So to Matt's point, it doesn't include garages and we're not supposed to be living in garages? Are those, I mean, somebody offered me to rent a, in a garage a long time ago, but, but are garages, are those legal, um, living spaces?
Well.
No.
Okay, so.
They wouldn't meet the bedroom requirement.
But according to that, you could have a garage and live in it?
Yeah, we'd have to restrict it to not include garages.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Sam?
Yeah. So I kind of suggested this at the last hearing, so I'll take a crack at why I think it would be a balance between what the co-op community is trying to get done here and which I support, and what the neighbors are concerned with, which I understand. And, you know, it's just the idea in a neighborhood that has been traditionally single-family dwelling and that we're not going to allow these new privileges in the neighborhood. And, you know, what does that really look like in a neighborhood? If there's a 2,400 square foot home, are we talking six, eight, or 12 people, right? And that has a big impact, I believe, on the way that people in the neighboring houses will look at it. So I don't know if I picked the numbers right. They came from the pluck and place, so they're as random as anything. But I was just trying to think of, okay, in a, you know, lower density neighborhood, if it was six, that wouldn't seem to be as much of an impact. Eight's a little more and 12 sure seems like it could be a whole lot, you know, depending on the number of cars, the number of visitors. You know, what I think about sometimes is, we think about this as far as the number of residents, but there can also be boyfriends and girlfriends and, and, you know, visitors and, and so on and so forth. So I would just like to say that I do understand, there's one argument against this, which is to say lot size. You know, RE and RL are, are bigger. And so there's the idea that if you're further away, you would have less impact. But that's not where I think of most of these places and the ones that would have the most likely impact. So anyway, that's why I was thinking about it and that's, I was trying to use this to balance interests.
Lisa?
And Sam, I appreciate you bringing that forward. One of my concerns in, is in the residential medium density zones, is that some of the setbacks are very small. And so, and there's, seems to be a whole variety of setbacks. And, and so I guess before going too far down, and we're not going to do that tonight, but I would want to look more at the variety of medium density zones and the setbacks in those. I visited one that is in the R M X one, and I think the setbacks in that is something like three feet. So you have, or maybe it's five feet. But there you have a very minimal space and I think we have to be sensitive to the impacts in there. So it's just, it's more a comment.
Matt?
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think, I think this is the right track, but I really don't know what the right numbers are. And just going to have to think about this some more. Yeah, lot size is a puzzlement because it kind of works in the inverse. And that's what's a little confusing about it. I, I am sure that most of the people in our RR and RE zones would not be thrilled if we said there could be more people there. And frankly, most of those houses aren't affordable even by co-ops or by anybody at this point. But there are exceptions. There are definitely exceptions. And, and it's the inverse for the obvious reasons. I mean, Sam was alluding to it, that at least in theory, the houses are further apart. Although even in ONZs, the site setback is only 10, 15 feet. So it really depends on how it's literally laid out, not what the rules are. You can be in an ER zone, you can be 10 feet away from, or 15 feet away from your neighbor. You could be 70 feet away from your neighbor.
That's another argument for a use review.
Yep. Well, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm not going there at the moment, but I think this is where you, you have to decide, you either kind of have a one-size-fits-all and it's good enough, or you start doing specific site-by-site types of analysis. Because I don't think there's an in-between. I mean, yeah, every site's different. So either you just say it's good enough. So I'm not sure about this. The one thing I would probably add, and I don't ask me for the number either, is I would add, I would probably add some absolute cap.
Yeah.
Fine, so you have a 3,700 square foot house, of which a whole bunch is a basement and maybe some is a garage. People have finished their garages legally or not, because we're going to have to do something about all the illegal space in a lot of these units, which I don't know what we do. There's a gazillion amount of, you know, unpermitted finished space and boulder, including garages all over the place. Do you let them get away with it? Does it have to be, have been permitted? I don't know. But nonetheless, you could have, you know, a 3,700 square foot house in a LR neighborhood or RL neighborhood with a bunch in the basement. And, you know, you divide by 200, you get a lot of people.
Can I tag on?
Sam?
This is just a colloquy. I, I've also been thinking about floors and minimums. You know, we could say.
Floors and?
Floors, minimums, maximums.
Minimum, he just proposed a cap or maximum.
Minimums are good too, by the way.
You could have a minimum that would be workable from a co-op standpoint. So you could say that, you know, you don't want a co-op in too small of a place and you want it to be, if it's 200 square feet per, and six would be something that you'd want, then you could say it needs to be 1,200 square feet, but you could have at least six. If you meet that requirement, you could have at least six people in there. And so the, the thing I was thinking through is, you know, co-ops explain that you need a certain number of people to make them work. And so I didn't want to set up things that aren't going to work for the co-ops or for the neighbors.
Do we have a motion? Aaron?
Well, I'll chime in here. That's an interesting idea, Sam, if you, if you talk about, as long as you have a, a building that's a reasonable size, to have a floor so that you can make something workable. I think to me, that makes some of this a, a little bit more workable, more functional. I just want to bring up, you know, Suzanne wrote us a, a nice long email with some of her opinions. And she, she looked at more of two tiers rather than three, which, you know, I think is more along the lines of what I'm thinking. But, you know, in terms of the, the public testimony that we've gotten, both in the, in the public hearing that we got and a number of emails, the, the concern that I'm hearing emerge more often than any other is a change in neighborhood character predominantly. And what I'm hearing is really about the, the zones that are basically RL, you know, whether that's one or, or two. But people who live in Martinakers or the Hill and say, you know, I don't, I don't want 17 people living next to me because that's not what I signed up for. So that might be the, the carve-out that we might make, is it might be a one category is the RL one and twos that do have smaller lot sizes on average and that are, I think, the, the neighborhoods where people are most concerned about neighborhood character and changes to itself. Throw that out there as a possibility for moving forward as a, as one, one place where we put a gradation on.
Lisa?
Yeah, I would, though, I guess I would include how it is right now, the RRs and just the RLs, as one. I think still, you have to ask people, why did they move to a particular place? And, and putting 25 people in a RE or RR or residential low density, it just, I think you're creating conflict just from the start, so.
So I'm willing to put a motion out.
Please.
So I move that we move forward with this amendment to have different occupants per square footage based on different zone districts without determining what the number is, whether it's two or three classes and whether it's 200, 300, or 400. I would just like to keep this concept in place. You can pick, Tom, and bring them back to us because I think that we will have some more to say about it.
So how about we, we use what we've drafted?
Sure.
And then you can mark that up at the end.
Yep, yep. So I move that.
Want to say anything about a max?
Well, I, I agree that I would like us to consider caps and floors. I don't have anything very helpful to give. I mean, I guess I could see a floor being six. You don't want to have one that doesn't have six, so I'm comfortable there. Caps more difficult, do you?
It's a little more difficult, I agree.
But I could see the caps being also by zone district.
Would you be interested in doing it per bedroom?
No. No.
People can make their own bedrooms.
You can do, you can, you can make bedrooms out of anything.
Legal bedrooms?
Yeah.
Yeah, Andrew has a good bunch of good examples.
So is that clear enough that we stick with the three that we have here and that we consider? Tom, you, you put us out an idea for caps and floors, because I don't have anything right at the moment, but.
All right. There's a motion by Sam. Do we have a second? I'll second it.
All right.
All right, so all in favor?
So I'll just say this is a better starting point than where we are, but this also is going to take a little more work.
Mm-hmm. It will. All right, on to the next item.
License not tied to ownership.
Can I just say, on that last, and you're going to amend the uninhabitable space to include garages? Yes, to, or to also exclude garages?
I'll, I'll, I'll put this in as the part of the ordinance and then propose some language to deal with some of the issues that you raised.
Very good.
In the memo. So license not tied to ownership. So the, the way I originally drafted this, you had to, again, modeling on rental licenses, you have to own the property to get the license. Counsel asked me to draft some language that would allow for a group to have a license and then go purchase a property or rent a property. So I, I used the definition, I'm assuming that you're going to have a definition for legitimate cooperative organization. And so that was, we talked about that earlier in the certification section. So I just carried that concept forward into here and said that you could, if you have, you, you're certified as such an organization, you could get yourself licensed. And that's the, the language. And there's a provision, this was also suggested by counsel, that you could only get a license with the consent of the, of the property owner. You could only operate, I'm sorry, you, you could get the license, but you could only operate with the written consent.
Anybody want to pick that off or is it fine as it is?
I'll just make one comment. I mean, if we're going to allow rental licenses, I guess I'm okay with this. I'd just tell you, I'm not sold on, on rental co-ops. And we're not talking about that tonight. I'm sure that will come back in the next go-around, but I just still see huge problems with rental co-ops that I haven't yet figured out how to solve.
Can you give an example?
Uh, yeah. A lot of phony rental co-ops, that's the example. And I just, and I'm not knocking the, the people who are serious about co-ops. There are a lot of people who are serious and who'll do it right. But I, this, you know, it is amazing. And all you got to do is look at current rental stuff and what's going on with the short-term rentals and the number of people who find ways to cheat. It's just kind of unbelievable. It's very hard to not have loopholes. And a lot of really clever people out there. And maybe this goes back to, and I mean, this is where things get all intertwined. It goes back to certification. It goes back to a lot of things. They're all glued together. And, you know, the better we can have certification, whatever on earth that means, the easier it is, at least for me, to support rental licenses. I'm, I'm not quite there yet. But again, these are not stand, I mean, they're just not standalone issues. They all come together. And unfortunately, you need to fix several of them to be comfortable about the, the outcome. So yeah, I'm mostly concerned about people can set up look-alike co-ops and.
Imposter co-ops, Suzanne called them.
Yeah, that's what Suzanne called them. And it's, I'm not, not knocking staff, I'm not knocking anything. It's, I think, very hard to enforce all of that. It's just inherently difficult.
Andrew?
So I, I think this is the kind of thing that is, that, that starts to get us to the point where we don't have imposter co-ops. I mean, I'm, especially if we get the certification, which I frankly, you know, that's why I I mean, especially if we get the certification, which I frankly, you know, that's why I keep coming back to the, I get the acronym wrong, but the group, the co-op nonprofit group right now, you know, it's not in their interest to certify a bunch of student, you know, fraternities and whatnot to become these. And so, again, I like the idea of having multiple layers of checking, but that's why I would want them involved in some way. And to be, and on the rental issue, you know, I've struggled with this for some time. I'm more comfortable with the rental situation than the owner situation, because for exactly the reasons we've been talking about, the rental allows the revocation of the permit, and it's the owner that starts to pose all these sort of equity fairness issues. What do you do if somebody moves out and they want to leave and they want to sell their interests? Is it still a co-op? Is it this, is it that? But the rental, if you've got teeth on it, you can yank the permit, and it's with a group of people, then we can fix a mistake, essentially. It's harder to fix a mistake with an equity co-op, so.
Mary?
Sam?
So, I'd like to tag on to that, because I have two thoughts. We have tied the fact that we changed our occupancy enforcement mechanisms to trying to also have co-op ordinance that makes sense, and then we've also tied that to additional enforcement, right? And we've said that that is a key thing, is we want to clean up, Matt, I believe, some of the rental situations that you described, and we wanted to do it without penalizing people who are being good actors. And so, I am very much in favor of we use this kind of momentum that we've got to increase enforcement around, you know, property conditions, things that, you know, Macon used to bring up a lot, I think are important. So, and so I agree with Andrew that this gives us a way to do that, a path that allows us to separate, and I think this also does something else, which is, it gives the group that holds the license some pricing power. You know, in other words, the landlords are going to be, may be able to charge a little more for the house, but the people individually are going to be paying less than they would otherwise. And so, I think this structure actually gives the people who are going around to the different locations a little bit of power, that if we made it with the property, then the landlords would have all the power. And so, I think this is the right way to balance those interests.
So, if I can add on to that real quickly. So, Andrew, you make really good points. I guess, again, it comes back to the certification and the enforcement, which we've all struggled with, because it's hard. Again, it's not blaming anybody, it's just hard. You know, I've asked several times, what would it really take to enforce not just co-ops, but frankly, the problems aren't so much with the co-ops, they were with the gazillion rentals that we have, the 20,000 rentals we have in Boulder, that's where the problems are. What would it take, both in terms of any legal difficulties that we have, as well as just, you know, enforcement, people out there doing it, and the cost of that? And then, you know, with the co-op, and I don't remember what's in the current version of the ordinance, honestly, but there's also some, at least in my mind, on clarity as to, you know, what is a transgression? Is it complaints? Is it convictions? Tom has told us, very rarely do we get convictions, because we, things just kind of work through the court system, which is, makes all the sense in the world, but that makes it very hard to base something on a conviction. So, what do you base it on? Just a complaint? Well, that's kind of unfair. Anybody can complain about anything. So, to me, those things need to get sorted out. They may not be that hard, but they at least need one more round of sorting, so I can see the whole picture.
Lisa?
For me, I don't know exactly where I'm going to land on this, but my biggest concern is enforcement, and we had an issue in my neighborhood, it took over 12 years to resolve, and that is unacceptable. There's quite a few of these, and I'm hopeful that we can have a study session on enforcement. I'm not going to be able to go forward on any of this unless we are really upping the enforcement, and unless we can show some kind of a track record that when there is a violation, and it's just so blatant, that is resolved almost immediately. And that has not been the case, and so, I don't know if it means that we need to hire a whole bunch more enforcement officers on a temporary basis for two to four years until we get this thing right. But, right now, we're not enforcing, and this, we're not enforcing what we need to be enforcing, and I get the sense that we are woefully, woefully, woefully understaffed on enforcement, despite the fact that over the last few budget cycles, we have added additional enforcement, and I appreciate that, but I think we just have to look at the short-term rentals and the creativity of the people who are taking those, and...
So, that's not fair.
No, I know...
We're not even six months into short-term rentals, and we give people a six-month grace period.
I'm not trying, but...
So, to say we're not enforcing, that's just not fair, and we have dedicated...
Okay, okay, but, Tom, we...
Give us a year and tell us what we're doing. So, Lisa...
Let me please finish, because in the enforcement of the short-term rental that we all know about, that there's been a repeated complaint on before that, this is not the first time, this particular homeowner has really weaseled the system, and that in this particular case, there were so many complaints prior to it becoming a short-term rental, it was a over-occupancy situation. And so, all I'm saying, so I'm sorry, I picked short-term rentals, because I know we had six months. All I'm saying is, we don't enforce very well, or adequately, the violations that are going on, and...
So, let me just take you back through some history. Two years ago, we had an enforcement study session, and we laid out a plan to try to do it better, and we're still in the midst of that plan. I mean, we did a whole thing on doing better occupancy enforcement, and we've held off doing that until we finished this. So, it's not really fair to say that we haven't done it, or we haven't looked at it. On code enforcement, we certainly have improved our performance on code enforcement over the last few years with the additional budget things. So, it's, to say globally that we don't do enforcement, that's not fair. We do, and we try very hard. In these areas, it's really challenging, and remember, a lot of the stuff really lays at the feet of decisions that were made years ago, in terms of, so, over-occupancy, grandfathering in folks, that was a decision, allowing, allowing, when you, some, you had to do, but when we rezoned the Hill, we allowed existing uses to stay, and we don't really have a good way of getting rid of non-conforming uses. So, there's some, a lot of things that you hear about as non-enforcement are things that are embedded in the system. Nuisance, I mean, we've talked about nuisance. I would love to rewrite our nuisance ordinance. Our nuisance ordinance was written by landlords to basically prevent us from ever bringing a nuisance action, in my view. So, we don't really have a lot of the tools. We're doing better, and we're in the middle of a process that began with a study session on enforcement.
I get that, but I can send you a whole list of properties that we had problems.
All right, so, let's get back on topic. Andrew?
So, I just, the reason, I want to explain a little bit to the public, too, who's here, and appreciate all the involvement of everyone in this process, and we've had, you know, we have these issues, this enforcement issues, for example, come up in multiple meetings, so, you know, may not be privy to this, for the co-op crowd, obviously, we've got, you know, a real perception in the community that our enforcement doesn't work so well, and I've heard and been a part of, anecdotally, many of those instances, and on the flip side, you know, well, it's not for a lack of effort on the city's part, but we do have some problems, and I think Tom pointed them out, it's not just occupancy, by the way, it's nuisance, it's all kinds of things. You hear people's stories about the second somebody lawyers up, the city drops the case. That's at least, that's a perception out there, and it could be because of our laws need to be addressed. And so, I think one of the things we talked about in the last study session is addressing what the public perception of the problems with enforcement is, so that we can then figure out how to address it from that end, perhaps, rather than just say, throw more money at it, or whatever, because if the laws are no good, and they're not allowing the city to enforce, then we got to fix that. It's not just adding, people are saying the city's not doing its job, it's that we don't have the right tools to do our job. So, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jane and Tom, we're going to start looking at this here in the near future. Yep, okay. So, everybody realizes it's an issue.
Aaron?
Oh, go ahead, Aaron.
Well, I just thought I'd try to move this forward, still got a bunch left. So, just to make a motion that we adapt, adopt the proposed amendment with the license not tied to ownership, as Tom has put forward here, and just that Andrew and Sam put it well, and I think this is one of our important tools to control market impacts of co-ops, and to make sure that we get good and legitimate co-ops, so I think this is a great way to go.
A second.
All right, all in favor? It passes? Six to one, Lisa, voting against. All right, on to number five.
Parking. Okay, so, it doesn't get easier. So, parking is clearly one of the impacts that the community's concerned about, and the council's expressed concern about. So, the proposed ordinance would require the co-op to submit a parking plan to limit the cooperative to no more than four vehicles. At the last session, council asked me to come up with some more specific criteria, and so, I basically went back to the existing 963B, which is the current cooperative ordinance, and added a provision on requiring off-street parking, so one space for every two residents, and having an alternative of getting an ecopass for everyone there.
Who wants to kick it off? Lisa?
So, Tom, do we have a, in this right now, do we have a, in the last version, we did not have a onsite parking management plan?
Well, the last version was they'd have to submit a plan to show why they would never have more than four vehicles.
Right, but it didn't say where those four vehicles were, and it didn't address that they needed to be onsite, or they can be parked on the street.
No. This is, this is the first time I've proposed something that requires off-street parking.
Okay, well...
And that was purposeful, because one of the criticisms we heard about the old ordinance was, the off-street parking requirements made it virtually impossible to create a co-op. So, my original draft didn't have those. When you asked me to come back with more specific, I don't know how you get more specific without actually requiring off-street parking. So, I at least wanted to tee up the issue for you to have a discussion on whether that's a direction you want to go. I can't, I mean, other than just being vague and saying you have to have a transportation demand management plan, which I'm not sure works, I don't know another way to go, and I wanted to hear where you are on this.
Well, I am interested in requiring an off-street parking management plan, and I think it depends on where you are. I mean, I think if you go to certain neighborhoods, this will not work, and other neighborhoods, it would work just fine, but I don't know how this can just be a one-size-fits-all. So, I guess I'd be interested in terms of Sam's proposal about square footage in different zones. I'd be interested in you coming back with something about a parking management plan with respect to various zoning types.
All right, Aaron, and then Matt.
Well, so, Tom, I appreciate you bringing forward the alternative, but I don't support the approach of the one off-street parking space per two occupants. Just as a city, we don't, we're moving away from that kind of minimum parking requirement, and then you'd either make it impossible to park it adequately, or you'd, with that requirement, or you'd end up with no landscaping and all concrete, so that you could, you know, create the required number of parking spots. So, I'd like to see a TDM approach, which is transportation demand management, which is how we go with our other kind of development approaches in town, and including saying that if you are in a neighborhood ecopass zone, that you're required to have ecopasses, but that maybe this is part of what gets certified by the city manager as the TDM plan for the development.
Matt?
Well, I'm kind of partially with Aaron, at least the first part. I think there is some problem with saying one off-street for two occupants, but TDM plans don't guarantee you any outcome whatsoever. Ecopasses don't guarantee you any outcome whatsoever either. They're nice, but their relationship to the outcome is, who knows? It depends an awful lot on the people and the location, and a million other variables that change over time. You know, we struggled with this with our TDM plans for commercial, and we've talked about making them outcome-based, just because the plan doesn't mean much. The outcome is what you're really looking for. That is hard to measure. So, I don't know, I mean, I realize this is a big deal, and this one's got me puzzled as well, I got to say, as to what to do that doesn't make them impossible, but on the other hand, reduces the effect of a co-op being there. Tom, you said, you know, the four vehicles is essentially unenforceable. I'm sure that's true. I never really understood how we were going to figure that out or enforce it, so, although it's another one of these things that sounds good, I don't think really we could make it work. I don't know. All I can say is, TDM plans don't excite me. They just, they're, you know, they're nice, they're on paper, but they don't necessarily have a relationship to an outcome.
Andrew?
Just, and then, in the neighborhoods that have a parking permit system, would this, I mean, if you have, if you had a co-op, or we're not, we're assuming that it's still limited to the same number of parking permits as a single-family home, is that fair? Or we, is there talk about upping that? Or how would that work?
So, you've been talking about NPP area.
Yeah, like on the Hill, for example.
Nobody's discussed that.
Yeah.
Great, so, you know, I mean, Andrew, that's a good, it's a good point.
It's Alan.
It's Alan. You know, I always forget who you are.
Everybody does.
I don't know why. That's a good point. Now, we don't know if one of these is going to be in an NPP, of course, except I think everything's going to be an NPP eventually, but, you know, we've talked about, and I've been pushing this, changing how many permits you get, because when you add up all the permits you can get, and your visitor permits, and your guest permits, you can get a heck of a lot of permits, so you could still have six cars on the street, effectively. And so, but if you are in an NPP, I think it should be part of this, and we'd have to figure out what the right number is, but that's a really good point. Now, it only affects some portion, but it's an important portion.
Right, I mean, that's where the biggest parking complaints are.
In theory, that's where the rest is, yeah.
And so, I guess that would be important to me, is that, is sort of not adding to the impact of sort of the homes in the neighborhood already, and I don't think there's a proposal to, I don't think people are interested in adding a bunch of cars to the co-ops anyway, but, so, for whatever limit there is for the existing house before it became a co-op, seems like that should be the number of parking spaces it gets at the time, and that's pretty much self-limiting. I mean, if you don't have the, you don't have your parking pass, and you're in an NPP, you get a ticket, right? I mean...
Yes.
Yeah, so, but...
That one we enforce.
What's that?
That one we enforce.
They do, yes, yes, so... Yeah. They're going around collecting money, yeah, so...
Sam?
So, I was going to go there to Andrew, so thank you. The NPP intersection with co-ops is very useful and helpful. Tom, what about contracts? Because one of the things that we're asking for the co-op folks to do is to bring us some assurances that thus and so are true, and so there's third-party assurances, there's also the internal practices that they practice where they will only allow a certain number of cars to be owned by people if they know it when they interview them at the time to join the co-op. Do you feel like there's anything that's useful there?
Certainly, it's a promise, it's really hard to enforce.
Sure, and I'm not necessarily saying this would be easy to enforce, but, you know, to the extent that we can at least require that the bylaws say these things, and that that's, you know, a requirement for certification, some number of people will be good actors, and some number will be bad.
So, the first one required them to submit a plan that they'd have no more than four vehicles. So, they could do that, they could, their plan could be, our bylaws say that only three people can own cars, or have cars.
But I kind of agree with Lisa, you know, in some places, four off-street cars parking, or, you know, three off-street is a pretty big impact, and in other places, it's a non-event. And so, the other question would be, you know, with an NPP, the problem is solved, right? That's just done. But in a case like this, why did we come up with four? I mean, why not three in some zones, or two?
So, I think that, I could be misjudging, I think I got four, it's been a while, because I think it's in the prior ordinance, or there was some discussion during the prior ordinance, and that's a little bit more than a family would have. I think the average family has almost three vehicles. I think the average family has almost three vehicles. I mean, I think that's where it came from. And so it's one up from three.
Okay, thank you.
There's no magic to the number.
That's helpful. I just want to comment, I agree with you, Matt. I mean, I think TDMs are quite useful in commercial, you know, buildings where you've got somebody who's paid to, you know, at least do part of that work. In a co-op, it's gonna be quite different and more fluid. So I don't really -- Tom, just my feedback is I don't really believe in a TDM approach here. I don't know that it's gonna get you anything. I would be more for contractual requirements to have fewer and have the number changed by zone district or changed by occupants. So you have four vehicles, but what if it's a six-person co-op, you know, a pretty minimal one? I'd rather see that be two. And if it's going to be 12-person, then maybe it's four. But anyhow, I would see it tied like that.
Well, one thing that is new, I think, new up here is the last sentence of the first piece, which says you have to have a minimum of two off-street parking spaces. We can debate that later, but let's, for this instant of tonight, assume that sticks. While not everybody uses their off-street parking spaces, a lot of people fill them up with junk. And so maybe that's another piece of the contract. Or people, right? Maybe that's another piece of the contract, which is you have to actually use them. That's actually pretty easy to figure out whether they're using them or not. That shouldn't be impossible for somebody to figure. If you really -- if you did that, and if you had some contractual to four, and again, these numbers are all fluid, but for sake of conversation, that would give you two off-street vehicles, which in most places is probably not impossible.
I like that.
Any other comments? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Sam, do you want to do something along the lines of what you were proposing?
So may I make a suggestion?
Yes, please do.
So it sounds like you don't like the proposed amendments, so perhaps we shouldn't incorporate that into the ordinance. Perhaps we should leave the ordinance as it is, and I draft some language that strengthens it along the lines of this discussion for you to consider its second reading.
That would be great. And I think for me, like Matt said, having two off-street parking spaces doesn't seem onerous to me either, so you could start there with that being, you know, a minimum of two off-street parking and then one additional per X -- not one additional parking space, I'm sorry, one additional car allowed per X number of people.
It sounded like you were thinking one car for three people.
Something like that.
I guess, can I just add? I mean, I wonder if that's, you know, you start -- quickly get into zoning districts or what. I mean, if you think about on the Hill, there's not a lot of -- I mean, there are places with two off-street parking places, but there's a lot that don't have them.
True.
And frankly, a lot of them, you don't want people parking in the spot that they might be able to pull under the grass or whatever. I mean, you get some pretty junky-looking stuff going on there. So I don't know about the -- I'm still not sold on the two.
I'm assuming these are legal off-street parking spaces.
Yeah, but these gravel pads that they make and all that other kind of stuff, I don't know.
How about one? I mean, I'm open to the number. I don't know the typologies as well on the Hill.
So it may make less of a difference in a place that has an NPP.
Right, right. Maybe on an NPP, you don't have...
One of the things I'm thinking is that there's a separate provision dealing with places that are already in an NPP.
Can I just ask a question? We have ordinances, though, right now that you can't just pull up, even though people do. You can't just pull up on drive -- on your front yard and use that as a parking space.
No.
Right next to your bear pong table.
Right, right, so...
The grass will be there.
Andrew, we're getting to that, don't worry.
So, I mean, I guess I like the NPP discussion. I like, you know, keeping in the cooperative having a minimum of two off-street parking places and that they have to follow our current ordinances, that they don't do it in the front yard.
So I didn't hear keeping in the two off-street parking. I heard -- so what's in here is two off-street parking, a minimum of one off-street parking for two occupants. Matt suggested a new provision that says that at least two that you actually use.
Well, it says that. I'm just reading from your proposed amendment, and I actually liked it. I am okay with the potential change that we've talked about, that Andrew kind of raised, which is in an NPP, yeah, maybe the standards are a little different because the problem gets solved in a different way. But not everybody's -- I mean, NPPs are in some key areas, but they're not in huge parts of the residential part of Boulder, so...
Right, and we still need to have the discussion that will come back on NPPs because there's some neighborhoods who would say they need NPPs and we haven't done them.
We'll get back to that, but...
The other challenge is that our enforcement for NPPs -- NPPs are basically to prevent commuter parking, so our enforcement is pretty much nine to five. Theoretically, if someone's living there, they could be driving their car to work every day and never be enforced against.
Yeah, all right. That's a good point. I mean, in some places, it's not in Whittier, it's not, but on the Hill, it's -- I don't know what the hours are on the Hill, honestly.
There's not a limit on the signs, it's just, it's full time, right?
It's not the time, it's when we actually have parking enforcement.
Don't tell people.
Don't tell people when we have target board.
All right, so let me just say one other thing about parking enforcement. We've hired two new parking enforcement officers this year, and we are enforcing on weekends in certain areas.
Thanks. So are we good with this one?
So do we have a motion?
Just to go back to...
No, we weren't gonna have a motion because you were just gonna come back with...
With what Tom proposed, right? So that there was some chatter after he proposed that.
So, yeah, what I suggested is leave the ordinance as it is, let me try to draft a different amendment for second reading that incorporates this discussion.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
And maybe several.
Fair enough.
Okay.
All right, move on to number six.
Neighborhood notification. So this is what's in 963B now. I wanted you to have this so you could see the provision that is considered not operative. And then this is what -- of course, the proposed ordinance is nothing. This is the proposed amendment. So what council discussed was having a, basically, welcome-to-the-neighborhood kind of notification system, or we're coming to the neighborhood kind of notification system. You have to certify that you've told everybody you're gonna be there. And I chose, because it seemed to be where your discussion went, the street face. So everybody on either side of the block, you'd have to tell.
Andrew?
First off, is this intended to be in advance or at the time of...
In advance. So this would be part of your application. As part of your application, you would have to certify that you've sent a note out to everybody.
So part of the certification process, potentially?
No, your application process.
But there's nothing anyone could do, right? I mean, it's just sort of, yeah. So this also -- this strikes me a little bit like the short-term rental thing, where you've got to have the property manager who's always available, kind of thing, and it's gotta be published and people need to access it. Why not, rather than having a mailing or whatever, why not have associated with an address, the identification of the individuals and the organization responsible? So for example, if a neighbor has a problem, they can contact that organization that certified them.
So interesting, in the Minneapolis ordinance that we got today, they have a provision that there has to be one of the occupants who is the sort of registered agent. I forget, they used a different term, I don't remember what it was. And you have to notify folks if that person changes. So it's the person you call, rather than having a whole list of everybody. So we could do something along those lines.
Yep.
Okay.
Aaron?
And I just, I think the way that it's -- that I'd be interested in approaching this would be upon move-in. It's a good neighbor kind of a thing. Hey, guys, we live in the neighborhood, nice to meet you, here's who you can contact. That would be the approach I would be interested in taking.
And I think there's been a promise of cookies, right?
Exactly. We need to get cookies in the ordinance.
So, again, I'm thinking of how our staff processes these things. So I put it as before, because then you can -- you have to sign a certification that you've done it. If it's after, if it's upon move-in, we have no way to check. And that's fine, but we have these discussions of enforcement, and this is the way we get things, where, why aren't you enforcing that? Well, because we have no way of knowing whether they've done it.
Lisa?
Well, I'm the one who brought it up last time, and I guess for me, this is still a use review kind of an issue. And the way the original ordinance was written is that there's the city manager rule, and people can, after the co-op has moved in, if there's a complaint, that people can call the city manager night and day and create all kind of havoc. And for me, it's, I think it would be wise to allow some kind of input or whatever to find out whether this is a good fit or not. Or else the city manager will be in the mediation business all the time, or could be, potentially. And so...
What do you mean by a good fit?
Well, if it's -- if there's -- let's put it this way. If there's 22 people who are gonna move next door to you, you might want to know about it. And if you were the 22 people, you might want to contact the people when you're planning on renting that or buying that and seeing what kind of issues would you have, you know, on us moving in? This is not a -- well, we'll see how it turns out, but I think this is a privilege that we're asking. It's not necessarily, I think we just talked about, a property right. So I see that as a different thing. And for me, I would like these to work. So if we have a real problem that you can see at the very beginning, maybe there's a way to modify that. I don't know. But I think a use review or some kind of a conditional use review, and I still don't know the full use review, whether you get notification or not. Do you get notification? So, you know, I guess I want some kind of notification before it happens, either through a use review, a regular use review. Conditional doesn't give a notification.
Andrew, and then Matt, and then Sam.
Going back to the issue of, you know, providing sort of that -- we was talking, was it Minneapolis? Is that what we were talking about?
Yeah.
Minneapolis is providing all kinds of -- anyway. So...
They haven't passed their ordinance yet.
I know, I know.
So they may be sitting there tonight going, look at what Boulders...
I know, exactly, exactly. They've got puppies instead of kittens. So the -- that being said, if we were -- it is enforceable, is it not, you know, to require the sort of the posting of the -- on a website or somewhere, and maybe the city has a location on its website, or maybe there's a location to pull it up on, you know, city records from by the web, this sort of this registered agent concept. We could enforce something like that, right?
Yeah.
And then...
We could have a provision that after they got licensed, within 30 days, they had to submit something.
Right. And I keep coming up with ideas now for our rental program in general. Could we do this with regular rental properties? So that each student doesn't sign up to take the ticket and we could actually effectuate on nuisance property?
Yeah, we've thought about that, and yes.
Yeah, so put that on the rental property list.
Okay.
So just quickly, we've talked about this. I'm fine with this. I'm fine with the registered agent concept, it's all good. But it's not notification in the sense that we mean it normally in our code. And I just want to make sure we don't confuse anybody. Notification in our code is à la use review. Again, I'm not saying that's what we should do, I'm just distinguishing the two. Notification in our code is when you actually have some ability to be part of something or do something. There's gonna be some decision made by somebody. It could be staff, it could be planning board, it could be whomever, it could be Boza, it could be somebody who's appropriate. This is a different sort of thing, and it's perfectly reasonable. I would just use a different word to not confuse the two. And then we, as a group, will have to loop back around to that whole question of, you know, the use review or whatever it is. If we decided to go that route, that would be a true notification, and they're just very different beasts. I mean, they're very different concepts. So that's really my only comment. Let's be careful about our wording so people know what our intent is.
Sam?
Sorry, I kind of like what Tom had started with, in the sense that it's just informative and gives people a heads-up. And unless we do go down some use review path, there isn't anything actionable about the notification. It's just kind of for public notice. And so I'm comfortable starting with that. I mean, it strikes a middle ground to me. I'm not quite sure on whether I want the use review or the conditional use review. Something I'm still thinking about. But I do think some kind of notification, which is different than, you know, people get to vote on whether you're allowed there, it's simply a, we're gonna be here, kind of thing. So I'm comfortable with where you started, Tom.
So we'll start with this, and then I'll also draft some things that incorporate this discussion, such as the, some sort of agent concept and happening after rather than before, as Aaron suggested.
Dan?
Thank you.
To the original one? This is the current?
This one. This one seems to me -- I'm trying to process how this works. So this one seems to me like it would be, it would work for a co-op who is in an existing building, and now they want to apply.
So this is the existing code language, and it's never been used.
I see.
So I put it up there because I wanted to sort of draw the balance between what Lisa was asking for and what was in the original code and what I drafted. So this is what I'm proposing, with some of the modifications that you've all talked about.
I'm with you. Okay. Just one comment. I mean, I have, I really think, I think everyone here wants to protect the residents, and we want to be cognizant about what the whole city is thinking. But we also don't want to treat the co-op people worse than regular renters. We don't want to make it so, you know, difficult that they're really being kind of picked upon compared to regular renters who don't have to do any of this stuff. And I know they want to be good citizens, the ones that are out there now who really want to, you know, do this kind of thing. But I think we just have to find that right balance. And I think this is a good example of that.
Lisa?
Yeah, my point is, and I guess I'm where Sam is, is that there be, when you do a minor modification on your house or a re -- I don't know, a remodel, I'd have to ask the staff back there, but more often than not, there's something posted in front of your house, and people walk by and they see that, and you can use one of those little QRLs, and you can find out what it is. And then you can contact, there's a project manager. And so it just gives people just notification, and it's just basically...
A yard sign.
Yeah, that's all.
I just feel like it's a little bit of profiling, you know? It's a little bit like, you know, sex offender here.
No, if you are...
It can't end up like that.
No, it's, they're not sex offenders. I don't see a sex offender out there. But the whole thing is just when you're doing a slight change, that's usually been the protocol. And so it's...
Then it's not the co-op organization, it's that the building is changing from a rental to a co-op.
Well, that doesn't even noted, I don't think. When, if you buy a house and then you move from that house and you decide you want to rent it, I don't think there's notification in that particular case. But there are a whole bunch of different kinds of notification we use. I don't have a list of them, but when you're, I don't know, I should have, I have a whole bunch in my...
All building permits have to be posted.
Yeah, building permits have to be posted. When you add something on to your building, you have to post that. And so I would just say, don't give an exception, just make this a regular kind of the process and so that people are... Just make this a regular kind of the process, and so that people are at least notified. I agree with, I mean, I'm still thinking, or am, I like the use review concept or some version of it. But for me, in this particular issue, it's just about notifying people. It's not necessarily voting one way or another.
And the use reviews would provide that kind of notification.
Right.
Because they have those yard signs that say notice of use review, and it's there, and it's a notification.
Again, my question on that would be, when does that happen in the process? If there's a co-op group living in an existing building, then I understand that. But if they are out searching for a rental property or a purchased property, how does that happen? Because they're duking it out with other people for access to that property.
So I, I, I just, yeah, so I, Jen, I agree with your comments. And so that was why I put forward the notification after move-in as a good neighbor thing. So given, I would, we still have a lot more to talk about, so I'm trying to move this forward. Tommy said that you would give us the option of the upon-move-in.
Yeah.
Version. So if, I would then make a motion that we, we take Tom's proposed amendment along with the option for that to be after move-in. And can we, see if we can move this.
As well as the legal notification, the point of contact, point of contact.
Yep, I'll do both those things.
Great. Okay, so, go ahead.
I was going to suggest that perhaps Susan Richstone whispered in my ear that she has strong concerns about using use review for this. And while, since you keep, you're sort of going back and forth on that, you might want to hear those concerns at some point so that you can understand what planning's thoughts would be on that. So, but I'm, you were just going to call for a vote, Mary, and I apologize for that.
I don't think we have a vote on this particular one.
Well, I think it's.
Motion?
Yeah, I made a motion, so if we.
Oh, you did make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, sorry, I missed it. All right. So motion by Aaron and seconded by Sam.
And, and can I just clarify, Aaron, does this have upon-move-in or prior?
It will have the two options.
Both options, yeah.
Both options.
Yep. It will have to pick at a later time.
All right, all in favor?
So then, and then can we ask?
Did you vote?
I did, yeah.
Okay. Okay, passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Can we ask Susan to come forward to express her concern?
Yes.
Susan Richstone, deputy director for planning. So conditional use versus use review, they're pretty fundamentally different. A conditional use, basically you identify a use, and you say, under these standards and conditions that are very specified, this use is appropriate in this zone district. So, and I can give you some examples of uses, actually that's where co-ops fit today, that I think you'll see there's some similarities to this. And I think, very honestly, the journey you're on has been really about that. It's been defining, it's been saying in general, this is a good use to have in the community, and under these specific conditions in these zone districts, it would work. You know, these, these many people, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This, a use review is really geared for deciding whether or not a use is okay in a particular location and whether or not it's compatible. So the basic use review criteria are about compatibility and operating conditions. So a really common thing is limiting the hours of operation of something. So you're really saying, only if they can mitigate their impacts, or if they're compatible, can they go in there. And I believe that if you put co-ops in the use review category, and it's a discretionary review, you are setting things up to pit the neighborhood against the co-op, and staff is going to be right in the middle. Because it's very discretionary, it can turn very subjective, and if we set up the co-op ordinance that way, that gee, on this specific use, and I'll just give an example, gee, it's not going to be compatible because that house is five feet from my property line and not 15 feet, and there's going to be too much noise, I don't know. Or gee, there's too many people, or there's, I just think you're setting it up for conflict and for a very difficult situation. I think you have to, we all have to identify what are the specific conditions under which these work in different zone districts. So that's my, I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm really concerned about use reviewing really setting us up for, for conflict.
Sam.
Would conditional use review allay that? So is it just the full use review that you're concerned with?
Yes, I would say conditional use would be totally appropriate, because in conditional use, basically you put a C in the use chart for, for co-op in the, in the specific zone districts, and then you write the conditions for each zone district the way you want it. You say in the RR1 and the RL1, it's this many people per, you know, you can, you put all the very specific conditions, and if staff can check off the boxes, then they get their permit. I will add one other thing about notification. For us, the worst thing is when we have to notify people, but they have no ability to influence it. That's what happens with ADUs and OASUs, and it is extremely frustrating for the public. So there's a notification requirement. People come in and we say, well, they met the requirements, they can do it. Well, why'd you notify me? So that is really in, for us, I mean, a good neighbor policy, the things you're talking about make perfect sense. But this idea of, I'm going to notify everybody, but they have no ability to impact, is extremely frustrating for members of the public.
Which is why we shouldn't call as notification.
Susan, I have a question. So when Charles came.
When Charles came up, and I appreciated his explanation, he said there were three types of use review. This full use review, a conditional re-use review, and a regular use review. I thought there were always.
I heard, I heard three as well.
Okay, I'll defer to Charles on that. I'm thinking of conditional use versus use review. There are different levels of use review. Certain use reviews are staff level and call-up by planning board, and certain use reviews go to planning board, but the general criteria aren't that different. There's still the compatibility that I mentioned.
No, and I said that there were two. There's conditional use review, and then there's a full use review.
And only the full use review requires notification?
Typically, yes. There are instances like OASUs and ADUs that are administrative reviews that do have their own notification requirements. They're rare, but OASUs and ADUs are one of them. To Susan's point, they don't work very well. So is it possible to craft regulations where you have a conditional use that has a notification requirement? Yes, it is. It's possible to do that. Has it worked well in the past? I don't know that it has.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
That's, I do, I just, that's very helpful. I think it'll help tee up our discussion at the next reading about just exactly how we do this.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item.
Rent regulation. Matt asked the good question of, how do we establish the benchmarks for this? And I explained in the memo that my original thought was, we'd do it based on median income, which is something that's established, but median told me that, well, we don't price housing based on income, and it's, housing's a market-based thing. So I tried to come up with some metric that we could base, and there's a Denver area housing survey, but it's not really granular enough to do this. And we got that interesting thing from somebody in San Francisco, where someone had actually gone through all the rental offerings in the paper for years to track the rental markets. Fascinating, of course, very intensive. We now have Craigslist, and so it's not just rent lists in the paper. You could, you can pretty much check, but, you know, I started looking at Craigslist, they don't necessarily tell you where the place is in the ad. In fact, most of them don't. So you'd have to, you could find out generally what people are asking, but to try to figure out by neighborhoods, it's almost impossible. So I didn't put anything down here, because I'm not sure council's all that interested in rent regulation, and I'm not sure you want to spend a lot of time on it, but it was a question that was asked. I responded in the memo. We can just move on if you have nothing further on that.
Sam.
So I don't have any, anything further on this, but I thought, you know, we, we do want to incentivize affordable housing to the extent that we can. And so I thought if we have oversubscription to the rental category, you know, reopen it up and we get 10 that apply in a window, and we've only got five to give, for instance, we could means test. You know, you could.
We could what?
Means test, you could do something about the applicants. I mean, first come, first served is one way to go. Another way to go might be to try and incentivize at least priority for the ones that are more affordable. So that's not exactly this, and we can move on from this. But I just thought I would put out there that where there's a queue, we might rank that queue by affordability.
And I can certainly put together some language. There, there is exact language in the rental licensing provision that sort of, it's not exactly a waiting list, but it's, it's a, it's sort of a waiting list. So let me, let me think about that and see if I can draft something that helps you.
And I would be interested in means testing just in general for the rental cooperative, for all cooperatives actually for that matter, but.
Me too.
So what does that mean?
What does that mean? Does that mean that people would be submitting their paychecks as part of the certification process? Every individual person?
However means testing is done.
Well, I'm asking.
Means testing, I'm not familiar. It's a qualification process.
Yeah.
It's different.
It's tricky.
If I can just, I mean, we're, we're, we talk about things the city can or cannot verify and all that kind of stuff. I mean, this one to me is just, I mean, how much somebody makes or what their income is or anything like that. I mean, I, I just think that's a, that's a layer we don't need. I mean, there's just a certain group of people that are going to want to do this and a certain group that aren't. And, and I say, this is one where the, in my view, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of things to try to protect things, and this is one area we just don't get into, in my view, but.
Maybe. I also think there's another way you could look at it, which is what, what rents are being charged. So rather than means testing on income, you could say how affordable, you know, you just rank them in order of affordability per person or something like that.
Are you saying we'd have a rent level requirement or a cap? No?
No, this would just be a way of ordering a queue. If you have five a year and you've got 15 that want to be part of it, you're just going to make the most affordable ones per person, go to the front of the line, and the others would have to wait. That's all.
Dan.
I just think it would be difficult to track that. I mean, if they're in a waiting line and they have six people in their co-op, and then they don't get one for a year, then another one's going to come in, and then one's, one's going to leave, and one's going to come in. So I just see it as a tracking nightmare. And I don't know, I just, I agree with Andrew on this one.
And do students get priority because they don't have any income?
Well, it wasn't going to be, so I said means tested, but what I really should have meant is it's rent tested.
Rent tested, yeah.
So that you're getting the lowest cost per renter options move first. So it was, means testing was incorrect. I retract that.
All right, so are we good with this one?
What does that mean?
That means that we aren't interested in rent regulation.
And so I should, I'll propose an amendment in the second reading to take that out of the proposed ordinance. It's in there, and it hasn't gotten a whole lot of traction with council, so we'll just abandon it unless it comes back, then.
So you're saying that the second reading version will not have it?
That's my thought.
Okay, great.
Because it, it seems to be, you've got enough issues to work on, I think. And one that doesn't, so this is the, so separation's the next one. So the current proposal is creating these neighborhood areas, and I'm sorry, in the memo, I didn't do a real good job of explaining this. This is carried over from the prior ordinance and from other, some other separation requirements we have in a code. We create what's called a neighborhood area, and then we limit the number of the particular thing as a percentage of that neighborhood area. So the, the current draft has two different neighborhood areas, one 300 feet from the lot line and one 600 feet from the lot line. And then the restriction is that no more than 10% of the dwelling units in every area can be cooperative housing units. And that came from an original, so it's kind of, the, the current code includes boarding houses and other things, and ADUs as limitations. Council at the study session said that you weren't interested in adding other things, just wanted to focus on cooperative units. And this is again, sort of a straw man, that 10% is not a magic number, it's just the number in the current code. And since the, the current code includes those other things, it of course reduces the number. So Matt asked if we could get the GPS folks to do some maps, and you have hard copies of these in front of you on your dais, but I, I thought I put them up so everybody could see them, perhaps not so well. This is University Hill, which is, includes both a high-density and a low-density zone in this particular circle. And what, what they've done is draw circles at 300 feet, 500 feet, 700 feet, and 1,000 feet, and then count the number of dwelling units in those circles and take what 10% would be. And so I'm pretty sure that when Matt was describing what he wanted, we weren't really thinking about 10% of the dwelling units in the circle being that, that it being some sort of separation requirement or some, some other limit. But this is just meant as a graphical display. That's what these circles look like. So if you want to choose a, a, a circle, and as Matt points out, it's really a rectangle, not a circle, because properties are not circles. And so if you go out from the property line, you're going to get a rectangle. I, I think GPS kind of works in circles, but I, I don't, yeah. So that's what it looks like. This is University Hill. This is Gos Grove. Again, this is, this is an RH and RMX. This is Seventeenth and Quince, Norwood. And this is Martin Akers. Yeah.
Tom, again, your 10% included ADUs, so.
So no, in the.
In the original, right.
In the current ordinance, in 963B, it includes ADUs and boarding houses, I think.
Uh huh.
And council said, take those out, they're not relevant for the co-op discussion.
So then we might assume that that number would go down.
If we included those, so you might want to reduce the 10% to 8% or some fixed number. 10, no more than 10 within 300 feet or whatever. The, the, I think the utility, and Matt, this was your idea, so you can talk to utility. For me, the utility of this is, it sort of shows the scale.
Right.
And if, if you're going to say 10% within 1,000 feet, it shows that there's a lot of co-ops that could, you can squeeze into this 1,000 feet of, so it's, what is it? For the 1,000 feet in Martin Akers, it's what, 36 co-ops?
It shows, what it gives you a sense of, which is useful, we'll come back to what I had in mind, is just how many units total there are within a box of a certain size. And that's kind of useful. I mean, yes, we know, of course, that lower, higher densities are going to have more units, but this actually gives you a real number, a real-life example in various neighborhoods of, oh, well, this is how many, this is how many units there are. That actually is useful. I mean, that gives you some starting point. What is a little odd about this, and I know our ADUs do this, but, you know, we don't have very many ADUs at the moment, is it doesn't change the total number that can be in any area. No matter how you draw the circles, the total number that can be in a bigger box is the same, because it's always 10% of whatever is in whatever box you draw. What it does change is, I suppose, how many you can have close to one another. And what's odd is, is the bigger you draw the circle, the more you could actually have close to one another, which is a little counterintuitive, but that's the way it turns out. Another way of looking at it, of course, which I guess is kind of what I had in mind, but this is going to take some more thought, too, so I'm not stuck on anything, is really what you're doing is you're saying, within a circle of a certain size, you can only have one or two co-ops, which is very different than this. And then, as you draw the circle bigger, or the rectangle bigger, you are actually limiting the number of co-ops that can be in that bigger box. So they're just, I mean, it sounds subtle, but the outcomes are totally different, depending on how you interpret what we mean here. But again, I think the maps are really useful, because they do give you a sense of just how many units there are, and therefore, if you said 10%, how many there could be within a box of that size. That part of it is, I think, really useful. But I probably lean the other way, which is, you can only have just so many within the, the circle. And I sent out an email today clarifying something, and, I mean, this is all very tricky, there's no good answer. The problem with drawing circles like this is that, and I know some of the co-op folks who've said this, and they're correct, is if, let's say you said, you can only have one within a 500-foot circle, I'm just totally making this up, but let's say you said that. You know, it could be that it happens within that circle of the two best places in the entire neighborhood for co-ops, and you've just precluded the ability to do that. You also, and you start seeing that on these circles as they get bigger, you start crossing over natural boundaries, you know, like Highway 36 and other things. And so you start disallowing things on the other side of a highway, which is a little wacky. But, you know, how, this is the usual problem of, I would rather keep it simple and have maybe some weird side effects than making ourselves crazy with, did I cross a major road, did I cross this, did I cross that? I mean, it, yeah, GIS is wonderful, but it does get complicated. So I would keep it. So I would keep it simple and I'd probably go to X number within a circle of a certain size, and that's as far as I've gotten so far.
And does, does the circle change, the number change for the different zone districts?
Ah, well, no, there is an excellent question, isn't it? Obviously, in the higher density, there is a lot more units within any circle you're going to draw, and usually typically the case. So, you know, you have Martin Akers up. If you drew a 500-foot circle, you'd have 125 properties. So if you said there's only one in a 500-foot circle, you'd be saying, well, there's only one in 125 properties, whereas in a, an RR district within a 500-foot circle, you'd probably say there's only one within, I don't know, 20 properties or, you know, whatever. That's RE. RR would be, you may not have that one.
RE.
So maybe, you know, I think, from what people think, I'm just thinking out loud here, I could be totally wrong. I think what people think of his impacts is a little less than the number of units in the circle than the distance from you. Right? And that distance is the same no matter what the zoning district is. So I'm not so sure it should be different for zoning districts. Again, kind of keep it simple.
Sam?
Well, I'm almost there. I, I like the, for sure you have a circle and you say only one, so that you get the separation on the circle. But again, there's an interesting point you brought up, is that there's both the distance between them, that's one way that people experience them, and then there's the number, the fraction of homes that become co-ops. So another possibility is you pick what you want that fraction to be, whether it's, you know, 1% or half a percent or 2%. And then you draw your circle to try and make that happen. So your different zoning districts that have different, and I think that's an interesting way of trying to preserve equity between neighborhoods, because the fraction, you know, one of the concerns of the higher density neighborhoods is that they'll end up with more of these, and it will erode the, the feeling of the neighborhood. But if you picked it to be the same fraction, whether it's an RE or an RL or an RMX, then you could draw, you could pick your circles there just kind of on average and get the same fraction of, of places that are eligible for co-ops.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, the separation would vary by zoning?
Correct. It would vary by zoning district, and you would use this exact kind of thing, which Matt, this exercise that Matt had us do, to figure out, if you pick half a percent, then it means in Martin Akers, you have a 750-foot distance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Confused, which would not be unlikely, you would have more in the higher density, the ones in the higher density districts would be closer to one another.
No, he's saying you draw the circle so that it fits that percentage.
If you said 1% of all units can be co-ops or ADUs or anything, whatever the concept is, you'd have more of them within a certain.
Yes.
Space.
Yes.
In a higher density neighborhood.
That's correct.
Whereas if you went with the one size fits all, it's one per circle of 300 feet, then whatever the zoning district is, it's one per 300 feet, even though there'd be a wildly different number of units within that 300 feet. So you get different, again, I'm not picking one right this minute, I'm just, you get, you get different outcomes. And they're, they're clearly different. I mean, they're really on the ground, different.
Just to clarify, when you say higher density, you mean smaller lot sizes as opposed to like multifamily dwellings?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you just compare.
Because that's all that matters, is the lots.
In Martin Akers, you can see it pretty clearly. Just look at the number for, take the 500-foot circle. In Martin Akers, there's 125 houses in 500 feet. In Norwood, there's 57.
So Sam, you're.
Can you do the other greater when, when they're more, when the houses are closer?
So Sam, what you're proposing would be smaller circles for the smaller lot-sized neighborhoods?
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, I, I look here and it says, you know, a 300-foot area is 45 properties, right? And you say one per 45 properties, that's what we're going to allow there, so it would be two. And then if you want that same rough one per 45, it looks like you in Quince and Seventeenth would draw a 400-square-foot circle and say, that's got to be the separation between any two. And I, I guess, I don't know what the right answer is, what the feel is, but one of my primary concerns that I've heard from the neighbors is that they don't want too many fractionally. And maybe they just want to minimize it as much as possible. But if we were trying to be equitable in drawing our sizes and saying how many each zone district will have as a fraction, that would be one argument that you would make, is that you want to, am I getting that right? You want to cast larger ones in bigger lot-size areas?
Well, again, and I, I'm not trying, I'm really not trying to answer this tonight. I was just trying to understand it. That's, I figured that was a great success if I could at least understand it tonight. I think we have to really think about, and I'm not trying to knock co-ops here, but if you think about the presumed impacts, at least initially, look, you know, over time, this may all sort itself out and will change some of the rules, but on day one, if you think about the presumed impacts, I guess I still feel like it's more distance-based than number of units-based. And if you're in a smaller lot-size area, well, yeah, it's true, there might be 400 units within the circle, but, or 150 or 100 or something like that, but that still might only be one block, which means there could be one per block. Whereas in the higher-density neighborhoods, you know, there would be many fewer units.
Lower density.
What really matters is, you know, is it one per block, one per two-block, one per three blocks? I think that's where people, especially if you start thinking about parking, that's where the kind of spacing even makes a bigger difference, much more than the number of units. Again, you get to the low-density neighborhoods and you have this bizarre inverse, you know, they don't have parking problems in RR neighborhoods. It's just not a concept. But you certainly do in the, in the LR neighborhoods, or you can in some of the LR neighborhoods.
Aaron?
RL, I should use the new terminology, right? Can't get it in my head.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'd, I'd be interested in, in the, a circle approach, where, like a one co-op per circle of a certain size, and I don't have the exact number, but I'm, I think Matt's kind of convincing me about that the distance is probably the most important thing rather than the number of units. So I would, I would go with the one, one co-op per circle of some size, and I'm not sure what that size would be.
Anybody else? And Jan?
We were getting some input from people in emails about, in some areas of neighborhoods, there may be a fraternity or two, or a this or that, that might impact, that other higher-density things that are already there. Do you think we should consider that and, or just let that be part of the process? What, what's your thought on that?
So the only way you could consider something like that would be through a use review, because I cannot, for the life of me, I get the, the issue. I mean, I think we all get the issue, but I can't imagine a formula that you could check a box that says, well, there are X group homes within some distance, or there are Y overoccupied rentals within some distance, or some number of short-term rentals within some distance. I, I mean, I just cannot imagine how you would do that. I think that if you really wanted to do that, I think you'd have to bring it to some decision-making body and have them sort it out.
Do that?
Because I don't know what else you'd do. I'm not saying it's not an issue. I just don't know how to fix it in some relatively simple way.
And so I would agree with Aaron to have it, some X number per some size circle is, and the separation is more important than the number of units with, or the number of co-ops within the circle, so.
How about I bring back a proposed amendment that has a, has, has some numbers and you choose.
Sure.
Next time. Because you'll have to, at some point, it'll give you some time to think about how big the circle should be.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you'll get input from the community about how big the circle should be, and you, that can help inform your discussion at the next.
But I think we've, for the moment, I think we've actually simplified it.
Yes.
And then we'll see where we go.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll draft a replacement that says you can have one co-op in a circle of 50 feet or something like that.
Okay, so we have nine more items to do in 20 minutes?
Well, but you've got most of the.
Yeah, the big ones.
The big ones. So the other ones were, Matt asked a question, how do we enforce the International Property Maintenance Code? We do that through inspections, and Matt's rolling his eyes, but we do actually do inspections. Most peo, most cities don't do inspections for rental licenses, we're one of the few who actually does that. There's a proposal that that inspection regime would be incorporated into this. So certainly the basic life safety things would have to be met. The legal entity, there was a question about what.
Can I say something about the?
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
This is just quick, and I, I don't want to harp on this. I mean, it, it kind of comes back to enforcement as always. Yes, I think we do a phenomenal job. We are so much better than many cities. We actually do inspections, and we do focus on safety mostly, and that is the most important thing. But, and I'll channel Macon again here, if you look at the Property Maintenance Code, there's a lot of stuff in it that isn't really safety, it's kind of condition in many ways. And I don't think rental inspections do that ever. And four years is a long time between inspections anyway. So, you know, and I don't want to, look, I do not want to go after somebody because, you know, there's two feet of missing paint on a, on some board, you know, it's just absurd. But as you know, there are rentals that are really pretty crappy and pretty rundown, and no way are they meeting the IPMC. And nobody checks. So I, I think it's a little bit of a bigger issue, but honestly, I think it's an issue for all rental properties, and if we ever do something about it for rentals, I think we just loop co-ops into it and, and we're good. I don't know that co-ops are worse or better, they're, they're probably better.
So Matt, are you saying to basically increase the timeframe or?
I, I don't know. I think certainly what we inspect maybe needs to be thought about. I mean, for the record, I've said this many times, we own two rental properties, we get good people to inspect them. They inspect the safety stuff, I don't think they inspect the, the condition aspects of the IPMC. I don't think anybody does. And that I know grates on people sometimes. But that's a, it, to me, that's kind of a bigger issue, I don't want to hold this up for that, but that's why I raised it.
So legal entity, I'm not sure there's what you asked for what Nishama had suggested. I quoted it in the memo, she sent me an email. And so I, I think her concern was that you, if I could voice it, and it was that you don't specify a particular form, that there are multiple forms that these organizations can take, and we haven't done that. So I think, I, I think you're fine on that issue unless you want us to talk about specifying a particular form.
Well, does this get to the, the definition of the types of co-ops, or is this a totally separate issue?
I think it's a separate issue. The definition for types of co-ops wasn't one of the issues that you identified, although it probably should be, and you can certainly add that. The issue is, my definitions are, are pure owner-renter. The, the community's proposal mixes the concepts a little bit. And.
So.
You've had both in front of you.
Yeah, thank you. And if, if people don't mind me raising this at this point, that, because I, I thought I'd raised this at, at the end of our last meeting, but maybe I missed it at that time. But I, I was interested in, in adopting the, the community housing approach for entities' types, and I, I saw Suzanne was supportive of that as well in her email. And in particular, I think the important piece there is that your, your owner, your equity co-ops can have a couple people living there that don't own the property. So, because, you know, you have significant others or adult children or something like that. So I think the way that they encapsulate that is pretty neatly done, which is that a majority of the owners have to be residents and a majority of the residents have to be owners. And so then you get something that's fundamentally owner-occupied while still allowing for a couple people living there who are not owners. So, so I'd like to see those definitions adopted as opposed to the ones that we have in the current, current ordinance.
Sam?
So that goes to definitions, the current one that was from May 17th, the current ordinance had four categories, correct?
Yeah.
And I'm where Suzanne is, she suggests three categories, which are the private equity, group equity and rental co-op. So I'm comfortable with tweaking the definitions, but I would like to still keep it to 15 a year, five of each category.
And that's what I meant as well.
Okay.
So, but you're, so, I'm having a little trouble understanding, we're, we're making a big difference between equity co-ops and rental co-ops, and we're talking about giving equity co-ops property rights, but now we're saying equity, equity co-ops can be half renters.
I think the word was majority, so not quite, less than half.
49%. It's, it's, it's a change and it, it's a major change. So, I mean, we, you couch it in terms of definitions, but I purposely said that you, either an equity co-op or you're not. And if you're going to, it's fine, but remember, this isn't a small change, this is a completely change of philosophy, and when you add the two together, you're, you're making a big difference.
Yeah, I would just say for now, why don't you come back with both? I'm, I'm not there yet, because I agree with you, I think it's a big change. But it sounds like people are interested in it, fair enough. So maybe you come back with those options.
And is it, just to understand, Aaron, is it the slightly less than 50, slightly more than 50, is that where we need to be with it, or could we come back and say 25% or have some other threshold for renters in an equity co-op?
I would certainly consider another threshold. I, I just think you need to make some allowance for somebody living there who, who doesn't own.
Okay. But who pays rent? We're talking about that, we have acknowledged that they could be contributing. Okay. Okay, good point, Tom, thank you.
Andrew?
I guess I'm still a little confused about why we're setting limits on subsets within, why not just say, I mean, we, we have no idea what's going to take, but we're going to allow 15 co-ops, and why not whatever comes forward up to that 15, you know, we get? But why, why does it have to be five equity, five rental, five, you know, what, what's the point of that division?
Well, it could be 15 and you, you say whatever mix we get. I, I'm not, I'm attached to the 15 a little bit.
Right, as am I.
Especially to start early, you know, I want to see that. Yeah, I was just guessing that rental would come forward more easily, and if that's the case, do we want rental to take up all 15 would be another question. Do you want to kind of preserve some space for equity to come in or just take all 15?
I mean, I'm, I'm of the view that we let, so I mean, this is, we let it evolve, and again, I, I tend to think that the, the rental is less, is lower risk, for all the reasons we've been talking about in terms of the ability to say, you know what, that was? I mean, if we have 15 rental co-ops and this turns out to be a disaster, I don't think it will be, but if it does, we could, we could fix the problem the next year. If we had 15 equity co-ops, we couldn't. And so, because you've got 15 different, you know, groups of people that went and got loans and et cetera, et cetera. And so I, I think those are frankly going to be harder to get anyway.
Oh, yeah.
And so, but I mean, I think if we're going to do this, that I just don't see why the sort of 5-5-5, why not just 15 and whatever happens, happens?
Matt?
Well, I was actually, we didn't have kind of the numbers up on the, on the list, I was going to raise it, but now that it's been raised, I, yeah, so I got to think about that a little bit. It, it depends, Andrew, if you really think that the rentals are less of an issue. I mean, a lot of people think the equities are less of an issue on the theory that people who own something are going to take better care of them. I absolutely get your point. I think the odds of us actually tossing somebody out, that's not our style, so we'll see. And I'm not saying that in a negative way. We, you know, we try to give people multiple chances. We don't kind of race in and, you know, over, in an overbearing way and say, wow, you made a mistake twice, we're throwing you out. That's just not our style, and I don't think it should be. I'll tell you my bigger issue on the numbers, and it's also not on the list, and we can do this next time too, is, is it 15 per year? And, and Aaron, as you stated, we have examples of other cities that have been at this for decades, and they've got a couple of dozen. And, and they're bigger than we are in population. And Madison's got 250,000 people. Why do we think we have to have 15 per year? Where are they going to come from? Are we that different, maybe? And is that, if we did that, would we start seeing, you know, some questionable ones? So I'd like to think about that, and, and that one, I'm definitely basing it on experience in some other cities. If after all those years, they've only got two dozen legal ones, really? We're going to have 30 in two years? Why would that be the case? I don't get it. So I think we need to think about that a little bit.
Okay, we okay?
Do you want to talk about the Voices for Invisible Population suggestion?
Aye.
One of my suggestions was, they made a really good point, that we have a provision where when you're counting, you don't count children. And they suggested that we limited, so we only count adults, that we limited to competent adults, so that people with disabilities could be included but not counted against certain levels.
I thought that was a good idea.
So I can revise that portion of the code.
That was part of my logic for allowing non-owners and an equity co-op would be for, is non-competent a word? I'm not sure what the official term is, but for-
Competent, or not counting competent.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, not to be, I want you to repurpose me, if you're going to do that, I think you'd still need some maximum somewhere.
But I don't, yeah, I forget which-
You could have an awful lot of people and an awful lot of kids living in a 1,600-square-foot co-op if you did that.
So no, Matt, it wasn't in the occupancy limit, it was in counting the percentages. I'm forgetting. It's not in the occupancy limit.
Huh. I did read it.
Yeah.
And I guess maybe I didn't read it that way, so.
It was fraction not, who aren't owners.
No, if it was just about the ownership, that goes back to Aaron's point. That's a whole different question.
I think that's where it was.
If it's about the occupancy, that raises different issues, although, you know, even that's a somewhat fair issue about how do you count. But if the real concern is the ownership, then I think that makes sense. And-
In the memo, it's under, on page 101, it's under occupancy of dwelling units.
Okay. Yeah, so, that just needs to be clarified, honestly. It has different implications if it's occupancy versus ownership.
Okay. All right. So we're kind of running out of time. You're scheduled to go to 9:45, and that gets you out by 1 o'clock in the morning. So there was some discussion about process. Do you want to talk about process, staff?
You missed one.
Did I? Property exemption, oh, property exemption for tax exemption for nonprofits. There was a long discussion about whether or not a nonprofit co-op would be exempt from property taxes. Bottom line is probably not, because you basically not only have to be a not-for-profit, you have to be operating for a charitable purpose, and everything you do have to be a charitable purpose. So if you're providing housing for some people at market rate, you don't have a charitable purpose, therefore you don't get the tax deduction. It's possible, but it would be in a very limited circumstance. It would probably be a circumstance that you would support. So if a co-op were providing entirely housing for disabled adults, they would probably qualify as a not-for-profit, and that would probably be fine. But that would be rare, and it's not the model most people are looking at. So most of these, most of the co-ops in the model that you're looking at are going to be paying property taxes.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, process. Staff provided you with some options. There was some, oh, they're passing them out now, sorry.
Staff is providing us with some options.
Yeah, I thought they're on the dais. So I can run through, there are three levels of process that the planning department has looked at, and Suzanne, Susan is, or Eric, Kirk, I'm sorry, is able to talk about them if you'd like. And I can walk you through them very briefly. I have what's on your paper up on my screen here. So the least level would be a Cooperative Housing Ordinance webpage, which we have not yet created. It would be on the Housing Bowl of Light site. It could include a FAQ with additional analysis, key dates, link to related paces. It would also provide a place for input directly to the city council and the city attorney's office. The pros are minimal impacts of the work plan, community members would be better informed, additional opportunity. Cons were, is, members might not feel this opportunity as sufficient opportunity for input. Neighborhood roundtables, a short series of facilitated roundtables could be hosted in different neighborhood venues. Primary objectives would be to collect input from the community, share the intent around elements of the ordinance, and dispel misconceptions. A few council members could attend to listen. The city attorney's office and other staff would provide staff support. Community members' ideas and concerns would be captured and shared with the full council and broader community. Roundtable series would occur between first and second reading, or after second reading based on council direction. The pros are additional opportunities to inform the community, additional opportunities to collect community input, easier access for concerned community members. The cons are intensive use of CAO, staff, and city at council time would impact the work plan.
Question here really quick. I was, when I read these neighborhood roundtables, I was thinking about Amanda Nagel and what she's doing, and where she might plug into this. Is there, have you had any discussions around that?
Kirk, do you want to? No?
No.
No, we have not, right. We haven't spoken with Amanda about this. And of course, she's got a work plan, too. And this would be a whole additional set of roundtables to add to what she's doing. So this is not on her work plan either.
And Sam, one of the challenges that I see is, I don't see how we do this without me attending, because if I'm doing the drafting, even if I read notes, it's not going to be the same as sitting and listening to the conversation. So any of these things are in addition to my personal work plan, which, I just sit around, so it's okay. Facilitated citizen panel is a more intensive level. So this is where you would, I'll just read, "City at Council could identify a narrow list of issues and convene a group with help of an outside facility to discuss potential changes to the ordinance. Panel would include five cooperative housing representatives, five neighborhood representatives concerned about impacts. Panel would need several times to discuss the specific issues by council, identified by council. A summary of the group process and any recommendations provided to the full council. The city attorney's office and other city staff would provide support to convey accurate information on both ordinance and city regulations. Council would need to decide how representatives would be selected. Staff recommends that representatives be selected based upon written applications detailing the applicant's views on these issues." The pros would be clearly identified scope of issues, authentic opportunity for input, opportunity to inform. Cons would be clearly defined scope of issues, that's not a con, sorry, authentic opportunity for input. I typed the wrong cons, sorry.
Where do you locate it?
Yeah. The cons would be the impact on the work plan, again, and 10 people might not be representative of the community as a whole.
All right. And I posted on the hotline another option that's kind of similar to three, but different, in that it would still be five folks from neighborhoods, five folks from co-op advocates, and they would self-select, so that there would be no staff time in selecting, and it would be facilitated and an open process. I don't know if you would still need to attend that or not, but what I was thinking was that they would be looking at the draft of the second reading. So whatever you would be bringing back to us is what they would be working with. So that's what I posted on the hotline, and we can talk about that and see if there's any interest in that.
Yeah, I don't know which of these options is best, but just one clarification on a couple of them, and maybe yours as well. I find that there are some neighbors who are really open to this and want to make it work, and aren't just throwing up a bunch of, you know, roadblocks. And, you know, whatever we do to include a couple of those people, I think could be really valuable, because they're clearly just as impacted, but they are having a way of looking at it a little uniquely. And so I'd really like to figure out how to do that. I think choosing the right people, if we do something, whether it's facilitated or not, as a roundtable, is going to be really important.
So, I mean, obviously, I mean, community input is incredibly important here. And I've met with neighbors, and we're getting lots of emails. And we've got a long process here. We've extended this out longer than most for the type of thing we're doing. And, you know, I don't know, I guess, my question is, are we not getting input from somewhere where we need to do a process like this? I mean, we're getting a tremendous amount of input. I think we're going to get a tremendous more amount of input. I think it's valuable. I think we should, you know, read it, and we can meet with people. But I'm just wondering about the, sort of the benefits of these kinds of non-traditional approaches here in light of our workload and staff's workload and whatnot. And frankly, when it impacts the work plan, it bumps other things that are important for us to accomplish in the city. So I guess I throw that out, not because I'm not interested in community input. I think we're getting it. And I think we're going to have another, we're going to have another hearing. So it would be different if somehow we weren't getting the input, and we needed to go out and gather it. But we're getting it, and so.
Aaron?
Yeah, I agree with Andrew, because I think we're getting really good input, actually. And, I mean, some of the input actually that we're getting is that, hey, you need to stop and collect input. But we're getting the input. I mean, so those emails will say, hey, you just have to stop and get input, and then give us several ideas on things that should be changed. And I'm reading every single one of those, and I'm sure my other council members are as well. And so there's some, I think, some frustration with people saying, well, in two minutes, you can't really get across complicated ideas or engage in discussion, which is true. But the emails give you more space, and we've had some really fruitful ideas, I think, come from a number of these different emails. And also, I feel like I'm getting a good sense of where the major concerns in the community are, and what some people are excited about as well. So I feel like we're doing pretty well. We've, it's been five months since our first study session, so it's not a fast process. We'll have a second reading. It's not scheduled yet. It'll be a while. We'll continue to hear from people in the meantime. The second reading won't be the final reading. I'm sure we'll have a third reading. So I feel like we're hearing a lot from the community, and it's doing a good job of informing our decision.
Sam?
Yeah, I'll agree with a lot of that in the sense that we do read our emails, so we get all the way through all the ideas that are being brought forward. I think, in a way, this extended legislative process is intended to do exactly that, to foster more input. This was proposed by staff early on, in my council term, as being something that could happen very quickly. And it turned out to be, we heard from the community loud and clear that they wanted an extended legislative process. And so that's what we're doing now. We did that same thing for short-term rentals. And just to give a sense of scale, you know, we estimated that there were hundreds to 1,000 short-term rentals in the community. And we're talking about here, a number that will be 15 a year, up to some probable maximum of 50. So I think we deserve to give it due process. But actually, the decisions that we made on short-term rentals, I think, might have had more impact, if we got them right or wrong. So I'm not, I don't really feel like we need this right now, from my perspective, as far as me making sure that I hear what the neighborhood concerns are.
Add one thing. I don't often do this, not that I, well, sometimes I do say no, because we've been very busy, and I'm extremely busy at work personally. But on this, this issue is near and dear to my heart for both sides. And so if anyone wants to talk to me on the issue, feel free to give me a call at my office, and I'm happy to chat with them about it. So.
Yeah, likewise. I owe somebody a phone call from yesterday. I have to call them back. But I will, I'll talk to anybody.
All right. So what I'm hearing is no change in the way we're conducting the process.
I guess the value I saw in Mary's proposal is that you get a group of five and five, and you actually get them engaged into a constructive discussion, and exchanging ideas, and seeing what they might come up with in terms of some recommendations. I don't think it would work for any one of those 10 people to stake out a strong position at the beginning. But I really liked trying to get the two groups together and get a dialogue, and have them work things out. As I explained to Nishama Abraham yesterday, you know, some of us have children, or, you know, have had these kinds of situations where two different bodies aren't in agreement with each other. And my thought was, as a parent, you don't make that decision. You let them kind of work it out and talk with each other. And so my hope, right now, a lot of the emails, yes, we're reading all of our emails, but I think there's a lot of emails that feel like, well, we've never been included in this process. And that they weren't included in the original ordinance. And I think that's where people feel completely left out, and maybe that's where the step we took might not have been a good step. And so my hope in supporting Mary's proposal was that some healing could come out of that, and some community dialogue could come out of that, and maybe some better ideas that aren't up here at the dais. And I don't know, I mean, maybe people could do it on their own. But I guess I would really, really like the two different sides to talk with each other and get to know who the other person is, and that neither side is an ogre, and that they're, people are well-intended, and that we get this dialogue. So, I don't know. I mean, I would think it would need to be facilitated just in a, in a fair way, but not to try to direct it, but just to engage in a constructive dialogue. And so I think, I don't know, I mean, maybe this could just happen on its own. But I really want dialogue to happen from the two sides. And I can't say that more emphatically. I also can count. And it doesn't seem like there's five people up here who would, or how many are there, four of us who would support that. But I would just ask the community, you know, we're slowing down this process, and you have an opportunity, really, to give us feedback. And one of the best kinds of feedback, in addition to meeting with us separately, or as groups, whatever, would be to meet with each other, and to talk with each other, and come up with some constructive ideas. So anyway, that's all I'm asking. And so I just ask the community to kind of step up to the plate and find somebody who is on the other side, and see where you can move forward, so that there isn't an other side, but that there's more of a united voice. So.
Well, and that was the intent that I was trying to put forth, is for folks talking to each other, because I went through a kind of process like this, and it really made a difference in relationships between the two sides. And it makes a difference. But as Lisa said, I can count. And I know that folks have been talking to each other, and I hope that folks move beyond just trying to convince each other of their own position, and try to come to solutions, because, you know, this is moving forward. And I hope that at this next reading, that people feel like they were heard, and that some of their concerns were incorporated, and that it's not, at this point, an ordinance that was written by only one group, and that it has been, that we've heard other voices and attempted to incorporate it. And so I hope that if you do talk to each other, that you use that as a starting point. So. Aaron, and then Jen.
Well, and just, as you said, just to make sure that people know, we've been getting significant criticism from all sides of this question. Nobody has felt like what was written was exactly what they wanted to see. So we're working through those points as we go along. I had a motion to make, but do you want, Jen, do you want to?
I have an idea. I have an idea. And people are talking, which I think is great, and I liked your idea, Mary. One idea that I've got is, there is a neighborhood group, and by the way, I think- And by the way, I think in all neighborhoods, there are people who are supportive and definitely not supportive. But there is a neighborhood that I think really wants to see this happen. And I'd like us to look at a carrot approach.
A what?
A carrot approach, where maybe we encourage a neighborhood to reach out and to co-ops and encourage them to move into their neighborhood. And maybe what we would deliver is something like the truck for a street party for free or some snow removal or a park event or something like that. To, you know, if a neighborhood really kind of reaches out to the co-op community and helps them find a couple of properties or something like that, to really work together on how that can work in a neighborhood. And if we could find someone who would be willing to, a neighborhood that would be willing to step up and set an example, that would be worthy of us to throw some benefits out to them. Just an idea.
Make them cookies.
Yeah, it sounds like Jen's going to shovel their walk. I mean.
I might.
Aaron?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion. Tell me if I get the language wrong, but I move that we accept the first reading ordinance in our memo as amended by the various motions made tonight.
It would be the revised ordinance in the May 17 memo, not the one in the memo tonight.
Thank you very much. The revised ordinance from the May 17 memo, as amended by our various motions tonight regarding cooperative housing.
I'll second. Jen's got it.
All right. Do we vote by show of hands or?
Show of hands, this first reading.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Right. Passes unanimously.
Could I ask one question? We don't have it scheduled to come back. Do you want to give any guidance to CAC about when you'd like to see this come back? Or do you just want them to try to fit it into the schedule?
The one guidance I would give to CAC is make sure we've got time.
It's going to be a whole night.
It's going to be a big one. So let's, you know.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
Needs to be. I mean, not just for the public hearing, which is fine, too, but I think we still need to work through some, you know. Time's going to come back with a lot of options. We still need to work through some tough issues. I think it's pretty much a whole night. So it just needs to be scheduled accordingly. Might have to be a special meeting. I don't know, but somebody has to think about that.
I would just ask, back to my point before, we went through this ordinance and all of these different kind of subtitles, and that's how we're looking at it. And so when you do have dialogue, if you could kind of parse out those subtitles that would be, or subcategories, that would be really helpful.
All right. Thank you all. And thank you all for coming out tonight and for all of your feedback and effort on this, and we really appreciate it. We know it's tough for everybody, but we'll get there.
Absolutely. And yeah, I look forward to further community input on the issues we'll be drilling into next time.
Thanks for coming out. All right.
The next item is two election items. Second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 8113, amending Chapter 13.1 Elections, adopting the municipal election code in place of the uniform election code. And second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 8114, amending Chapter 13.2 Campaign Finance Disclosure, 13.3 Campaign Activities, and 13.4 Complaints Related to Election Procedures and Regulations.
Kathy Haddock will be presenting these.
Thank you, counsel.
Actually, may I add, I got an email from Nikki McCord from Voices for Invisible People, and she said it was ownership, not occupancy, that they were recommending. So I apologize for not, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay. We have two ordinances here that we're presenting. You had first reading a few months ago, and we're looking for a second reading because we have an election coming up, and we'd like to get some things in place. So before going, starting through them, that we were trying to address the basics that are covered by various laws that have been changed with respect to elections. And also, I want to address the concerns in some of the emails that you have received. I have received some of those. So, how do I do this? The history of the city's election code is that the uniform election code was adopted in 1994, I think to implement the state's adoption of election provisions to go with Tabor. When Tabor was adopted in 1992, elections were changed substantially. Boulder was very active in litigation at the time and trying to do some litigation that would interpret some very confusing provisions of Tabor. And so the election code was adopted. It was not adopted by other cities. Other cities didn't follow suit. And the next legislative cycle, the municipal election code was adopted in, or was revised so that it addressed all the Tabor issues. So most of the cities in Colorado and all, as far as I know, have adopted the municipal election code for municipal elections. As required by law, when they do the coordinated elections in November, they follow the uniform election code because that's what governs the county clerks, and the county clerks are the ones actually conducting the November elections. I listed the cities here that I checked to make sure that that was accurate, because I know you've received some emails that nobody else adopts the municipal election code. And this is just to show you, this is the current status of the Boulder County cities, as well as some of the other bigger cities that we look at. The purposes of the codes, for the uniform election code, is that it's statewide, it's for partisan elections, it's run by county clerks under the direction of the Secretary of State. It's required for all coordinated elections run by the county, including those that the city participates in. And all of our November elections are coordinated elections. For municipal elections, it's for citywide elections that are nonpartisan, run by city's clerks. It allows for special elections and for elections on general improvement districts. There was a concern that you could use lever voting machines or other things for municipal elections. The definition of voting machines in the municipal election code is the same as it is in the uniform election code. So the procedure and what you have to do for testing votes, testing machines and everything is the same for both. It's just the procedures leading up to the election are different in the municipal code than the uniform election code. So that is ordinance number 8113. 8114 is the campaign finance ordinance. We did it to address state law changes, or the changes recommended are to address these. State law no longer refers to political committees, and we had a section on political committees. Now those people will have to form issue committees or candidate committees like everybody else, because there's no longer registration at the state. Also, when the Campaign Reform Act was passed by the voters in the 90s, a formula was put into the ordinance to show that in order to qualify for matching funds, you had to meet certain things. That formula depends on the voting records being purged of people that have died, people that have not voted in a couple of years or whatever. And the state no longer purges election records. So we are recommending that you adopt dollar limits and the minimum level number of individual contributors. Those are the two things that previously had formulas. These are what the current formulas would come to, is your expenditure limit. If you want matching funds, it's $20,000 for an election, and you have to have a minimum number of individual contributors of 80, contributing $25. So we're recommending you adopt that to address the state law. And again, political committees have to form issue committees or candidate committees. Also, the changes are to address court decisions. Court decisions have continually narrowed what you can do as far as for limitations on any campaign, because it's tied to free speech. So basically, all of our limits that we have on issue committees are gone. We now have, reporting requirements are still upheld, but in very narrow circumstances. And those are when there's a public informational interest to address disproportionate corporate spending and if the forms to do the disclosures are difficult for people to understand. So that's why in the first part of ordinance 8114, there's a lot of underlining in the legislative intent to address those issues. And that's an area you really need to make sure that you agree with all the reasons there. I think that they are fully supported, especially since campaign finance disclosures were so important to the Boulder voters that they adopted initiative on it. The, there's a couple of other things for cleaning up things. As, when the Campaign Reform Act was adopted, there was not technology, and there's been a lot of questions about when people campaign by sending email blasts or something that they used to do by leaflets or handbills or something like that. Is that covered by the Campaign Reform provision? We've determined that by the intent of it, the intent of the Campaign Reform initiative was to, so that there would be reporting of that money was spent, who it was contributed by, and what it was spent on. So the way this is written, it doesn't cover, and this makes it clear, it doesn't cover campaigning that's done by technology that doesn't cost money. And other cleanup items that we have in there. The last thing is that we are asking that you adopt ordinance 8114 about the campaign finance part by emergency. We have been waiting to publish the guidelines for all of the issue committees for this year's elections until we know what you're going to pass as the law. But we're getting, several committees are already formed, because we have four initiatives out there. And very soon, other committees will be forming, and we'd really like to get the guidelines out to them. If we go to another reading and then a 30-day effective period, these won't be effective before we have a lot of committees. So that's the quick and dirty of what we're doing here. Any questions?
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Matt?
Yeah, two minor things. So on one of the cleanups, this is pretty minor. This is on page 142, where you change the candidate's financial disclosure statement to the candidate's interest disclosure statement, which is certainly weird wording, but it's not consistent, because, I mean, the very first sentence says information regarding financial dealings. And then in Part B, it says, any person required to file a financial disclosure statement required by this chapter. And I didn't search the whole document to see if there are other references to financial disclosure, but it just seems like you changed the title without changing related items, and it's hardly the end of the world, and you could fix it later. But anyway, those two popped out.
Okay. And actually, I see a mistake where you're right. On line 17, we have financial disclosure rather than interest disclosure. The reason was this was confusing to people, because as incumbents, you just have to disclose what you have a financial interest in. You do not have to disclose the amount of that financial interest. And so people had been looking at forms expecting to see numbers on them, and your incumbent statements don't have numbers on them. So that's a reason for the change, to control expectations. I'm fine with another word under than interest statement, if there's something that's better. But financial statement was leading to questions, because people weren't seeing numbers.
It's not enough to go nuts over, but it's a somewhat odd use of word. I think that's actually kind of more confusing, but all right, I'll let other people worry about it, or maybe it's okay for now. And the other question, it's a concern, it's really, it's more of a question. So the eligibility for matching funds and the limit of $20,000, and they're related to one another. You decided to simplify, and I get that, instead of having some formula, you decided to simplify it. But it's an important number, and it's based on the theoretical registered number of voters, which we arbitrarily decided was, you know, 90,000. If you look at the 2015 census estimates, there are only 88,000 people in the city of Boulder who are 18 years old or older. So given that they're not all registered, we know 90,000 is high. And I don't know, that has an effect. I mean, it lets people think a little more, but it also makes it harder for people to qualify for the matching funds. And furthermore, the number never changes as the population changes. So eventually, you'd have to come back to council, I suppose, and say, well, we need a new number in here, because we're out of sync with reality. So was it mostly just, you wanted to simplify it, even though we could run off census data?
Well, if you want to substitute census data for the unpurged election record, registration record, you could do that. We do not have purged registration records, which it goes by now.
Registration records are useless, I think, at this point. I get that.
Okay. So if you would prefer to do a census number rather than a specific number, you could. I think either way, you're going to have to look at it and be making changes periodically, because just the economy doesn't necessarily go with these issues. But it's totally up to you. We thought it was easier with a number.
Okay. Well, there's a question. After the public hearing, we can talk about it, but I was just, I want to make sure I understood why you chose what you chose.
Lisa?
On the number of 20,000, I mean, in the original ordinance, wasn't all of that originally, like, supposed to be adjusted for inflation? And wouldn't it be the same thing in terms of the number of people or signatories you need to be get, not signatories, but people who would be matching funds? So I don't know. I don't know if it would improve it to say that we'll look at this on X, you know, X number of years, every five years or every 10 years. I mean, I think it should be probably an even number of years, since our elections generally are every two years. But I think it would behoove us to maybe include something in here that would remind us that, oh, maybe we should look at it, not necessarily change it, but just look at where we are with respect to inflation, our population and things like that. Would that, what do you think of that?
Sure, that's fine. We can put language in the legislative intent that that's your intent, since there's a prohibition against you binding future councils.
Right, right, right.
A requirement.
I understand.
So the legislative intent may be the best place to put that.
Yeah. My whole thing is that it'd be important that it be brought up again.
Yeah.
Aaron?
Well, but couldn't we do it with the formula, instead of saying, hey, check in every so often to consider the following factors?
Yes, you can do a formula.
Right. I know we had a different formula before. Okay, I just want to understand. I had another question, if you're done with that.
I'm done.
So my question was about, on page 147 of the packet, this is about, this is the statement of contributions and expenditures of the official candidate committees. And the specifics section says that, this is F, says, copies of documents supporting the contributions and expenditures included in any statements required by this section shall be provided to the city manager at the time of submitting the statement. So just went through a campaign a few months ago. So I remember the scramble that you had to submit each of those statements, and the filling out the form online is complicated and takes a long time. As I read this, at the same time that you submit the form, you would also have to scan any documents you might have that you used to produce that report, or if you had an Excel file, great. But like, you'd have to then kind of separately gather all your other materials and then bring them in or post them. Is that correct?
That is correct. You could bring them in or you could scan them. The reason is that the reporting that's done is on a form, so the public can look at it, and it's just a lump sum number. We have a campaign finance administrator who does actual spot audits, and you need the background information for the spot audits.
I'm sorry, the lump number, you have to put in the name of, you have to put in the, is it just the total amounts that you?
Well, when you list your contributions and expenditures, you have to do all the individual names.
Right. Yeah, so you already have to type in every name and every expenditure. So the full details in the report. So this, I guess what I'm missing is, what are you submitting separately that's not in the report that you're submitting?
And Diane Marshall would be the one that could answer that perfectly. But the answer that I know, and Lynette can help me if I know anything different, it's the copies of the invoices and that type of thing.
Okay. Yeah, so proof, basically. So proof, basically.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm a little confused. I was the lucky one from my year who got audited for the campaign finance.
And you can answer.
Yeah. So I recall having had all that in a file, and then we had to go have a conversation about it, and she went through all of the details. Why, why do we need to turn in the receipts? I mean, I could see the report being sufficient, and then the receipts we need to have if we get audited because you at least get that spot check. It seems like an awful lot of work for every candidate, only some of whom will actually make it to office to have to do all of that. Because scanning is fine, but the truth is, it's a lot of reporting by the time you're done. So do we feel that that's necessary? I mean, we're reporting already. We're saying who it is and who gave money and who we expended to. But is it important to have the actual documents for everyone?
Well, we don't know who's going to be elected at the time that we're doing the audits during the campaign.
Sure.
Thing. So I think, I don't think there's any audits after the election season, or it's very, they are after, okay.
There's one, one person who got elected goes through an audit.
Okay. Okay. So this is what Diane asked for as the administrator that would make her job easier. If you think it's switching the burden inappropriately to the candidate, we can make it, we can optimize that.
I think she's really helpful in trying to, I mean, it was a little complicated, the whole thing. But I think she was very helpful in doing that. But I'm with Sam on this, you know? I mean, you're in a scramble to meet these deadlines. And to have to copy all these and, or scan them, I mean, my printer never scans, right? And, you know, it's just, it's just, I don't know. I think it's, it's arduous. I think, you know, maybe say, there will be three people audited, so you must keep them. And I think there's a, you know, there are some fines out there that I worried about, you know? I worried about whether or not I was doing everything appropriately. And I think, keep those in there. And, you know, maybe audit three people instead of just one. But to require all of that paperwork, man, I mean, is she going to keep it on file? That's gonna, you're going to require an office.
An alternative might be, so I recall that when my election was over, one person who got elected and one who did not get elected got audited afterwards and had to go through the whole thing. Another way you could do this, if you want the records, is at the end, you know, when the election has ended, we could turn in all of our supporting documentation, and they could keep it on record and audit whatever they wanted. But rather than having to try and get down here and turn it in during the campaign, which...
Yeah. And I'll jump in here, and I would agree with that. It's just, you're hardly sleeping. So to add one more thing is just really, really difficult. Lisa?
Yeah. And I, I have to say that the process has really improved over time. I can't tell you how easy I found it this year to do compared to previous elections. So...
That makes one of us.
But I have to compliment staff for making it so easy. You used to have to walk in, or your treasurer had to walk in your statements and give a hard copy. We didn't have an Excel sheet. We didn't have anything in, in prior days. And it is easy, just relative. It is easy. But I would concur that I think it's sufficient. I think everybody keeps several folders of, you know, expenditures, contributions, all of that. And I would just ask that we don't have to do that at the timelines unless we get audited during then, but that it be very clear that everybody has to keep their folder with all of the appropriate materials. And then whether you get elected or not, you are required by some date certain, let people sleep after the election, and bring those materials in at, at that time. And then the administrative clerk could make a determination as to when she doesn't need those materials anymore.
Right. And we do have a retention schedule for that. So I wanted to point out, we don't keep them forever. So I think what you're asking for is we change this language from that...
We should hear from the public.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
To that, I think.
All right. So any more questions? Jan?
Well, I just, I thought I was going to agree with you, Lisa. But I'm not sure that everyone should bring their stuff in unless the clerk is really going to do something with it. If they're not, then just do it as an audit like she's done before, which I think is probably good for our purposes. And if everyone knows that they're going to be audited, then they should, and maybe you audit a greater percentage, but to bring in everything, unless she's going to really go through everything, which would take weeks, then I don't see a purpose for that.
Well, I was just trying to agree with Sam. Sorry.
All right.
Let me ask one more question before we move on then. You say you have a retention schedule for all of these materials. Are you required to collect them at the, or to have them at the end?
No. It's just that I wanted to give you assurance that we don't maintain them forever. And, and I'm sorry, I forget what it is. I believe it's six months after the election, but I would have to double check on that.
Okay.
Yours are gone already.
What's that?
So yours are gone already. All right. Any more questions? All right. So we will move on to the public hearing, and we have a couple of people signed up. I will call your name, and you have three minutes. Mary Eberly and Neil McBurnett.
Good evening. I'm Mary Eberly. I live at 1520 Crest Court in Boulder. I'm very interested in the conversation you just had because you didn't address Ordinance 8113 at all because you think everything is going smoothly with our elections, I believe. And you are very concerned about the campaign finance changes. So that's just interesting to me. I've been working on election integrity since the Bush v. Gore situation. And if you've seen what I've seen in this state, you would probably ask more questions about 8113. So I'm going to start at the end. I hope you, as the council, our representatives, will table the current proposal, the 8113 proposal, on changing the election code, and that you will ask staff to do comprehensive research on all of the Colorado cities listed on that table, the population of Boulder or larger, to learn the improvements that those cities have required so that the municipal election code works in a modern election. This code was written originally in 1965, and it's barely been changed. I urge you, council, to consider appointing a citizen board to assist the city clerk and city attorney's office in formulating city code language to bolster the 1965 MEC provisions before adopting it. My fondest hope, however, is much bigger. Let us, as a smart, caring city, come up with a municipal approach to nonpartisan elections that is so good that our local state representatives and senators would bring our code language to the state Capitol to improve and modernize the municipal election code for all cities and towns in Colorado. Boulder citizens and Colorado citizens who live in cities and towns, which is most of us, deserve much better. Can you decide to make this a goal? Now, I have a lot of specifics. I've emailed some specifics to some of you. Maybe that has sparked some questions. I'd love to try to respond to questions. The municipal code is just not ready for primetime without a lot of help. And those cities that were shown on the display by Kathy Haddock have all added things to their code. Denver, I mentioned, had 24 pages of additions. Aspen, for Pete's sake, Aspen has nine, eight or nine pages of additions so that they can run decent city elections. We don't, we won't have any if we just do it the way that it's set out tonight. Please don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Do you have some more questions?
I was, could you just kind of highlight some of the changes or additions that Denver, Aspen have included and that we are not, and that you think are critical that we do include?
I apologize, I cannot do that. I can tell you some things that we would not be doing that you probably think we would be doing.
Okay.
First of all, when we vote in our normal November elections, as we did last fall, we have generally mail ballots. And we sign the outer envelope, and the county clerk checks that signature against signatures that we have on file, for instance, with the Department of Motor Vehicles, to see that that is legitimately submitted ballot envelope before that ballot is, is taken out and counted. That process is not part of the municipal election code. And it, it will be eventually, but between now and then, it isn't. And I know of a situation in Georgetown where the lack of signatures, the lack of indication of who submitted ballots changed the outcome of the mayoral race. That's an elected position in Georgetown. And yet, there was no way to, quote, "get to the bottom of it." No data.
So can I just ask you in that particular one? So how do we in the city verify signatures? Or how do we verify that you're saying who you are and that that signature or that whatever is a real, accurate identifier?
We coordinate, and the county clerk does it. That's how we do it. Because we have chosen to follow the Uniform Election Code. And so we have our city elections in November when that process is in force. And we have the Secretary of State to make sure that things are going well, and we can lodge complaints to the secretary. And the people in his office, the technical people, the legal people can come and see what's going on and strain it out. We don't have, we won't have that under the municipal, we will be just adrift. We need to have stuff in our code to make it good and make it work. Bless you.
Sam?
So my understanding is that in this November's election, we'll be governed by the Uniform Code, and we'll do a coordinated election. So what do you see as a risk of going ahead with this and passing it the way it is and then modifying it? Because the next time we'll use this will be when we have a special election of some type or a very localized election within the city of some type. Those would be the only occasions that this would be the governing code. So what risks do you see of going forward with this?
Well, Mr. Weaver, it's, the risk I see is, based on my experience of working with the legislature during this period since the Bush v. Gore situation. And that is, exactly what you say is what often happens. We will pass this law now. We have to pass it. You know, it's the time to pass it, for whatever reason. And then we'll fix it, and it doesn't get fixed. People move on to whatever the next crisis is. And very bad legislation happens that way, and this would be in that category. It would be much better to adjust, to figure out the adjustments that we need to make, put that in, in the, the language that you're going to consider, and, and then make the change if that's what you decide to do.
Jan?
You mentioned that we would be adrift from the county. Is that the way Longmont is now?
They have their own city code that bolsters the, the very primitive municipal election code. By the way, the election equipment that was mentioned is cross-reference to what's in the Uniform Election Code. Well, I looked that up. There is not one word in that section about what election equipment is required or prohibited. Yet, in the, in the municipal code, this outdated one, what is described is old-fashioned lever machine equipment, not legal anywhere in this country. Three pages of description in this municipal code. It is pages 73 to 75 in the statute, if you want to look it up.
All right. Any other question for Ms. Eberly? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Neil McBurnett.
Hi. I'm Neil McBurnett, 4025 Evans Drive, Boulder. And thank you for postponing this, and thank you for actually having a public hearing. I was really astonished that there wasn't one scheduled the first time around. I certainly want to speak in support of everything that Mary said, and she's, Mary has looked at this a lot, just in general. I mean, she really knows how this stuff works, and I share her concerns. The principle, I, I've been involved in elections also since 2002. I've served as a precinct judge. I've served as, I've helped pass laws in Colorado to require audits in the Uniform Code. And then to improve the audits that we require in the Uniform Code, Colorado is a leader there. Boulder is a leader in audits. So it's hugely disappointing to me to think that we might have a special election to have a council vacancy done and not have language that's already been worked out that requires us to do an audit. I mean, we're the folks that pioneered audits in this area, and it would be strange not to add things to the code to deal with that. So we would be adrift in the sense that we would be abandoning code that requires audits from 2005 that anticipates audits in 2017 that are really good audits and, and not do that. I'm also facing this, this discussion, a big discussion about auditing and financial disclosure stuff. Surely, we should audit the paper ballots that we should require very explicitly in the code and do that with the actual votes that caused the elections to come, to come about. Again, Boulder is a leader. We haven't had an opportunity to meet with staff to kind of go through the vision. I don't quite understand what the rush is here since we don't have anything, I don't know of any elections scheduled that this would be required for. So let's put our ducks in a row first. Let's come up with a great code, whether it's the Uniform Code because that meets our needs and it's easy to change, or whether it's the municipal code that, that takes the information and experience that we have to heart. We should have elections in which there is, that are called evidence-based elections. Colleagues of mine at the University of California have put together this notion of not expecting certification of machines to help you, to help convince you that an election happened well, but to expect the documentation from the election, the ballots, the chain of custody, a random audit of those elections. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but please take your time to do this, right?
Thank you, Mr. McBurnett. Any questions for Mr. McBurnett? All right. Thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Aaron?
So I definitely get the rationale for using the simpler municipal code for general improvement districts, things like that. Why wouldn't we use the more thorough Uniform Code for special council elections?
Well, the municipal election code allows council to decide at any point that they want to use a Uniform Code for any particular election. I think there's lots of reasons why you wouldn't do that, because it would increase the expense. The, sorry, I was, I'm going to, because it would increase the expense, period. I'll say that. I'm, I'm ready to address all the other things that were raised, like about the machines you can do and mail ballots and all the issues that were raised too. Those things are protected under municipal election code, just like they are under the Uniform Election Code.
So the, so the Uniform Code would cause increased expense for special council elections?
Right. Because of the extra notices that are required, the extra steps that you have to go through, the... to go through, the coordination with the Secretary of State, all that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Jan?
Ms. Everly discussed how other cities who had adopted this had to make major revisions to it. Is that your assumption that we would do as well?
No, I have looked at all of those codes that she referenced. I've talked to Ms. Everly a couple times for over two hours on this issue. And those codes have, are long because they've got their campaign finance stuff in the same place. They do not have very many amendments to the Municipal Election Code. The ones that they do have are, because their charter requires them to be done differently, but there's not things that I'd necessarily recommend doing or adding to our Municipal Election Code because our charter doesn't require them. We don't have the same circumstances.
And then one more question. Why are we in a hurry to do this?
We have been trying to do this for several years now because we have not kept up with making the amendments to the election code that are required every year because the Uniform Election Code is amended almost every year by the legislature. And then we have to amend our code to take out all the stuff that they've added that applies to partisan elections or statewide elections or because the Secretary of State is doing something different. It's one of those things that with the work plan, hasn't been done in the past several years. But I've been working on this for about five years now.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question just, so the substance of this is a little hard for those of us that don't grovel around in these codes to understand. Could you talk about the audit requirements? Because that sounded like that was a big concern. And, you know, you may just disagree with Ms. Everly, but I'd be curious about your interpretation of the voting machine types and definitions in the Municipal Code.
Okay. And I did add that to the, as one of the first reading questions that came to me afterwards by her. And what's happened is that the, and I'm looking because I want to find the name of the audit procedure, voter verified paper record. That's a program that was put into effect a couple of years ago as a pilot and is going to be started in 2017. If the city were to use voting machines, we are required to do that, just like the state is. So because the definition of voting machines in the Municipal Election Code is the same as it is in the Uniform Election Code, all the requirements that go with the voting machines in the Uniform Code would apply to the city, including the risk limiting, oops, I'm sorry, the risk limiting audits and the voter verified paper record.
So it seemed like one of the risks that was being flagged was that we have a election between now and 2017 and then it not have the same requirements or the same audit requirements. But we could avoid that challenge, if indeed it is one, by using the Uniform Election Code for anything that comes between now and 2017. Is that right?
We could do that. We could use machines that already meet with the requirement. We probably would never buy our own machines. We'd be borrowing from other people. We could do mail ballot election rather than polling place election. We could use paper ballots rather than using machines. There's lots of different types of ways that you can do it.
If we didn't mail ballots, would we have this exposure to the signature verification? Because then we would have to do that, right? If it was ours and not a coordinated election, would we have the clerk help us do that for a fee? Or how would we validate signatures?
Well, the clerk may do it for us for a fee, depending on, and I'm sorry, we're talking about the county clerk. This clerk will help us no matter what we do. But the county clerk will help with, for a fee if there's time available. And there's other organizations that help, and that's how we verify signatures, like on initiative petitions, which we have to do soon. Is, Lynette's already set up, having a bunch of people in here to do that, set up procedures and everything to be ready for that. Because the companies that do that are not always available. And since we don't know when we're going to get petitions, we don't know when we're going to do it. So we would follow those procedures. The procedures for mail ballot elections is the same for mail ballot elections by the state and by the city.
Thank you.
So could you, I guess I'm still not very clear about how we would verify the ballots.
We'd follow the same procedure that the state does when they do a mail ballot election. And I, actually, I did.
So is that driver's licenses?
You're getting into more detail than I know by memory. I've got it up here, but I'm not getting my mouse to work. Or I could show you, I could answer that. There's a whole section about how you have to do mail ballot elections that's in, actually in the Uniform Election Code, but applies to everybody.
What page?
What page? Well, it's section, it's chapter, sorry, it's 1-7.5-101 and all the sections of Part 1 in the state statute. And so I'm trying to go through, if you want me to do this, like 15 pages to find this without an index.
What I want is, you know, and I appreciate your looking, but I want to make sure that if we go forward with this, we know what we're doing, that we know that the people who are sending in these ballots, that we have verification of who those people are so that it can't be corrupted.
We have to follow the same procedures for mail ballot election as the state does. So does that enter, I mean, obviously, I can't guarantee that people are going to comply with the law, but the same law applies to us. If we're going to follow the law, we're going to do exactly the same thing that the state does or the county clerks do.
And I guess to Sam or I guess it was Jan's question about why now? It has to do with just cleanup? And you've been working on this for X amount of time?
Well, yeah, we've been trying to get it done for five years. And of course, with the campaign finance, more changes come up. But we're trying to be ready for a special election. The general improvement district elections that we have done over the past five years, we've kind of had to gerrymander to be able to do them in compliance with the code.
And in the past, when we have done like local improvement districts and things like that, that's been coordinated election with the, it's been done at the same time that the county has had their elections.
It's been done at the same time. I only know for the past five years that I've been working on this. I don't know what's been done since 1992. But what we have done with the general improvement district, since we generally have five voters, like for the Boulder Junction Districts, we just had five voters. We just run them separately so that we don't add the costs to that election of being part of the coordinated election.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
Do you want me to go over the changes I think you asked for on that subsection F?
Sure.
Or do you want?
No, that would be good.
Okay. The subsection F that we were talking about, about providing the supporting documentation, appears in section 13-2-8, 13-2-9, and 13-2-11. And I understand that you want me to change that in all three sections, either to require the committees to maintain all those records and provide them upon request, or to provide all of those records within a certain number of days after the election is over.
I was thinking the former.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So I change all of those sections F because they're all worried the same, that they would say copies of documents supporting the contributions and expenditures included in any statements required by this section shall be maintained by the committee and, sorry, and available for providing to the city manager in the event of an audit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
So I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 8114, amending chapter 13-2 Campaign Financing Disclosure and some other chapters to make changes to conform to recent Supreme Court cases and changes to state law, change the campaign limits for matching funds from formulas to dollars, clarify issues in setting forth related details. So that's the motion language for 8114.
And I'll second that one.
Thank you.
Do you want to incorporate her change?
Is that one by emergency? Which one's by emergency?
That's the one that we would ask by emergency. You have a blue sheet on your desk that has the last page changed if you do adopt it by emergency.
That's what I was asking. I thought that's what you said. So it's got an emergency finding at the end of it.
Okay.
Correct.
Somewhere at the last piece.
Correct.
Which is always how we do it. Okay.
Here we go. So, and that we adopt, you want this adopted as emergency?
That would help so that we can go ahead and publish our guidelines.
Yes, 8114, yes. So, yeah, my motion is to adopt it as an emergency measure, requiring two-thirds of the council members present to vote for it.
All right. So moved by Weaver and seconded by Marzal. Any further discussion?
Again, I don't know if anybody's interested in this, and it's not to die for, but I'm still not thrilled with fixing 20,080 people kind of permanently and never being quite right. Yes, I mean, I understand that the registration rules are essentially worthless now. But, you know, we got census data. You can use the latest, and I don't mean 2010. There's a, you know, the American Community Survey. It's from the Census Bureau. Gets updated every year. You can see how many people are over 18. That's clearly the max. Frankly, I would probably pick like 90% of that, but we could also just say that's the number and put back in the inflationary increment. So nobody really has to deal with this again. And sorry if it confuses potential candidates. If they can't get through this, you know, maybe it weeds out.
Let them chew on excise taxes.
Yeah, right, exactly. And besides, I mean, the clerk's office does a fabulous job of coming up with, you know, here's your packet, here's how many you need to meet the matching funds. You don't have to calculate it. Somebody calculates it for you. It's, again, not to die for, but I think then we wouldn't, we'd have a better number and we wouldn't have to worry about it every year. It would stay in sync both with inflation, which is the cost side, and with number of people, which is the, you know, the surrogate for the registered voters.
So are you proposing we do that now? Because this is.
Is that in this motion?
Well, it could come back, although.
This is an emergency. Yeah.
You know, it just goes back to the original language. Because that's what the original language said, except it said it used the number of registered voters. And instead of saying that, you could say, use the latest information available from the U.S. Bureau of Census. And there you go. All the rest of it used to be in the ordinance, right? Because the ordinance had the inflation in it and it had the, let's use the number of people who are registered. So I'm just changing that portion of where you get the number from, switching it from the registered voters, which we know doesn't work, to a different metric. That's it. That's the change. But.
Well, it's going to have to get written on the fly right now or at least pulled from the old ordinance.
Or, yeah, or we indicate what we want. And I think as long as we're clear about it, that's good enough. I don't know if we need every single word, if we're very clear on the concept.
If we're going to vote on it.
My experience is that you do that. And if you're going to make any changes, that you'd have another reading if you weren't doing it by emergency. But I will happy to do as directed. And if I need to draft on the fly, I will do my best.
Well, if you could do that, we can come back to it and give you a little bit of time and go into, we've done this before and come back to the next, go to the next issue. And then frankly, you could even interrupt us and give us the language.
So table this and then I can make the motion on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. But that's, if people are interested, again, it's not to die for, but I think it solves a long-term problem and we don't have to, the next council and the one after that doesn't have to come back to it.
So I'm fine with that. I would say that for something like this, if it's possible to get that out just ahead of the meeting, because that way maybe there could have been alternative language or something.
I'm not sure I thought about it. Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that your motion captured the change that Kathy is going to make about submitting supporting materials.
It does.
Okay.
Yes, we talked about that.
Great.
As part of the motion, so.
And we also have to think about the 80 people.
So, yeah, you know, this one doesn't have the old, no, it does have the old language. You just have to take out three words. I looked at that.
Or you could just fix it at 80. I think having the dollar amount float.
No, you should float it. All you got to do is take out the new thing where it says a minimum of 80. You're done. Okay? Because the old language was, the candidate raises at least 10% of the expenditure limit from individual contributors. That solves it. The new language, I had to think about this for a minute. The new language is four words, a minimum of 80. Just take it out.
There's the minimum of $25 per.
That's the old language.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying is, I guess you're talking about editing. But I'm saying the concept is more than just, the concept.
Oh, yeah, the concept is a little more than that because it's no more than $25 per contribution. But that's all the old language. The only change to that section of the four words, a minimum of 80. If you take it out, it goes back to the old language, which then is 10% of the max.
You just want to undo all the changes? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I want to undo those four words because then that would be consistent.
But we need to put back in the previous words.
In the previous section, what you need, the only change.
Can I propose just leaving it as it is, not making the changes on the fly? Because this is starting to make me uncomfortable. And we can come back. We can adopt it now and come back at a later date.
That's fine. It's a really easy change.
So let's do that.
We can do that. Bring it back, put it on consent.
Okay.
Okay, so I made a motion and got seconded by Lisa, who's now out of the room. You proposed a amendment and I, right, you were talking about making a further change. And so we'll just wait on that.
Yeah, that just, again, nobody's running for council for another year and a half, which is the only thing that.
All right, so we can wait until then and bring it back before then.
Just bring it back on consent. It's a few words and we'll pass it on consent.
All right, so wait for Lisa to come back. Go get her.
If we don't pick it up, I'm going to start binging on sugary self-drinks.
We're not going to let you. Actually, we're going to charge you.
Yeah, we're going to charge you, pay us all. I want a quarter.
Now we're missing Jan.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. All right, let's, is it show hands?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Applebaum?
Aye.
Brockett?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Marzal?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I can make another one to keep us moving. I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 8113, amending chapter 13-1 Elections, adopting the Municipal Election Code in place of the Uniform Election Code to streamline the process for municipal nonpartisan elections and setting forth related details.
Second.
All right, moved by Weaver and seconded by Applebaum.
Councilmember Weaver?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Applebaum?
Aye.
Brockett?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Marzal?
I suppose.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
So I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate you guys coming out and telling us all you did. I'm sorry that you didn't get the steps you were asking for. In this case, I have to trust that our city attorney is giving us good legal advice on this. So that's fundamentally the choice I'm making here. And if there are specific things that you further strengthen, once we get through this, we have time to do that. And it would be much appreciated if you would send in some of those that you think are specific. that you think are specific, that would make a difference here in Boulder. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for staying so late with us. We'll move on. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you for your five years of work on this.
Okay, we're only 10 minutes behind.
Your next public hearing, second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 8121, amending Title IX Land Use Code to adopt a form-based code for the Boulder Junction Phase One and Notice of Action on Proposed Amendments to the Transit Village Area Plan Connections Plan.
And Charles Farrow and Carl Geiler are here to present this matter to council
So, good evening, members of council. We're excited to be before you this evening with the final draft of the pilot form-based code for the Boulder Junction area. I think as many of you know, this has been kind of a work in progress over the course of the past year. We've been working with a consultant. We've made a few pit stops along the way, checking in both here and at Planning Board. So I'll turn it over to Carl Geiler to take you through the staff analysis. Little bit of a unfortunately longer presentation than usual. It's a lot of regulatory information that we've tried to present in a manner that's as concise as possible. So if you have questions along the way, we're happy to answer them. But I'll turn it over to Carl Geiler to take you through the staff analysis.
Thank you, Charles. Like Charles said, I'm happy to go through the entire presentation and then take questions. Or if you want to interrupt me with any questions, feel free to jump in. I'm happy to answer them at any time. So the form-based code...
Excuse me, before we move forward, we need to suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
George.
All right. All right, Carl.
So the form-based code pilot project is part of the city's Design Excellence Initiative. This grew out of some community concerns about the design of projects that have been built in recent years. As you recall, the city brought in Victor Dover to provide some suggestions for changes in our code or process or other programs to improve upon design. And form-based code was one of his suggestions. He had suggested that we look at a relatively small geographic area to apply a form-based code to test, in this case, in an area where there is an established vision. So it seemed intuitive, based on the development that's occurring, to apply it to the Boulder Junction Phase One area. So that's where this would apply. So the goal is basically to try a new tool that would regulate development with the goals of achieving better design outcomes, better specifying what the community wants in a particular area, simplifying the process and adding a bit more predictability to the process as compared to the current site review process. So through the course of the last year, we've been working with a design consultant called Codametrics. Leslie Oberholzer has come to present to council on a number of occasions. Unfortunately, she couldn't attend tonight. She had other obligations. But we've been working with a form-based code working group. We've stopped in with Planning Board on a number of occasions. We've had some joint meetings with Planning Board, Design Advisory Board, Transportation Advisory Board and the Boulder Junction Access District, as well as a number of stakeholders throughout the city, the Steel Yards HOA. So it's been an ongoing process. So before the council tonight is the form-based code, the final draft that we've prepared, as well as amendments to the Transit Village Area Plan Connections Plan that were identified as part of the form-based code project. So the form-based code is in Attachment A of the memo and the changes to TVAP are in Attachment B. So I'm going to try to, as briefly as I can, just talk about the timeline of the last year. The project basically started off and it's in three phases where we had the form-based code 101 that was presented by Victor Dover in spring of last year. That was followed by joint board meetings and a community workshop where we conducted an image preference survey to derive from the community what was acceptable architecturally or design-wise and what was unacceptable. We met with the form-based code working group on a number of occasions. We checked in with council in May of last year about the direction we were going. In June of last year, we came back with guiding principles that were really derived from what we learned in the image preference survey, kind of dictating, you know, where we should really be focusing our attention in the form-based code. And then through July, we did more community workshops. We created more components of the form-based code and brought it back to council as a study session in August. Following that, we moved forward with an open house and then the Planning Board meeting in October, where we brought kind of the first draft before the Planning Board. So it was generally supported by the board at that time. But they did have some concerns and there was a little bit of disagreement on the board as far as whether it was too regulatory or whether it was too open-ended. So we've been trying to work on those things and trying to mesh it with our complicated code over the last few months. And we finally brought it back to Planning Board in April, where they unanimously approved the form-based code in April. So I'm going to jump into ordinance number 8121, which is the actual changes that go into our land use code. So it adds a new section to the land use code. It's as 9 to 16 Form-Based Code Review. It's structured very similarly to the site review and use review sections of our code. But we've really been trying to do it in a way where you might have heard some suggestions from Planning Board and staff members to try out a new site review light type process. So we tried to formulate it in that, with that in mind. So the section in the code sets up the scope and purpose. It sets up the review process. It enables applicants to request minor modifications similar to site review that would apply to form-based code projects. And it also sets up exception criteria to enable some flexibility, again, trying to keep this a lot more simple than our current site review. But basically, form-based code reviews would apply to the area in Appendix L as Boulder Junction. It's adaptable to add more areas in the future if we decide to add more form-based codes. There's an administrative review process if there's any smaller scale projects that are one-story, less than 500 square feet and don't require exceptions. We want to enable some small modifications. Also being clear that the form-based code is much more black and white than the current site review process, which has, as you know, like seven pages of subjective criteria that, you know, can create some disagreement. This would be more black and white. But it would be a staff-level project with no automatic planning board hearings. But it is set up in a way where it can be called up by the public or it could be called up by Planning Board to basically evaluate the effectiveness of the form-based code. So through this learning process, we're hoping to derive if there's improvements that need to be made to the form-based code, if things aren't working quite right or if there needs to be new additions. So again, Appendix L is the areas where it would apply and Appendix M is the actual regulations. So one thing that's important to note is that most of what's in the ordinance is really creating references to the form-based code because we're adding kind of this new construct to the code. And there's a lot of parts of the land use code that reference use review and site review. We had to do the same and add form-based code review. But I wanted to talk about what would continue to apply in these areas and what areas would be superseded. So are use standards that are in the land use code would continue to apply? Doesn't change that. There are a couple additions in the form-based code. There's requirements that large projects would have to be 50% residential to really kind of implement the vision of the Transit Village Area Plan. There's also requirements for storefront uses in certain locations where it has to be active pedestrian uses, so dining and entertainment uses, restaurants and retail uses. Most of the form-based code, or most of the form and bulk standards in our land use code would be superseded. This is a form-based code, so it's really meant to try something different and dictate it more specifically. So it does supersede that section of the code, but it does not supersede how the city measures building height. It doesn't override the charter, so I want to make that really clear. It would supersede the intensity standards, so open space and density. It's really kind of dictating the form and bulk, how it's supposed to appear. But it would not supersede the occupancy standards. Almost everything in the development standards would continue to apply, our lighting standards, our parking standards, access. The usable open space standards would apply in some areas, but mostly would be superseded by the outdoor space standards that are in the form-based code. So that's an overview of the ordinance. So I'm going to jump into the actual form-based code. It's broken up into four sections. So we have general provisions, site design, building types and then building design. So general provisions basically just sets up the general purpose, the design goals, how it's organized. But really, most importantly, it's the regulating plan. So this is the plan that shows, it's kind of a hybrid between the zoning ordinance and the land use map, where it shows where building types are permitted. It also talks about where, it shows where the TVAP connections would have to be. So it's consistent with TVAP. It also specifies Type A and Type B streets. So Type A streets are, where you would have a higher emphasis on pedestrianality along the street scape, whereas Type B streets would be a little bit more flexible on where access can be taken. They're kind of secondary. So the site design section really focuses more on the street scapes around buildings as well as new Paseo standards that would cross through blocks, what those Paseos would look like, what their surface treatments would have to be, their widths, what kind of landscaping would be in them. It also specifies the different types of outdoor space that could apply on the specific sites and what the percentages of green space and hardscape would have to be. So looking at some of the maps that are in the form-based code that are unique, the one on the left is the protected view corridors map that's in the general provisions. This is something that was identified through the process where it was found to be important to retain view lines of the flatirons from Depot Square to kind of create that connection to the mountains that would effectively be lost if we implemented the zoning as it is today, where people could go to four or five stories and the FAR. So it does restrict the heights of buildings in that location to retain those views. So it sets up a process for how we review projects and make sure that those view lines are retained. Moving into site design, it specifies where outdoor space locations have to be. Effectively, it's every eighth of a mile, there has to be some sort of publicly accessible open space. And if that's not met, it has to be met on a site that doesn't meet that eighth of a mile. And it specifies how that would be done. So I'm going to move on to the building type section. There's a lot of words here. This is just an example of what the building type section shows. So this...
Carl, can I interrupt you there? This question about the open space area is something we tangled with occasionally is that if you have a private development, that requiring their open space to be public seems to not be necessarily doable from a regulatory standpoint. So how do you reconcile that with a form-based code that requires publicly accessible open space?
I mean, we struggled with that with the form-based code as well and it doesn't require publicly accessible. It basically says that it can be, has to be open to the users and tenants of the development, which is the same as the site review process. It doesn't require that it be dedicated. But there are scenarios where an open space might be provided. It might be just, it might be fenced off for just the residents. So that would not qualify under these scenarios. So in that case, they would have to provide some sort of, they'd have to keep it open, you know, for people to enter the property that are using the property. But it wouldn't require it to be dedicated.
So you could limit it, require it for users and tenants, but not necessarily the public at large?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But developers still do reserve the right, if they want to make it open to the public. We've had people volunteer to do that, put public access easements over it. That still remains an option. We just can't require it.
Thank you.
So just basically in the building type section, this is where like you get into what I call the bones of the building, just kind of getting the structure of the buildings, the form. It focuses on the design, location and uses, the additional use requirements. This is what's going to create the shape of buildings to fulfill basically the vision of TVAP. So that's where you get really kind of into the meat of the form-based code. So just really quick, this is where we have build-to-zone requirements, street frontage percentages, where the setbacks are specified on sides and rear. There's maximum building lengths because we've heard concerns about buildings being too long along blocks. There's where the maximum number of stories is specified. There's floor-to-floor heights, which we don't have in our zoning code today. Specified parking locations, entry requirements to buildings. This is where we talk about the cap types, the required transparency. Basically, the glazing or the number of windows per floor. So you get, you know, a good face of the building. And this is where it talks about the special storefront use requirements that I talked about before.
So that would be like, no, you can't do a whole bunch of banks, right?
Correct. So basically, in the building type section where it's Main Street, retail, those entire furnages have to be active pedestrian uses. In areas that are not considered Main Street, then it's specified by a blue line within the other building types.
Thank you.
So this slide just basically shows, you know, form-based codes are a little more graphic and visual than our typical zoning code. So these are some examples of showing the different cap types, building locations, how we measure how many windows there have to be and how you can't have certain blank walls over certain percentages. That's just an example. So some of the council might remember that when we came with the guiding principles last year, what we learned from the image preference survey is that there was a desire in the community to kind of get more towards simple, honest and human-scale type buildings. So that's kind of the core of what we learned from the image preference survey. And this is what we applied to the building design section. So this is where we get into the, what I say is the skins of buildings. So this is the section where we talk about major and minor materials. We've heard some criticisms about the use of EPIS and fiberboard siding. And this is where we get at, you know, trying to get the bulk of facades on four-sided architecture as stone, brick, masonry, wood, but also allowing a lower percentage to be EPIS or STUCO in certain scenarios. Where the maximum of those particular materials would be 20%. There's also been some concerns about how buildings have been, or materials have been applied and how their durability. So there's building construction quality requirements in there for like STUCO. One other thing that I think is really important is the building transition requirements. There's been some concern about, you know, having a brick veneer on a side and then all of a sudden it turns the corner and it's hardy plank or whatever. That would not be permitted in the form-based code. It would have to turn the corner. The material transition would have to occur at a concave corner. So it gives it just more of a more substantial look and doesn't look like it's just cheaply applied to the building. There's requirements for window reveals. The windows have to be indented at least two inches. You get shadow lines. It makes the building wall look more substantial and less cheap. There has to be vertical orientation. Again, these are really specific, but we do have exception standards. So if there are, you know, scenarios where it seems too restrictive, the applicant can ask for an exception. We would evaluate it through criteria. We would apply those criteria and we would write that to the Planning Board. There would be the option to call it up. So there is that exception process. And then we've heard a lot of comments and concerns about massing in proportion. So the second part of building design talks about, you know, we've heard concerns about top-heavy-looking buildings. So there's a maximum indent on the lower floor of 18 inches. So you don't get that top-heavy effect. If you do have a building that's over 120 feet long, again, there's a 150-foot max. But you have to have increments no longer than 90 feet where there's some sort of variation. We don't want to get the real busy-looking facades where there's all these indents and, you know, building modules pushed out. But this, it just asks for...
Solana, you mean?
I'm sorry?
Solana?
Yes, we look to that quite a bit through this process to see where we could make some improvements. But in this case, it would require at least two types of changes every 90 feet. So you get some variation, but not too much variation. We've also heard concerns about there's not enough varied building heights or not enough pitched roofs. So there is an incentive in there for pitched roofs where if you have a building that's over... over 40 feet in height, 60% would have to have a pitched roof, and if it doesn't meet that requirement, alternatively, 30% of the upper floor would have to drop down, so that you get a variation of building height through that requirement. Lastly, one thing that was discussed, and it was an idea that really came from Victor Dover, and we kind of took on, was the golden rectangle or the golden ratio. In historic architecture, the golden ratio is used pretty significantly. We find that it creates pleasing proportions. It's something that would be a requirement in the Form-Based Code, where they at least have to just demonstrate that they've used it. We found that, you know, for instance, I'll talk about the REV project. When that originally came in, I would say it was the classic type design that had all the, too many materials, too many indents and pushouts of building modules. And while we were doing the Form-Based Code process, we met with them, and they revised the design to kind of embrace the golden rectangle. And I feel like it really kind of jumped their design ahead and made it much more comfortable, and it was supported by Planning Board. They took that to heart. So we feel like it's something that's worth trying out. Planning Board was a little bit concerned that it might be too strict. They felt also that it's worth trying. Again, we have the exception process if it appears too restrictive. So it is in the code today, but I'm curious to see what the council thinks. So lastly, I'll talk about the connection plan changes that were identified through the Form-Based Code process. One change is, if you look here, this is basically the property just in the north of Goose Creek that's in, almost up to Steel Yards. The road connection that's currently in TVAP shows a local street connection behind the building. While we were doing the Form-Based Code analysis with the consultant, it was identified that does it make sense to actually require the fronts of whatever buildings go on this site in the future to what is basically functioning like an alley today? If you look at the connections plan today, it's shown in orange line, so you'll see the Foundry Place just to the north, in Steel Yards and Carbon Place. You'd have three local streets all aligned together with no alleys in between. So it seems like it would make more sense just to recognize that it's already functioning as an alley, just to keep it as an alley. So we've, we're proposing that that local street connection from Junction Place to 31st Street be eliminated as a local street connection. And alternatively, what we want is if the buildings get developed on that site, that they really address to the south on Goose Creek. The original idea was to have, and I'll show here, was, the original idea was to have a local street along Goose Creek there, but that wasn't feasible from an engineering perspective. So what, the new idea was, let's do an enhanced Paseo, so creating a more pedestrian promenade type experience. We heard some concerns from folks that, you know, Goose Creek is much more bicycle-oriented, that this would be more like a landscape promenade that buildings could front upon. So that would add this new enhanced Paseo connection next to Goose Creek, because that's part of the changes. Real quick, the last ones are existing sidewalk connections that would go through the Pollard site. It would just specify that the one, the north one would have to be a narrow Paseo, meeting the Paseo requirements in the Form-Based Code. The south one would have to be a wide Paseo. So those are, those standards are specified in the Form-Based Code. So the Planning Board recommendation was to approve the Form-Based Code. They had very minimal changes. They had a friendly amendment to change the notice provisions to include all addresses. They wanted to have one graphic updated in the Form-Based Code to show the yards, which was done. And then there was the motion to approve the TVAP amendments. There is the CAC discussion about applying public notice requirements citywide, so we've provided that analysis in the memo in attachment E, and I'm happy to answer questions on that. This slide shows the staff recommendation with the motion language if the council wanted to refer to this. And then my final slide just has topics of discussions, and again, happy to answer any questions.
Right, thank you, Carl. Do council members have any questions?
I'll ask a couple. I think literally a couple, we'll see. Pretty general ones. So, I mean, most of the Boulder Junction Transit Village is actually either built or has approved plans or whatever. There's some that doesn't, the Pollard site's the kind of the main one. Would the buildings that we've approved or that are in, I'm just curious, that are in the works, kind of some of the big ones that have gotten some pretty good reviews, whether it's Spark or REV or the Commons, and I can't remember what everything's called, do those, would those largely meet these Form-Based Code rules? And if they don't, where do they diverge from them?
We did some analysis, I mean, we didn't do like detailed like plan elevation analysis, but just kind of going through the Form-Based Code and looking at, you know, what they provided. We worked with those architects through the process, so we largely found that those buildings would meet the Form-Based Code. Part of the designs were based on the creation of the Form-Based Code, so I don't have all the details, like the window transparency requirements, but in general, it looked like they did a really good job at that.
Okay. And so what is actually left besides Pollard?
I have this map right here.
Practical perspective, Pollard is the big one.
Yeah, so there's five sites. There's the Pollard site, there's the, what I call the Rocky Mountain Blueprint site, it's an industrial site just to the north of Goose Creek. There's the Safelite Auto Property next to Steel Yards. There's also a business Main Street property just to the north of Bluff, which is labeled as number five. And then 3200, I'm sorry?
Is that, that's where the Dog?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then there's the 3200 Bluff site, which is labeled as number three. I actually did hear also that there might be a six site, and that would be a property that was approved with Spark just to the east of 3200 Bluff. They're having some interest in applying the Form-Based Code retroactively to that site as well.
So aside from the design elements, which I mostly get, and I'm thinking mostly of Pollard because we own it and it's a big deal, but the other ones too. Aside from all the design elements, which is most of Form-Based Code, there's also this, it seems to me there is also this use implication here that, you know, whether it's 50% housing or whether it's, I don't know, some other, some other sense that it's, we're overlaying the zoning with some other use implications. Am I right about that, and what might they be? I mean, if I were going to go out and develop Pollard tomorrow, right now it's got some zoning, I find the zoning might change, whatever. But what, what use implications, if any, are being overlaid if we were to approve this?
Well, again, the two biggest differences are the storefront requirements that are more specific about the ground floor uses, which, you know, they're supposed to be ground floor, generally retail-type uses in that zone anyway. But really, the 50% residential requirement was added because we were concerned that if we took away the site review process and the concept plan process, we could potentially lose the potential for residential there, because the Transit Village area plan is really explicit about getting predominantly residential uses in this area to get critical mass. And it targets the Pollard site particularly for potential for affordable housing and everything. So we felt it really important to have the 50% residential requirement added to meet that intent.
Okay, thanks.
So we had Aaron, and then Lisa, and then Sam.
So can you just walk us through what the call-up procedure is, what the options are, please?
So all the reviews would be staff level. You know, like site reviews today, there's certain ones that would have to automatically go to Planning Board, or there might be use reviews that have to automatically go to Planning Board. Again, we're trying to keep this relatively simple, but it'd be staff level. But similar to site review, after the review is done, staff would produce a notice of disposition saying, you know, it meets the Form-Based Code. If there's any exceptions that are asked for, it would be similar to how staff makes arguments for the modifications. So we would have to include an analysis of how they meet or could potentially not meet the exception criteria, and we would forward that on to Planning Board the same way we do site reviews. And then Planning Board would have to consider whether or not they want to call it up.
And it would be just one member, like, and could you also have a call-up by just one community member?
Correct.
Okay, so, thank you.
Lisa? Just going to ask that same question, but how, how would the community member or any individual know that this was, there was time for a call-up?
Same way we do with site reviews, we send a public notice out, and we would, you know, they would contact the case manager, the case manager would keep them apprised to the steps of the process.
Okay, and then I had a question kind of along Matt's, so that we have a lot of buildings already now built at Boulder Junction, and so we will start kind of assuming that they have their 55-foot limit, and then a new building would have to react to that building, so that you get this height variation? Is that how it would work, or?
If the new building is on a site that's not subject to a site review, yes. Another thing that's interesting in the Form-Based Code is it allows the existing properties that were approved through site review to continue. So if they want to make changes, they would have to go through an amendment process similar, you know, to their current process. But the code does say that they have to make some sort of acknowledgement of the Form-Based Code, that they're generally within the intent. It doesn't have to be explicitly meeting the Form-Based Code, but it has to show that they're designing it in accordance with the Form-Based Code intent.
Okay, thank you.
Sam?
So are any of the properties that you're showing here, are they going to go through the Form-Based Code process? None of them are in site plan review, are they?
Well, the 3200 Bluff project came through concept plan, and they are intending to go through Form-Based Code review.
Okay, so all of these will, so we will get to see kind of on the ground before too long what the impacts of this are. And then what are, you know, where are we on phase two of the TVAP? You know, will you be trying to apply this to that, or are you going to wait and see what you get? What's the concept for this phase two?
I think we'd want to wait and see and continue to evaluate. You know, phase two right now, there isn't any plan right now to implement the comprehensive rezoning. I think we would need to kind of figure out the infrastructure costs and sort of what upfront would need to be done with regard to infrastructure before phase two, the comprehensive rezoning that would actually implement phase two would occur. But I think that would be the plan, would get a few projects under our belt, evaluate them. I think our hope would be to revisit it with the Planning Board and Council after we have a few examples to see how it's performing.
And if you were just looking into your crystal ball, thinking what other places besides TVAP would be ripe for this, do you have, I mean, the hospital site would be a place that would come to mind. What are you thinking about the hospital site in this approach?
As you guys know, we're really early in the discussions and kind of exploring what the possibilities are for the hospital, but I think kind of anecdotally, informally, we think it'd be a great candidate. But again, it really kind of depends on the performance here and what we learn.
Okay, and then as you went through this process, and you used your visual preference surveys to inform, you know, the various building envelopes, did, does it have much impact on the heights? I mean, maybe minor adjustments from one to the other. I'm looking on packet page 281, and looking at that row of buildings, and it looks like mostly they still take as much as they can get. What are your comments on the form and bulk standards in the Form-Based Code are going to be different than the form and bulk guidelines in the site plan review?
I think, I think the image preference survey were really helpful in kind of creating what, you know, getting a good idea of what people felt was acceptable. I think it also affirmed some things we've been hearing for years, that there's a desire to get a diversity of housing types. But we also had to consider the fact that, you know, TVAP does envision that this is going to be a place where more urban intensive development is going to be. So we didn't anticipate making major changes to massing, particularly around like the Rail Plaza area where it talks about having four- to five-story buildings. So we didn't want to conflict with the TVAP through this process, so that played a part as well. But, you know, through the site review process, we often find that because one project gets 55 feet, the neighboring project feels like they can automatically get their 55 feet, whereas the Form-Based Code is going to, on each site, is going to mandate that some of those height variation requirements come into play. So we feel like it's a more effective way to get that diversity of heights and diversity of massing.
And I think what we've heard as part of the process is that what we've seen in the past is kind of a disingenuous way of deconstructing building mass with a lot of sort of over-articulation. I think to Carl's point, I think one of the main, I think part of the main emphasis of the physical manifestation of the Form-Based Code is really to focus on buildings that are honest, elegant, and well-designed with high-quality materials that are going to be durable. So I think those were kind of some of the main tenets in moving it forward.
Cool, this is super exciting, thank you.
So I have a question related to 3200 Bluff. So when it came to Planning Board for a concept review, were they thinking about asking for, coming to a discretionary review? I guess that's what you...
When they originally designed the project, they had designed it with the underlying zoning and site review process in mind, but while we did the review, they were more cognizant of the Form-Based Code standards, and they did revise the design before it went to Planning Board.
So that will, so that by going through the Form-Based Code, they will essentially get a more streamlined process and...
Yeah, that's really enticing, I think, to a lot of developers, and it's something that they're pretty excited about. So I think that they're likely to pursue the Form-Based Code model.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, but is that an option? I mean, once we adopt this, it's not an option, is it?
Yeah, if the council adopts it, they would have to go through Form-Based Code review.
But they did have the option of really quickly turning around a site review and getting it in, and they opted not to do that. So that kind of says to me that they're comfortable with the Form-Based Code option.
No, they actually said that if the Form-Based Code was not adopted, you know, like if there were changes and it got adopted later, that they would still want to do the Form-Based Code. And we told them that, you know, they technically could actually submit for a Form-Based Code if we felt like it was ultimately going to be adopted, as long as we didn't act on it, you know, until the Form-Based Code was in effect.
Lisa?
So you went through an earlier part of your presentation about what the Form-Based Code would affect and what it wouldn't, so such like height, and it wouldn't change like density in a particular unit, or in a particular space. So let's say, we just had this co-op discussion, and let's say a developer wanted to put a co-op in their residential building. How would they address the density issue or occupancy?
I mean, co-ops tend to be in single-family areas. It depends on what the co-op regs get, how they get drafted, and where they would apply and...
Right, but there's been a lot of people who have written to us and said, well, what about doing them in commercial areas, or, you know, thinking outside the box a little bit more. And previously on Junction, Boulder Junction, I brought up on multiple occasions trying co-ops in some of these buildings.
I mean, I would just say that, you know, since we're not changing the use standards, the use standards apply wholly to the Form-Based Code, that whatever the outcome is, that it would still go through the same process.
And there would be nothing precluding us from, you know, in the forthcoming draft on co-ops, you know, to include these zoning districts if that's something that the council wanted to do.
Okay. So are we going to have a public hearing?
Yes, we are. Is anybody signed up? All right. Yes, please, Lisa. Well, we're going to open the public hearing, and then seeing no one, we'll close it, and then we'll go to Lisa to make a motion.
Let's hear the motion.
Okay, so I would like to move that we adopt ordinance number 8121, amending Title IX Land Use Code, BRC 1981, to implement a Form-Based Code for the Boulder Junction Phase One area through 281. two appendices to Title IX Appendix L designating Form-Based Code areas, and Appendix M as the FBC regulations in adopting a Form-Based Code review process.
A second.
And to speak to it, I would just say, you know, I think you guys have done a great job. I'm glad that we were open to this and that Victor Dover came in with, forget the other person, but that they've done, I think, a great job. And I think this will greatly simplify things and give a predictability to the building, and not only the building, but the uses and how the buildings relate to the streets. So I'm all in favor of this, and I am very excited to see its application.
So I would second that, and thank you guys for bringing it forward and seeing it through. And I'm especially excited about the golden rectangle. And this is, this is where, if I were Macon, I would launch into something about Vitruvius and Neompediste Alberti and the Ten Books of Architecture, but I won't. But I, it's been around for a long, long time, and I'm pretty excited about it, so it's great, thank you. Matt? And then Aaron?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a good step. I share one concern that a number of planning board members raised, and they're obviously comfortable going ahead with it, so therefore I am too, and that's the, is it too prescriptive? Do you, you know, do we swing the pendulum a little too far? We got worried about lousy designs, and now we made everybody build the same thing. And I guess what I'm curious about, and you'll learn it by doing it, so you probably can't really answer this right now, but do you think that the exception mechanism is really usable? In other words, is it something that if people think they got a case they're gonna do, are they gonna shy away from it and just say, "Ah, not worth it, too hard"? You know, how are we gonna make that not automatic, but also somewhat inviting?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think one way we can, the way I look at it, is that there's a required pre-app process where the applicant has to come in with a preliminary design and meet with us, and to go over the design, and I think that's where they might float some exception ideas in front of staff, and it would be a way for us to say, "That looks like it's a good idea," or maybe "It's not a good idea," and I think we'd have to go through that. Yeah, I mean, based on the criteria, but going through that experience and seeing if it gets us what we want as far as flexibility.
Okay, well, I mean, again, planning board, I know, had some of the same concern. They said, "Let's give it a try. You have an exception procedure." Yeah, you could have one too many golden rectangles, I think. So we'll see where this goes, but thanks.
So just to chime in, thanks for a phenomenal job. This is, you know, I've been following this along, obviously, from planning board before, and I think it's gonna be a great, great addition. And I think one of the, you know, the great advantages here is the predictability on, on all sides, that residents know what they'll be getting, and if they take the time to delve into the Form-Based Code. And developers have some predictability in the outcome with the process if they obey all the rules. With that in mind, I, the, the call-up procedures, I think they're, it's very easy to call it up, and I think that's appropriate for the pilot situation, but I just want to go on record to say that if, if this is successful and we apply it to other areas of the city, I think we might make it a little harder to call up than just one person from the public at the planning board. So just wanted to just get that on record for, hopefully in a year or two, we'll be applying this to other areas, and maybe we can look at that. And then the one other comment I wanted to make, I was gonna bring up the golden rectangle a little bit more negatively, but since Mary was so positive about it, and I trust your judgment, I'll just, I won't go anywhere with it, but just to say that, just in the concern about maybe being a little too prescriptive, you know, just to make sure that architects have the ability to be creative in their designs, but just something to keep an eye out on and? So just, you know, somebody I trust will get feedback on if, if we're hearing from, from architects, and be like, "Oh, I had this brilliant idea, but it was, you know, 10% off from a golden rectangle, and so I couldn't do it."
So I'm excited to see this go forward as well. I'm not very concerned about it being too prescriptive. I mean, Leonard Ray did a nice drawing of showing what you could do if you wanted to do a bad job with some of the guidelines. So I think there will be a lot of flexibility. I think, obviously, people will think about this a lot, like Victor Dover would try and keep it so that it's not too prescriptive, and you both get what you want and give the architects room to be creative. So I'm hopeful that it will be good. Another thing is, it's our first crack at it, so hopefully you guys, once you get your first four or five projects in the ground, can go look in at the details of how you described what you wanted, and then what did we get, and how can we make that matchup even better? So I, I'm looking forward to seeing what we, what we get for our next buildings there.
Anyone else? All right, so is this?
Roll call.
All right.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Applebaum. Brockett.
Aye.
Burton. Marzelle.
Aye.
Shoemaker. Weaver.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Five minutes ahead of schedule.
Thank you. We made up 15 minutes.
Good job.
Yeah, great job, guys.
And that was a great presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now we go to matters from mayor and members of council. We have the potential call-ups. Any action on those?
Anyone?
Okay. Then we have the board and commission appointments for Downtown Management Commission and the University Hill Commercial Area Management Commission.
All right. So we'll go with the Downtown Management Commission first, and we'll do a show hands to vote, and then, since this is under matters, we'll wait till later to take the final vote. Yeah, right, so the floor is open. Aaron?
So I'll nominate Peter Vitale.
And I'll nominate Adam Luff.
All right, comments?
Any other nominations?
All right.
I was just, I was impressed by some of the creative ideas that Peter Vitale had, so, and about, like, about how to deal with a lot of banks and, you know, way, creative ways to reach out to those banks, maybe activate them a little bit if we're getting them anyway, so, just leave it at that.
I thought they were both very good candidates, to be honest, and I don't think we could go wrong with either, either one of them. They were both very engaged. You know, I was just impressed with Adam's enthusiasm for the positive change he wanted to see downtown, and some of his ideas about, about bringing more people out and more bigger events downtown, I thought were interesting. So that's that.
Jan?
I agree with Sam. I think both candidates were really incredible. Peter went to Oregon with us and is really getting involved in the community, and I see him to be a bright, you know, involved businessperson. Adam, I thought the same thing. I thought he had some very creative ideas, and I think both of them would be great, but I would probably give a little bit of a nod to Adam at this point.
Anybody else want to comment? All right, so we will vote later and move on to the University? I thought we voted until? Tom, Jane, someone?
I think you do, and then you confirm the vote later.
Okay, well then, let's vote. All right, so all those in favor of Adam Knopf? So he gets it. All right. All right, University Hill Commercial Area Management Commission? Who would like to nominate?
I'll nominate Michael Brown.
Any other nominations? Aaron?
Jan.
Yeah, I would nominate Robin Luff.
All right. So, any comments?
I have to say, after... After a couple of years ago, not even having enough people who were actually UCMC members even show up for a meeting, we're at a point now where we have two spectacular candidates, and we can't go wrong with either one. Michael Brown I've known for a while, he's a neighbor on University Hill, lives there, he's been involved in the city in the past, and he's interested in getting back involved again, and, and, and he's, he's a super guy and, and very approachable, and I'm sure would interact very well with the board, and is interested in the, in seeing things progress in the Hill. I'll let other people speak to Robin, but I can also say very positive things about her as well, so. So whoever.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know either one of them.
Yeah, I think you turned it off.
I didn't know either one of them before the interview. Again, it's an embarrassment of riches. I think both of them are incredible. I was surprised that, I don't think either one of them are actually business people down there. They are in the neighborhood and want to see this area succeed, which I think is so great, and so both of them seem to be very big cheerleaders for University Hill, and I think we couldn't do wrong with either one. Robin is, has been very involved with a lot of nonprofits at leadership roles, and I think she could perhaps bring some contacts and influence in helping development, develop University Hill, but I think either would be great.
Sam?
Again, they were both fantastic. Robin Luff has lived on the Hill for 22 years, and she's got deep ties in the community as far as nonprofits, like Jan said. I know Michael a little bit better. He served on the bid board with me for a while when he was downtown, and he's a filmmaker, so he brings an interesting perspective, as long as a former businessperson. So both of these are really good candidates, and they're both Hill cheerleaders.
Aaron?
Let's throw in, like everybody says, we've got two great candidates on hope. The person who doesn't get elected comes back next year. But I was just particularly impressed by the depth of Robin's nonprofit and community experience, so I think it's great to see somebody who's done so many things, you know, come forward for our city committee, so I'll be supporting Robin.
Any other comments? Shall we vote? All right. All those in favor of Michael Brown? So we have three, and all those in favor of Robin Luff? Four, so Robin is appointed.
Your next item is consideration of a motion to?
So we finish this, I'm gonna move that we ratify the appointments we just made, and if somebody seconds that, then we can vote on that when we come back, and that will make it all, at least that's been our tradition.
Okay.
Consideration of a motion to support proposed response to concerns on University Hill regarding beer pong tables in front yards.
So this is actually our request for a nod of five. This came up from Ellen, Councilmember Ellen, and? I know. Right, and honestly, the change to the ordinance would be fairly easy for the city attorney's office to make. However, our office, through Amanda Nagel, who's here in the audience, and also the code enforcement, Jennifer Riley is also here, started thinking about this and felt like the outreach to the University Hill Neighborhood Association, as well as other stakeholders in the area, would help us in easing the changes that might be made, and possibly coming up with ways in which we would not need to move forward with an ordinance such as this. And so they've prepared a document that you have there, that I think is a very robust community and outreach process, that we're recommending that council give us a nod of five to carry out, and we'll be back to you later in the fall with further recommendations on this.
All right.
Do we have the document?
Yeah, it's at H.C. H. 317.
Sorry about that.
H. 317.
So if I could, yeah, just, so I, obviously, I support that approach, Jane, and I appreciate, you know, what, I raised an exploratory issue, which was, you know, just boiled down to the simple concept of cleaning up after a game of beer pong, in particular the rotting tables in the front yards, and I guess even on roofs now we've seen. But, but, and the question was whether we should begin to treat those like we treat couches and vehicles on blocks and appliances in yards and weeds and broken windows, all sorts of things that we already deal with, with the city. And we received quite, or I received quite a bit of feedback. And actually, notwithstanding the Camera Editorial Advisory Board, which I'll just have to pick on, because they picked sort of as a straw man the issue of banning beer pong, and that's not what I raised, rather than cleaning up afterwards, the, I got a lot of feedback from people saying, "You know what? This is, this is a good idea, it's a problem." But based on the, but based on that feedback, and I think, and based on the proposal of staff, I don't think it's time yet for an ordinance, particularly in light of the constructive recommendation that's been made to work with the newly-created City of Boulder Neighborhood Services group and the involvement of key stakeholders. And, you know, one of the other things, too, from a, from a fairness standpoint, I want the students to be back in session if we, if we were to do anything, so that they have an opportunity to participate in the discussion and, and don't feel like that we sort of pulled something over the summer when they're not here. So the problem's been highlighted, and I think people are now attuned to it, and the staff's gonna look at the problem. It sounds like it's not gonna take much of any effort. And it's actually an opportunity for the new department to work with stakeholders, get to know the Hill neighborhood, and work with the university, and try to address, you know, all of the underlying issues surrounding this. So I think it's a, I think it's a really constructive solution, and so that's why I would ask folks to give the nod, so.
I'd just say, if this does come back in the form of the ordinance, I think we should decide whether or not to pass it with, with a game of beer pong.
That's right.
All right, did we have enough nods?
I see them all nodding off.
Just nodding off.
That's right, good point. Sugary beverage.
We have no speakers for public comment.
All right, so, all right, so we'll vote on the motion to ratify the appointees to the boards. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Any? Any debrief?
Well-run meeting, thanks, Mary.
Thanks, thanks, yay. Meeting adjourned.